Okay, we're now back in session. I'm going to begin with item 20. This is supporting San Diego's biomedical sector, addressing recent challenges to the NIH. Before I make any opening remarks, I'd like to invite Nikia Clark from the San Diego Regional EDC to give a presentation. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and good afternoon, Supervisors. I'm delighted to have some time with you, hopefully to shed a little bit of light on the federal policy implications for scientific research of a lot of the changes happening in DC, both what we know and what we don't know. If you can go to the next slide, and then one more slide after that. So as you all know, I'm with the San Diego Regional Economic Development Corporation. Our job is to help make sure companies and institutions in the region have the tools and the talent that they need. Probably not surprisingly, a lot of our time these days has been spent trying to understand the economic impacts of a time with a lot of uncertainty, a lot of policy uncertainty in DC, and also a lot of market uncertainty, and trying to figure out what that means for jobs here in San Diego and for San Diegans. So I wanted to start by just making the point that as we think about all of the changes happening right now—I know we're talking about biomedical and NIH research in particular today—but San Diego has a really diverse base of jobs, and it makes the regional economy resilient because we have a lot of federal funding that flows into a lot of our key sectors, and also then augments kind of a lot of private sector and innovative industries. But nearly every sort of sector that's larger than about 10% of our economy has significant ties to federal funding, and a lot of changes happening across the board right now. So today I wanted to talk a little bit about a lot of the discussion around scientific research in particular and the NIH. So we move on to the next slide, please. I think the one important point as we think about the economy and how this impacts San Diego is that scientific research and development really drives our innovation cluster here. So when you think of our biotechnology cluster, that is really driven by a long-time investments of NIH dollars in this region. I would put NSF dollars as well. But research funding sort of catalyzes a lot of early-stage development that then enables the innovation cluster and a lot of those high-quality, high-wage jobs that San Diego is known for to happen. So when we think about scientific R&amp;D, we're talking about a little more than $1 billion annually, you know, direct grants from NIH and NSF, but that catalyzes a lot more sort of translational research that I'll talk about in a little bit. San Diego has long had a very strong early-stage research and development cluster. It's what we're known for, it's what we do really well here. We don't have a lot of consumer-facing firms and a lot of big corporate brands, but we have a really entrepreneurial ecosystem, lots of small business starts, and a lot of venture capital in this region, too, and most of that is because of the work of our research institutes, of which there are more than 100. So you all are very familiar—we're all very familiar—with UC San Diego, which is our biggest research institute, as well as our biggest public university. However, we have more than 100. San Diego is actually the largest recipient of NIH dollars to private research institutes in the country. And in the state of California, which receives more NIH dollars than any other state, the San Diego region, and specifically sort of what for you all would be District III, is the largest recipient of NIH dollars in California. So it's a big impact for our region. If we move to the next slide. So the other point I want to make before I talk about some of what's happening with the NIH in particular is that—I mentioned that $1.1 billion of NIH dollars in regional economy of about $260 billion GRP. That doesn't seem like a lot, but the catalytic effect of research dollars is really important. These are—that $1.1 billion per year that goes into our research institutes is—then catalyzes research, then spins out of those institutes, draws in close to $6 billion in venture capital funding every year, creates sort of the foundation for our innovation cluster, which employs about 164,000 San Diegans in that sort of—in private sector jobs and innovation-based industries. But many of those jobs and companies are predicated on early-stage science research, people solving really tough problems. This chart is, I think, very cool. Some others would disagree with me. The turquoise line is the S&amp;P 500, and we all know there's been some really—a lot of uncertainty in the markets, some really challenging market dynamics. But then the dark blue line are San Diego-headquartered companies, and that's sort of weighted by size. Those are primarily—if they're publicly listed and they're headquartered here, about 66% of those are life sciences companies. And what's interesting to me is if you look at kind of that middle of February point, you see those two lines really start to diverge. And that's when you start to see a lot of the sort of tumult in DC around the NIH, the NIH executive order, cutting the indirect cost cap. We also started to see venture capital dollars into the sciences in particular drop precipitously at that time. Our VC dollars for this year Q1 are much lower, about 40% lower than they've been, and the life sciences share is much lower than it's ever been because the sciences—even for the market—seem more high-risk, and that has big implications for San Diego jobs. And we've seen layoffs, et cetera, in our innovation cluster as a result. So if you go to the next slide. So I want to talk a little bit about just what's—kind of setting the table on what's happened with the NIH and with research dollars in particular. Some of the most significant changes NIH is the largest funder of early-stage scientific research, but it's not the only one. And across all of our federal funding agencies, sort of the strategy is very similar. So many of—and I want to try to distinguish between kind of the short game and the long game. Essentially, there's a lot of noise, there's a lot of uncertainty—we all knew that was going to be the case under this administration. But what does that mean in the short term, in sort of just navigating that tumultuousness versus what does it mean for the long-term economy? And how do we need to position San Diego institutions and San Diego innovators to sort of navigate that? So two things: one is the short term, and one is the long term. The short-term impacts to the region have really been around sort of the sudden termination of hundreds of active research grants nationally. And largely, that has been around kind of a reprioritization or deprioritization of certain things. So the reasons that those have been suddenly terminated have to do with them being linked in some way to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So maybe the research itself focuses on a particular group—climate, gender, et cetera. So there have been—there's been a lot of sudden change. And then the—and that has implications. There's already been layoffs, there's been a lot of challenges for our research institutes related to that current issue. The more long-term issue is really around the indirect cost cap, and I'm going to spend just a minute talking about that. So in February, many people read about the proposal to cap the indirect cost for NIH research at 15%. And every federal research contract, regardless of agency, whether it's DoD research, whether it's Department of Energy research, has sort of an indirect cost rate. For most of those, it's relatively high. UC San Diego's rate is about 58% generally, and that's something that's negotiated between the institute and the federal government sort of on an annual or multi-year basis. What that covers is a lot more than sort of administrative support. So it covers facilities, it covers equipment, and it covers sort of the roles that are not themselves direct PIs or principal investigators of research, but help to support the research enterprise of an institution. So that rate moving from between 50 and 60% down to 15 has big implications for a lot of institutions in terms of how they fund research and whether it makes sense to do research at all in the future. So that was temporarily blocked a couple times. It was permanently blocked in the courts in April. However, what's important is not how it impacts the sort of research funds that have been allocated already, but what that means for the future of kind of the business model of federal research going forward. The second—or the final thing I'll add as we look forward—is just looking—that's related—is just looking at kind of the budget bill—the big beautiful bill that's moving its way through Congress now—and this significant cuts to the Health and Human Services budget, which obviously touches a lot of what the county does, but it also includes the NIH budget. And there's a really significant reorganization that's in there now. The HHS just released a couple days ago a budget summary that sheds a little additional light on what that agency is thinking about in terms of how it reorganizes and how it reprioritizes going forward. That does assume maintaining a 15% indirect cost cut. So if we can move to the next slide, please, and I think I'm almost finished here. So one thing before I speak to this that I'll talk about—you saw on the previous slide that $448 million impact to San Diego of just the indirect cost cut. Based on current NIH levels, if we moved from an assumption of about a 50% indirect rate down to 15, that would cut $448 million overnight that come to this region to do all of those things we talked about before. That results in sort of a direct job loss of probably around 1,300. We did an in-plan analysis of that. And the ripple effects—the indirect job loss would be about another 1,800 jobs and about a half a billion dollars in GRP. So big implications for San Diego. As we think about what this means in the long term—and I anticipate that there will be a lot of negotiation around indirect cost cuts, around research—two things to think about. One is just the university research model, full stop, which has made the United States globally competitive in the sciences, in technology, et cetera. We're talking about NIH here, but you can say the same thing about DoD funding and DARPA. You can say the same thing about Department of Energy funding and energy transition. All of these—the way we structure federal research and the business of research looks like it will significantly change. And I know there's a lot of people working hard on what that looks like. But it is—for a really innovation-based economy like San Diego, it matters a lot. Our innovation sector, every job we create there creates two others across the region. Those are what grow the economy and pull the rest of the jobs sort of behind them. Without the innovation cluster, our largest growth areas are government—which is also under threat—and healthcare, also under threat. So in terms of that university research model, a lot of the most important implications aren't ones you'll see right away. But a reduction in funding for early-stage research means a reduction in the really talented people that come from all over the world to do that research. Many other countries are increasing their research budgets right now to recruit away from the United States because of that sort of STEM talent gap left by that funding gap. And really, what we'll see is in about five to 10 years, that kind of innovation pipeline that makes San Diego really competitive globally, makes the United States really competitive globally. That is probably the biggest long-term potential implication that's really important for the U.S. as a whole. There's lots of other important things to consider for universities in the news right now. I won't talk about that in the short term. But the big long-term impact that we all should be thinking about for our region and for the country is really how we preserve American technological competitiveness if we're not funding early-stage research. That's what's made our economy really strong. The second thing I'll just flag is as it becomes more clear what this administration is reprioritizing versus deprioritizing in terms of what the priorities—the technological and competitiveness priorities—are. There's been a lot of reorganization, there's been a lot of staffing cuts. We're also seeing certain, you know, state science bans, a backlash against mRNA technology. San Diego is sort of the hub of mRNA technology. We have a really strong genomics industry and a really strong drug discovery industry. And then a lot of significant regulatory changes. And those could be headwinds, or they could be tailwinds. You're also seeing some streamlining, you're seeing the FDA going on a listening tour, talking to industry about what's important. So there's—it's also a moment where there's a lot of uncertainty. There's also an opportunity, I think, for education right now in DC, as there always is at the beginning of a new administration. And the VC and industry impacts, as I talked about before. You lose the little bit of catalytic research funding, and all of kind of the private capital that goes behind that is also at risk. And then next slide, and I think this is my final. So I know for us at EDC, as we're thinking about kind of how we help institutions, how we think about job creation and job retention in the region, we're really looking at how we help institutions and innovators navigate this moment, and then how we think long-term about positioning the region to be successful. So I know there are a lot of good and important coordinated advocacy efforts. UCSD is doing some really wonderful work, both in DC and in the region, to tell the stories of NIH research and how that impacts lives and people's long-term health. And 99% of all drugs the FDA has ever approved were funded by the NIH in their early stage. A lot of trade groups similarly are sort of just trying to tell the story and educate as much as possible and advocate. You've also seen the Prema Foundation—I think they put out about $7 million in emergency funding for scientific research. They stood up a fund to invest in early-stage scientific research as well. Organizations like Curebound raising money for cancer research. So a lot happening at the regional level. It can't fill the gap, but it can help. And then, of course, over time, support for innovators and then incentives to help make that innovation pipeline and the commercialization pipeline a little easier for entrepreneurs, a little easier for small businesses as the research environment gets leaner and more difficult is something that we all could and should be thinking about. And with that, I will leave it there and happy to answer any questions if there's time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm just going to make a couple comments to introduce this item. Thank you so much for the presentation, which I think did a really good job of grounding the local impacts of what we hear in terms of what's going on in Washington. I wanted to bring this item forward today because, as you all are well aware, the kind of innovation hubs of San Diego that are most significantly impacted by these cuts, many, if not most, of them are in my district. We're talking about Surrano Valley and Carmel Valley, we talked parts of downtown, UCSD. So this is—a very personal—for many of my constituents. I've gotten and received a huge amount of outreach from constituents in my district that are really, really concerned about the impact of these NIH cuts and NSF cuts on our local economy, on jobs here in San Diego County, on their own jobs, people who are losing their jobs or, you know, have already lost their jobs. And so I thought it was really important that as a board, we take a real look at this issue. We in San Diego are one of the leading biomedical research destinations in the world—not in the country, but in the world. Our life sciences sector contributes $57 billion in overall output and employs 75,000 people. And those 75,000 people employed in high-wage jobs are multipliers. That—for every high-wage job that anchors three medium-wage to low-wage local service delivery jobs. So that really—75,000 people really represents about four times that—three, four times that number of jobs. You know, so in addition, when we look specifically at NIH, we can see, according to the presentation, over $1 billion in NIH grants flowing into San Diego each year, funding our universities, nonprofits, and hospitals. And currently, what's on the table and what's been announced in Washington by the current administration of a 40% cut to the NIH budget, the capping of reimbursement, the delaying of new NIH grant funding, the canceling of hundreds of active NIH events, the termination of 1,200 NIH employees. This is happening. It's happening, it's hurting our economy, but it's also going to eventually cost lives. And I'm concerned, obviously, about what's happening today in terms of jobs in our region, but fundamentally, looking forward. Looking forward five years or 10 years, I thought some of the most interesting data in your presentation was looking at how the startups, the incubators, the research that we're investing in today, these are pipeline investments that bear fruit in terms of scalable technologies in the biomedical field and elsewhere that actually reach patients, save lives, generate industry in five to 10 years. I wanted to take a moment to talk about a doctor, Dr. Skopjeck, who was diagnosed with a rare aggressive form of cancer that's been resistant to standard treatments. He was given six months to live. UCSD's Moore Cancer Center was conducting an NIH-funded clinical trial for new cancer immunotherapy, and he decided to participate. It's been seven years now, and he's doing well. And this therapy that was being tested with NIH funding seven years ago is now commercially available to help others. So these are real peoples whose lives are saved by this kind of scientific research. So my office recently circulated a petition calling for an end to this shortsighted and self-destructive attack on biomedical research and innovation. Over 1,300 San Diegans so far joined me signing the petition, which we will be sending to congressional leaders. And with today's action, I'd like to invite the county to stand with San Diego's biomedical community against the cuts and the disruption coming from the administration, and instead urge federal leaders to reinvest in biomedical research, education, scientific infrastructure, and entrepreneurship. So with that, I'd like to open the floor to public comment, and then we can have some comments from my fellow board members.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Raymer. We have 11 requests to speak on this item, five in person, and six requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received seven ecomments, five in support, and one opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 20 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, your comments will be limited to one minute. I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'll be calling you in groups of three, so please listen for your name. I'd like to invite Ford Consuelo, allegedly Audra, and Mark.
That is such a shame. One minute. Okay, here we go. So, really quick.
And please state your name.
Okay, we already started the clock, but there we go. So I oppose this item, and not just because of what this industry has done, but because of what it claims to be. They call it science, but the moment you question—it's no longer science, it's propaganda. True science invites scrutiny. This biomedical complex demands obedience, and let's not ignore, it has left behind a trail of injuries, death, and devastation—from Pfizer to Moderna, from vaccines. You know, I just wanted to—gosh, 25 seconds, this is bullshit. They bury real cures and label informed citizens as anti-science for daring to ask questions. And when healers step forward, like Dr. Robert Young, sentenced right here in San Diego just last week for five years for helping patients naturally, they are persecuted and imprisoned. That should tell you everything about what kind of system we're dealing with. These institutions—
Thank you. Time is up. For the record, the speaker is Consuelo.
Five, eight years. We got five, eight years.
Next speaker, please.
It's good, though. Got to demonize that. My person uses the name Audra. Uncertainty definitely is the new normal. How cool is that? Trust the science, right? Trust the science. I cannot believe they're cutting funding when we have like a million genders that they don't recognize. How crazy is that? And like COVID is real, right? Even though no viruses are real and have never been isolated, but right, let's keep pushing that. And then, you know, murder—I mean abortion, right? Ripping babies apart limb by limb? Trust the science. Trust the science that if you, you know, mutilate a body of a child, that they're going to reaffirm their gender, right? Trust the science. Trust the science that PCR tests work, right? Trust the science that, you know, chemtrails are fake. That's crazy. Trust the science that neurotoxins are so good for us, right? I mean, as long as we deceive the people. Trust the science—that—how many genders are there? I don't even know, and I can probably be an animal, right? If I want to be my dog, I can totally do that. Trust the science. What else? Trust the science with—
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person, Eleanor Caratti and Karen Svet.
Mark, one minute's time, so people need to see these—this YouTube title is "What in the World Is Actually Going On? Document Reveals Plans Step-by-Step." Dana Ashley—actually, it's on BitChute, B-I-T-C-H-U-T-E.com. Dana Ashley is D-A-N-A-S-H-L-I-E. Now, the other thing you need to see is an article called "World Health Organization Is Making a Massive Power Grab, and Biden Is Enabling It." Opinion. It's on Newsweek. Now, why are these important? Because the NIH and WHO both have the same board members. You'll see this. It's 22 minutes in the Dana Ashley video. Watch it from 22 minutes. Fauci, he paid for gain-of-function research. It proves that the boards had an interest in it. It proves that the boards had an interest in it. They have the same members. There's a document by the Rockefeller Foundation that has it all laid out and planned. See the videos and look at the unbelievable power-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Ella. I'm from Carmel Valley, and I just graduated with a bachelor's degree in environmental studies in biology. These funding cuts are personally impacting all of my career goals and my career backup plans. My peers are being encouraged to go to Canada or Europe for their graduate school, and a lot of them are doing so. America is losing scientific talent because of this broad systematic attack on science funding. And I have come back home to San Diego because my backup, backup, backup career plan is to get a lab tech job here because I'm proud of how my county is a leader in biomedical innovation. Please, Board of Supervisors, tell Congress to get their act together and fund lifesaving research and scientific research in general. The current cuts are broad, chaotic, and on way-too-fast a time scale to actually be efficient or do anything helpful for the government organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Do I go now?
Yes, please.
I'm Karen from Encinitas, and I'm retired, but I'm a STEM graduate of UCSD. And these abrupt cuts are just a travesty to our region. We have to stand up against this.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll begin with our first caller.
Paul LeBolle, UCSD is usually responsible and deserves their support, but there are lots of companies which do not. Biomed companies like Pfizer and Moderna hoisted vaccines on us and insisted they were safe despite the odds of not testing the meta quickly. A lot of these companies do patent medicine. Remember the 1800s? And you should be objective in examining the cause of death in COVID patients. Did they really die from COVID or from its side effects? The CDC and FCA won't tell us and don't want us to find out, which is why any 42% trust them about the same for three years. Also, many of us disprove psychotropic drugs, a quick fix with bad results. The side effects are harmful, may have major effects.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
It's true, just like this item says, NIH grants keep billion-dollar paychecks coming. Obviously, some ended up funding PDS, Tara's last campaign. And we've got nothing but political theater, dangerous clinical trials, and toxic shots to show for it. Did Tara mean to write NIH grants keep families dead, not fed? NIH deserves a 40% defunding. These are the bat crazies that were experimenting with viruses on bats. UCSD deserves a $150 million defunding. They've employed doctors who cut into patients' livers without their consent. The partnership between the government and university should have ended after the racist eugenics era. There's also a whole bunch of non-science-based claims made in this item. The drugs Ozempic and Wegovy funded by NIH have been reported to cause many people serious health risks yet are being praised by Tara. The last five years is enough proof that NIH harms human health. All of this NIH defunding was bound to happen anyway because the last time Biden blew through our tax dollars at record rates, causing serious inflation. Rep what you sow. What a waste of our time to discuss this, Tara.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller. The next caller is Justin Castro. Your device might be muted. We'll come back to that caller.
Hello, my name is Anthony. I was actually wanting to speak on another item, but I don't know if it's too late for that one, which was the gas tax. So I'll just speak on this one from the, for item 20. I do realize healthcare is a very expensive system, and medicine is very, very hard and scarce to come by, but just being out in the environment, there's a lot of hazardous risk and safety concerns that haven't been addressed towards health concerns with just in general public with disease and even skin disease. I feel it's going on the right way towards medicine, but I feel there needs to be more funding for common disease and-
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller. Again, the final caller is Justin Castro. Your device might be muted. We're not able to hear you. And Vice Chair Lawson-Ramer, not hearing any audio from that caller. That concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Appreciate it. And Nikita, is that right? I had a couple of questions for you. I'm looking at your slide four, and Mr. Pierce, I don't, I can't quite understand. There it is. The line it says, "The proposed NIH indirect reimbursement cost cap." What is, is that a 15% cut? What does that mean? Does that mean the entity does the research and gets reimbursed? I'm not sure what that means.
It's a great question. So for every NIH grant that's made, there is an indirect rate associated with that grant. So, and the rate that the institution can charge for that indirect rate is negotiated between the NIH and the institution. And this is true for all federal grants, regardless of whether they're biomedical research or anything else. So those negotiated rates range from generally 30 to 40% all the way up to like 200% for some private sector-funded DoD research, for example. So that indirect rate is really what's at the heart of the NIH executive order that was released in February, reducing that rate to a cap, capping the indirect rate at 15%. So what that essentially does is it cuts the amount of the overall grant by, you know, 40 to 50% because the indirect rates are high. Now, I think that what is covered by the indirect rate, it can be confusing, it sounds like it administrative-
Yeah, it sure is. I'll tell you that. Go ahead.
But what that covers is, it covers labs, it covers, and sort of real estate, it covers materials. And the way the industry works, like, I'll give you sort of an example from any big research institute, but UCSD largely functions this way as well. They will want to stand up a lab focused on a particular type of research, a particular type of, say, drug discovery research, isolating certain molecules. And in order to make that lab function, it needs a certain amount, it needs principal investigators, but it also needs a lot of equipment, it needs PhD students, it needs sort of financial support to manage all of the grants, and all of these things are captured under a variety of different federal grants. So what the university will do is invest in building that lab and attracting that talent, invest millions of dollars in setting it up with the assumption that that team that they've recruited, of very smart people, will then, over time, fund, and they'll recoup that investment in the lab through federal grants, et cetera. So they, the institution makes really big upfront investments to set up the infrastructure that then the grants help to recoup over time.
Yeah, I guess there's no guarantee that you're going to get that grant, it sounds like.
No, there's no guarantee. However, in this case, part of the reason that the executive order was permanently blocked by the courts is because that concerned grants that had already been awarded. Congress had awarded the dollars to institutions, they had made staffing decisions, and then the federal government, that executive order tried to take that back.
So you're saying whatever the magic number that used to be negotiated is going to be capped at 15% regardless of whatever, whatever could have been or would have been and had have been negotiated differently. Okay, so I'm looking at, also on this chart, you've got UCSD at $561 million, then Scripps, Salk, Sanford, and then San Diego State. They're much smaller, so it looks like, I mean, UCSD's getting a huge share. Would you, I guess, is it evenly distributed? Do all of these institutes work the same? I'm just, who's going to feel the most pain, I guess, is what I'm asking?
It's a good question. Certainly, in terms of just the volume of research funding, UCSD will feel the most pain. I mean, they've invested significantly in building a premier R1 university. They have a research budget that rivals a lot of the Ivy Leagues in terms of the, you know, the research infrastructure they've built and the talent they've brought there. That's why they have a top 10 engineering program, it's why they're a hub for biomedical research. A lot of the other privately funded institutions upon the mesa, like Scripps Research, like Salk, et cetera, have smaller overall dollar values of their grants, but they make up a bigger proportion of the, sort of the overall funding of the institute. So they don't have students, for example, that pay tuition the way UCSD does. They're not diversified in the same way.
Is there a reason? I have no idea. This is all new to me. Is there a reasonable cap? 30%? I have no idea. Or should, I mean, or no cap at all? I'm just kind of curious.
I think that is a very good question. I think that is the question-
Very good questions, it's just I don't understand the answers.
I think that is the question in DC right now, and to the point about how does, if we are going to completely upend the federal research business, the business of federal research, then I think that is the question that's driving a lot of advocacy and education on the Hill right now, is what is allowable? I mean, for most of these institutes, research itself is not a profitable enterprise. UCSD loses money on the research that they do every year. So there's no way to fund that level of advanced research and without significantly shifting the business model. So if the federal government is not going to allow investment in capital expenditures and real estate at the same level, then something needs to change in the overall business model to make it possible to do that research.
So I guess you'd be against any sort of a cap?
It doesn't matter what I think. I don't have an opinion.
Come on.
My main focus is on the impact in the San Diego region of these changes and the immediate impact on people's jobs, livelihoods, and the long-term impact on patients in the innovation industry. So I think I would leave it to people who understand the business of biomedical research to decide what the right cap is. I think that's traditionally how it's been done. The scientists at the institutes and the scientists at the university research entities have negotiated that based on, you know, real costs for many years.
Okay, so I guess my question, my colleague, is what is it you're really asking that we oppose these caps or, not clear?
Thank you. So I can read the resolution that is, that I'm asking us to send as a board-
I've read it. I'm just trying to compartmentalize it, I guess, is to express concern regarding the caps?
It's, it's, express, the quote is, "Express concern," and I want to read this because there's a lot of stakeholder kind of input. It wasn't just me who wrote this. "Now therefore hereby resolved that the County of San Diego Board of Supervisors expresses concern regarding recent federal actions toward the National Institutes of Health that negatively impact our biomedical sector and calls for increased federal funding for the National Institutes of Health, including funding state-of-the-art scientific infrastructure at sustainable levels in order to advance San Diego's biomedical leadership and drive our regional innovation economy."
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. And I did want to read that because there was a lot of stakeholder input on exactly what we should say. So thanks. Any other questions for my colleagues or comments? Go ahead, please.
I'll just be brief. Thank you so much for being here for the presentation, every, all the members of the public who came to speak that are directly impacted especially by this. It's very important to hear. Thank you, Vice Chair, for having this kind of be a stakeholder process to understand how the, how the decisions are impacting the local economy. And I think, to your point, that's what I'm more focused on is if there is going to be an impact to the economy, very intentional impact, right, then that needs to be evaluated along with the decisions of the administration. I think there's, you know, always room for improvement and for looking at these systems and the way they work. There's going to be a consequence to that, too, though. And in San Diego, we are direct, you know, more directly impacted than other regions are, just because of this is a big part of our economy. So, you know, I'm happy to support this, just, I don't think, from the language that is in the record and what was just read, you know, I am thinking about and making this decision, just San Diego County, you know, and how we, how we are impacted. I think I've been expressive about how I feel about the administration, but I would just say, like, this decision to support this is not about that. It's about who we heard from today, it's about how this will impact our economy. The biggest thing that I take from this is the brain drain. That's like really depressing to me. So, you know, and it's very real, and we see it happening in our community. So there are many different factors that are causing folks to leave here, and this is one of them now that we're adding to all of the other issues. It's very, very concerning for me, especially in a higher-cost area, too. So anyway, I just wanted to add that to the conversation, Vice Chair, appreciate you bringing this forward.
I previously failed to make a motion, so I'd like to make a motion to move this item forward, and I'd be really grateful for the support of my colleagues.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments or questions from any of my colleagues on the dice? Okay. Please call the vote.
Vice Chair Lawson-Ramer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to discussion item 14, receive presentation on regional fire preparedness. While the team gets set up, right, we have a, yes, okay, great. So while the team gets set up, I just want to go run through a little bit what the remainder of our day is going to look like. We do have a time certain for budget at 5:30. So, you know, it would be nice if the staff, our team, could have a few minutes before that. I can't promise that that will happen, but we will do our best. So our goal is to finish the Tuesday docket by 5:30. In order to do that, all of our comments for the remainder of the meeting will be one minute. If there's time, then we will allow folks to take a couple of minutes before we go into evening budget hearing. We will do closed session. We'll plan to do closed session first thing tomorrow. And then, I think, Andrew, it'd be great if, since we know we won't get through closed session today, if we could let people know that we'll, you know, be starting the land use docket sometime, not 9:00 AM, because we will be in closed session. So, and if we have time, we'll do all of the closed session comments today as well, so we could go straight into closed session. If we do not have time to do all the closed session comments today, we'll do it at the beginning of the meeting tomorrow. Does that all make sense? Questions from Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Montgomery Stott.
I get it, but for the Wednesday normal session, then, we have no idea, because we're going to be a few hours in closed session. So I just, for the people that show up for those items, it'd be nice if we had-
We will be a few hours-
A time certain or something, or could do it first.
I'm definitely open to do a time- Yeah, sure. I'm happy to do a time certain. I think that's fine. Why don't we, I'll talk to Claudia, and we'll kind of do an estimate of how long we think the closed session will be. And then, before we close today, we will set a time certain for land use to happen tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you for the suggestion. Okay. So Claudia, please let me know at some point how long you think it'll be. Okay. Thank you. Please, with our team, continue. Item 14. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the board. Following the devastating wildfires that impacted the Los Angeles region earlier this year, the San Diego County Board of Supervisors directed the chief administrative officer to evaluate our wildfire response, emergency communication capabilities, and vegetation management practices. In addition, the board asked the CIO to return with a presentation that would include updates on water reliability, insurance availability, and San Diego gas and electric- updates on water reliability, insurance availability, and San Diego Gas and Electric Fires safety efforts. Finally, the board directed the CAO to purchase a night flying helicopter for County Fire that would strengthen the first attack efforts on emergency wa, emerging wildfires in our region. Today's presentation provides an overview of the county's fire preparedness and response efforts, along with information on the region's water system, homeowners' insurance, and efforts by San Diego Gas and Electric. Joining me today is Chief Tony Meacham, Sharon Smith with the California Department of Insurance, Tom Porter with SDG&E, and Tish Berg with County Water Authority. I'll now turn the presentation over to Chief Meacham.
Thank you, Andrew. The county continues to make significant investments in fire protection and emergency medical services in our region. The board funds more than 320 firefighters with CAL FIRE, and the department is further supported by 62 county employees plus 14 in the Office of Emergency Services and 50 volunteer reserve firefighters. In addition to the 21 county fire stations, there are 18 state-funded fire stations that provide a unified emergency response. At peak staffing, CAL FIRE provides an additional 804 firefighters to meet the fire protection and EMS needs in our jurisdiction and support our ongoing, our partnerships with agencies. There are also five state-funded fire camps which provide critical service, including clearing vegetation and cutting fire lines during an incident. Finally, we have two aviation facilities, one in partnership with the sheriff at Gillespie and one run by CAL FIRE at the Ramona Airport. County Fire has over 100 firefighting apparatus, including engines, ladder trucks, water tenders, command and specialized vehicles, and we have over 100 support vehicles, including training apparatus and ambulances. Through our partnership with CAL FIRE, the state also provides an additional 85 ground firefighting apparatus and command vehicles that are used seamlessly within the County Fire Service area. County Fire acquired two additional 3,000 gallon water tenders in May, which will be strategically deployed in, one in North County and one in South County, and are intended to be a regional asset with other fire agencies when municipal water systems are unavailable. Multiple agencies help provide aerial fire suppression through the region. County Fire and the San Diego County Sheriff's Office operate a fleet of three fire helicopters that are equipped for both fire suppression and rescue missions. County Fire is working with CAL FIRE, the Sheriff's Office, and other entities on the purchase of a night flying helicopter, County Fire, and to continue to support the aviation needs of the Sheriff's Department. State and U.S. Forest Service air resources are available to the county, including helicopters, air tankers, a soon-to-be-based C-130, and other regional air resources are further supported by the City of San Diego's aviation program and San Diego Gas and Electric funded helicopters. County Fire and CAL FIRE provide all hazard response to incidents beyond wildfires, including medical emergencies, floods, hazardous material spills, swift water rescues, and earthquakes. In addition, the county continues to work closely with the 18 cities, 12 other fire districts, tribal fire departments, federal agencies, and the military to safeguard the region. A unique feature in the county is our Unified Disaster Council, which was established through a joint powers agreement between all 18 incorporated cities and the county. The Office of Emergency Services is one of only three in the state to be recognized by the Emergency Management Accreditation Program for the county's work in hazard identification, risk assessment, incident management, and emergency public information. All fire agencies in the region have worked closely with the Office of Emergency Services to support the rollout of the Genesis Alert app that quickly provides incident information, zone-based evacuation notification, and resources in multiple languages. The app is intended to speed up verified information to residents to empower real-time decision-making. In addition, County Fire's Community Emergence Response Team program provides regional outreach and disaster training through the unincorporated area to engage and empower residents. This fiscal year, the CERT program has provided nearly 50 disaster readiness trainings to over 2,000 county residents. On January 28, 2025, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to conduct a comprehensive review of the county's clearing and brush management efforts. County Fire and CAL FIRE operate a robust vegetation management program in the county, Fire Protection District, and other parts of the unincorporated region. In the first nine months of the current fiscal year, nearly 348 acres of fuel breaks were cleared and 1,563 acres of controlled burns were completed. This work is critical. When wildfires are present, this preventative work helps firefighters effectively tackle flames and protect lives and property. In addition, nearly 1,200 acres of land with hazardous brush was cleared in county parks and state responsibility areas. Identifying and maintaining evacuation corridors is critical to quickly and effectively move vehicle longs or roadways. In 2022, County Fire began operating a 20-foot roadside evacuation program. County Public Works already provides vegetation management services on the first 10 feet from the edge of the pavement. County Fire clears an additional 10 feet on key evacuation routes and provide fuel reduction on select state highways and county maintained roads. Nearly 900 lane miles of state and county roads have been cleared or treated in the first nine months of this fiscal year. Defensible space is also critical. Removing hazardous vegetation within 100 feet of a building is key to protecting structures from embers and flames and gives firefighters area of safety for operations. In 2024, we inspected more than 50,000 properties with over a 90% voluntary compliance, making us a statewide leader. County Fire continues to help homeowners with defensible space by hosting monthly community chipping events where removed vegetation can be disposed of safely. Making structural changes to a home to increase fire safety, known as home hardening, is also a central step that property owners should take. County Fire is using grant funds for our Home Hardening Pilot Program, which provides financial assistance to qualifying low and moderate income households to retrofit homes with fire resistant materials and ensure defensible space is provided. County Fire has also been exploring ways to implement a defensible space assistance program to support those who are financially or physically unable to complete defensible space work. County Fire will continue to seek outside funding for an assistance program and include a funding request as part of the five-year financial forecast. Additionally, County Fire is actively exploring public-private partnerships with local ranchers to use grazing animals such as goats and sheeps to aid in brush management for large properties or difficult-to-reach areas, and as needed, request for quote was posted in May. I'll now turn the presentation over to Tom Porter, Director of Emergency Management for San Diego Gas and Electric, to talk more about the wildfire preparedness and response efforts in the region.
Thank you, Chief Meacham, and thank you, Board, for the opportunity to present here today. SDG&E remains fully committed to our partnership with the county and stakeholders in emergency services throughout our community for wildfire community and community safety. Our network of weather stations is really second to none, and we are up to 223 weather stations that are streaming continuous weather throughout the region that is available to our firefighters, first responders, and academics who are studying how weather works in our area. It's all in real time and continuously available. The other thing that we're doing is continuously improving our fire potential index, which we use to determine how we operate our system on days when it's, when the, the weather is showing concern for us, hot, dry, windy, those kind of times. And we continue to improve that system with the weather stations that we're talking about and in conjunction with our, our partners across the region and academia here in San Diego. On the wildfire, firefighting helicopter program, we remain committed to providing two Blackhawk UH-60 helicopters to be dispatched for initial attack year-round and extended attack in, in the region from Gillespie Field by CAL FIRE, County Fire. And SDG&E remains committed to our collaborative relationship here with aviation resources as we have for well over a decade at this point. Our culture is continuous improvement. And as I mentioned, with our FBI and all of our programs related to wildfire prevention and, and improvements, including our public safety power shut-off efforts, all of that is reviewed annually and after every incident to ensure that we are continuously improving. I'll now turn over the presentation to Sharon Smith, Outreach Analyst with the California Department of Insurance, to talk more about their role in homeowners' insurance market.
Thank you so much for the introduction. Good afternoon. I think before we dive into exactly what the Department of Insurance is doing to address the insurance crisis, it's important to understand how we got here. We all know, we've seen the headlines, insurance companies have been increasingly limiting coverage in wildfire-prone areas or leaving the state altogether, forcing more and more policyholders onto the fair plan. The insurance of last resort has unfortunately become the first resort for many Californians. Now, several key factors are driving these changes. The increasing severity and frequency of natural disasters, as well as rising global inflation, is putting unprecedented stress on the insurance industry nationwide, not just in California. Now, the cost of rebuilding homes and businesses has surged with rising prices for materials, labor shortages, and supply chain disruptions. Additionally, reinsurance, which is just insurance for insurance companies, is becoming harder to obtain and more expensive as catastrophic events increase worldwide. So as risk grows, the insurance market is contracting to protect financial stability. And unlike public utilities, insurance companies are not legally required to offer coverage. Lastly, the regulatory framework for insurance in California, Proposition 103, has not kept pace with the changing insurance landscape since it was passed in 1988. Recognizing this, the commissioner has taken steps to modernize these outdated regulations to create a more resilient insurance market. Which brings us to our sustainable insurance strategy. These are some of the key regulatory reforms under the strategy. First, streamlining and improving the department's rate application approval process to reduce delays so insurers can adjust to market conditions more efficiently. Second, introducing regulations that allow insurers to use catastrophe modeling to assess risk more accurately and account for wildfire mitigation efforts, as well as the incorporation of reinsurance costs. Finally, if insurers want to use catastrophe modeling and incorporate reinsurance in their rate-making process, they must commit to writing more policies and increasing insurance availability in wildfire distress areas, places like Ramona and Alpine. The sustainable insurance strategy aims to reverse the growing reliance on the fair plan, ensuring that more Californians have access to traditional insurance options. Now I'll turn over the presentation to Tish Berg, Chief Operating Officer with the County Water Authority, to talk more about water availability in the region.
Thank you, Sharon. Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and Honorable Supervisors. On behalf of our 22-member agencies who deliver safe and reliable water to our region, I'll be providing a high-level overview of regional water supplies and the coordination between wholesale and retail water agencies related to wildfire response. The bottom line is that San Diego County water agencies are well-prepared and well-coordinated for a range of emergency responses. That's because over the last 30 years, the County Water Authority and the region's ratepayers have invested approximately $3 billion in improved infrastructure that helps ensure we are ready for a full array of emergencies, from droughts to earthquakes to wildfires. That money has been invested well in new and larger dams to increase in-county water storage, new and more secure sources of water, and numerous ongoing capital improvement projects to upgrade pipelines and other structures that are nearing the end of their useful life. Today, our main focus as an organization is maintaining the infrastructure that ensures our 22-member agencies have a reliable source of water when and where it's needed. We also work closely with our member agencies to coordinate everything from routine water deliveries to emergency responses, specifically through the Water Agency Emergency Collaborative. The result is that we have plenty of water available for fire suppression regardless of the weather, and there are no practical constraints on our ability to deliver water for fire suppression at the regional level. So let's take a closer look at how the system works. On the map, the two parallel blue lines that run through the center of the region are the Water Authority aqueducts, and they're capable of delivering 900 million gallons of water per day. The retail water agencies are represented by the different color zones, and each of them connect to the aqueducts and collectively operate thousands of miles of smaller diameter pipelines that generally run under streets and utility corridors. These local water agencies develop district-specific emergency response tactics with their first responders. These local agencies are also responsible for delivering water to fire hydrants, which is why it's important that local fire departments have a close working relationship with the retail water agency. Countywide, the Water Agency Emergency Collaborative has been hosting what we call Water 101 courses to help improve the coordination and relationships between retail agencies and first responders. Each local water agency's staffing and resources are unique, and emergency response capabilities could range from water trailers to generators to emergency radios. As mentioned, regional and state networks move mutual aid resources where needed throughout the county when emergencies strike. For the County Water Authority, our purpose is to develop, transport, and distribute water from a variety of sources to the retail agencies. To do that, we operate and maintain more than 300 miles of large diameter pipelines. Most of them are large enough to walk through. We also coordinate regional initiatives on water issues, such as drought emergencies, and we support the County EOC, Emergency Operations Center, whenever an emergency has a water utility component. It's worth noting that the Water Authority has a fully functional incident command center and emergency operations center that we deploy internally for emergencies, large and small. But our main role is collaborator and convenor, and we do that in many ways. We collaborate with regional fire chiefs and water agency general managers and are in the process of developing a summit meeting with the County Fire Chiefs in the fall. We coordinate regional training, exercises, and mutual aid. Finally, I'll note that we advocate for funding at the state and federal levels alongside and on behalf of our, our member agencies, including a $9.7 million ask from Proposition 4 for backup power for our member agencies so they can operate during public safety power shut-offs. I'll now turn the presentation back to Andrew Strong.
And thank you, Tish. Today's recommendations include receiving this presentation on wildfire preparedness, response, and resiliency, water supply and infrastructure, and residential insurance availability in San Diego County. Vice Chair Lawson Reamers and members of the board, this concludes our presentation, and we're here for any questions.
Okay. We will now go to a public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have nine requests to speak on this item, four in person, and five requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received one e-comment in support. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 14 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand in the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have one minute to address the board. I ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. Vice Chair indicated.
Go ahead, Andrew.
The Vice Chair indicated that for all the discussion items this afternoon, in order to get through the items before the public hearings on the budget at 5:30, speaking time will be limited to one minute.
Arbitrarily changing the rules all the time. My person uses the name.
I'd like to invite, before you begin, I'd like to invite forward the speakers, Conchuelo, Audra, Billy Tomasello, and Mark.
Allegedly, but okay. I mean, can you imagine if you guys weren't here? Thank you so much for lying to the people, but I want to say, I feel like you're giving, letting the cat out of the bag and giving people too much information. I think that, you know, you don't want to tell them that you're planning to take over San Diego with some kind of natural disaster, right? To pretend to help with fires, right? When we're like also implementing things that create fires. So you should probably, you know, think about that. And like, you don't want to tell people that there's enough water for fire suppression, especially when you're telling them that you're going to give them sewer water for them to drink. It's better to not let them know that there's plenty of water to fight a fire. Also, I think the goats and sheep, that's nice, but we also have children that we can do. They're very resilient. And so like to ask them to go and graze the land would probably be more beneficial. You could probably get paid for that, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Billy Tomasello, and I serve as the Vice President for CAL FIRE Local 2881. I have the honor and privilege of representing over 1,000 firefighters in San Diego County, and I'm here to talk on two topics. First, the helicopters. We are in strong support of moving forward with the purchase of the helicopters equipped with night flying capabilities, and we have every intent to fly those helicopters at night. With that request, I do ask that. With that request, I do ask that respectfully that those positions are fully funded, and that it does not impact or take away from county fire department existing operations or programs. Secondly, the water tenders. Appreciate the support in purchasing a couple water tenders. However, currently, there is no fully allocated money to staff those vital resources. We all saw those fires in LA, the destruction that it caused with the lack of water supply. So we kindly ask that we develop a plan to move forward to staff these positions seven days a week, 365 days a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Oh. ...to enhance fire mitigation so he could grab the land for affordable housing. This was a bill that was introduced in 2020 SB 182. It was authored by then State Senator Hannah Beth Jackson, a Democrat from Santa Barbara, whose district had just suffered the Thomas Fire. This bill sought to increase local planning requirements and guidelines for permitting development in certain fire hazard severity zones. But what happened to that bill? It passed through both the Senate and the House. It was actually a very good bill. What happened? Mr. Newsom vetoed it. Why did he veto it? Because it did not comport with his idea of getting rid of single-family homes and pushing people into multifamily homes.
Okay. I literally don't have time, so you guys are going to have to listen up out there. These people don't care, the board doesn't care. This is a video about Klaus Schwab, it's like a minute long. He literally is saying he's pantry governments. Nathan Fletcher, who was the head of the board here, said he's the young global leader, so is Gavin Newsom, our governor, working with the UN to destroy us and profit as they make fires, remove people...
Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker, please.
One minute is criminal. Criminal.
It's telling. One minute is telling. They don't care. They don't care about the people's words. They don't care. Okay, so stop calling this fire preparedness when what's really happening is strategic abandonment. In East County, critical roads repairs and evacuation routes continue to be delayed, and that's not just an oversight, it's a pattern. People who live and work in the back country are being left with unsafe, unpaved roads while you spotlight plans and presentations that ignore the core issues. These fires are not disasters, they're being allowed, even engineered, to drive people out. We are witnessing a slow, calculated push to depopulate rural areas and concentrate the population into tightly controlled 15-minute cities. These so-called smart cities may be marketed as progress, but they are part of a much broader restructuring, one aligned with the UN Agenda. That's Agenda 21, which aim to reshape land use, mobility, and freedom under the guise of sustainability. This isn't just about planning, it's about control.
Thank you. For the record, that speaker is Consuelo. Now, here for the individuals that requested to speak by phone, we'll start with our first caller.
I agree with Consuelo. I feel safer, by the way. Congrats on dousing the Henderson fire. But I must mention that the lack of budding representation on Sandag for the indigenous and East County communities seems to have hampered or delayed work on road repairs or providing adequate evacuation routes. People who live or work in East County should not have to rely on an unpaved and windy truck trail, often with one lane and potential for cars getting stuck in the mud. Not mentioning the order of the agenda items, by the way, seems to be confusing callers. Hope this is not drug-induced forgetfulness induced by a one-size-fits-all policy. I also hear that you have unqualified people giving medical advice or even administering these. Tara, you said not having biomedical stuff...
Thank you. Here from the next caller.
Fire! We need more water. Why? Because we have more lithium all over the place? And what does water do to lithium fires? Absolutely nothing. But if we invested into, let's say, something that is actually green, like, let's say, the hemp batteries, yeah, no, we could actually put out the battery storage locations with what. But no, we don't want to go ahead and do that, because that is actually green, a renewable resource, that we could turn into batteries and fuel our cars and everything that we want to do, much better than lithium. But unfortunately, Monica loves slavery. Monica does not want to go ahead and recognize anyone that goes ahead and stops slavery at all, because she wants to go ahead and encourage it. Encourage us to buy as much lithium as humanly possible because of the people mining the cobble. She likes the idea that we are going ahead and basically funding slavery through the...
Thank you. For the record, that speaker was Justin Castro. Now, here from the final caller.
It's true, record amounts of fires caused by what the state enables and allows. Rampant drug use, arson, EVs, and even stag attacks, which are difficult to respond to. And guess who's going to pay for the state's insurance company, the unfair plan? Everybody who's actually been able to keep their private insurance company plan. How unfair is that? The state is planning on a monopoly of the insurance industry and/or that people will lose their homes due to having no affordable insurance. And the county still has helicopters that are capable of fighting fires at night. And when I pointed facts out like that at the Sandag Public Safety Committee, Dave McQueen threw a temper tantrum. How about the county fire station in DeZoro that was recently closed for three months and ended up delaying fire response to a family's house that was on fire? That type of craziness is why normal people are really fleeing this state. The ones who are leaving because of what Tara referenced earlier, those crazies have nowhere left to go but Canada and Europe. And if only they would leave permanently, the rest of us would have a better chance at saving this dying state from your guys...
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to first of all thank the team, all of you, so appreciate it. Also appreciate the comments of the public speakers. Specifically want to uplift the support for the night flying helicopter. I think that definitely is a priority that this board has expressed many times. And I know we've had helicopters that had the capability of flying at night, but, you know, I think we've had the conversation, we want to make sure that the helicopter actually flies at night. So just wanted to take a moment to uplift that and thank our commenters for that as well. Any, we have, Supervisor Desmond, you have your hand up.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I guess, so Andrew, you say that we used the twin-engine helicopter at night on the fire just recently, or no?
So right now, we, at the recently, at the fire that was recently, we had, we did have two assets that were on scene, but they did not fly at night recently. I'll defer to Chief Meacham to talk a little bit about the specifics of potentially what we would need if we did have to fly at night at the moment.
So Supervisor Desmond, through the Vice Chair, no, we did not fly night operations on either the county or the state side on the Henderson fire. The new 412 copter is flying and operational during the day. It's one of the two primary helicopters that we operate at Coliseum in partnership with the Sheriff's Department. In terms of moving into the night flying capabilities, we've been working closely with PSG and the CIO's office to look at all options. We are not committed to the 412 platform. We believe there's better firefighting platforms, but that is a long process to make sure we clearly understand all of the costs that are going to be involved with that. That's additional pilots, that is minimum hour requirements. Also, a key player in this is CAL FIRE and the state's commitment. I spoke recently to CAL FIRE Director Joe Tyler. He is also committed to ensuring we have night flying capabilities here, and so we need to also get through the remainder of the state budget and then see what our options are to get there. I am committed to flying at night. I believe that night aerial firefighting is the standard, as long as we go through the appropriate risk management process, that we're not overly extending our air crews and asking our pilots, who are very capable aerial firefighters, you know, to do something that's unsafe. But under the right conditions and with the right training, it's highly effective. And, you know, we identified in 2003 that we needed to be flying at night. It's, I need to point out, it's 2025, and we're not flying at night yet.
When did we buy this twin-engine helicopter?
I would have to confirm with the Sheriff's Department.
Three, four years ago? I think that's plenty of time to get manned up. But anyway, all right, I do have a question, I think, I guess it's for Sharon Smith with the insurance strategy. My office, we get a ton of calls from people. I represent a big area of North County, eastern North County, and I hear from people that, you know, their insurance cost is astronomical if they can even get it, and, you know, having the fair, maybe getting or not being able to get the fair plan. Some people say, I can't even sell my house. I'd like to move out of the state, but I can't sell my place. So I did notice that the Sustainable Insurance Strategy was announced in September of '23, so it's been about 20 months for the strategy. What tactics? I mean, are we attracting any more insurance agencies? I think, I don't know, State Farm, I think they said they're not going to write any more policies in California. So have you made any movement on insurance carriers insuring here in California?
Yeah, so it's been a process to actually get the regulations in place. They unveiled the strategy in 2023, but it wasn't actually implemented until December. We're reviewing a lot of the catastrophe models that I was talking about. Those aren't yet in place yet. But all state said at our last public hearing that they're looking to write in all corners of the state once it is actually in place. So what our department is doing is reviewing those catastrophe models. At that point, insurance companies will say, hey, I want to use this model, this is how it's going to affect rate-making, they're going to submit an application, we'll review that. Once that is approved, then that's when consumers should start seeing the changes in their insurance policies, but it is a process to actually get that implemented and in place.
The wheels of government turn very slowly, unfortunately. And so, yeah, it's, you know, it's a big issue with the insurance. I mean, so the fires are bad enough, but even when the fires aren't burning, then the phone calls are about their insurance, and every time somebody gets a new insurance bill. So I do want to say thank you very much for the presentation to our county staff, CAL FIRE, SDG, and the Water Authority, all for being here. I think it's a good mix of talent and information for being here today. I brought this item forward in January, and it was in response to basically what we saw in Los Angeles. And I believe we need to do everything we can to prevent a catastrophic fire here in San Diego County. We need to use every tool in our toolbox, including helicopters, preventing homeless encampments from starting fires, fuel management, with animals, grazing, whatever it takes, and making sure our water hydrants have water. So that's for the Water Authority, I'm glad to hear that. Here, I'm just going to stop real quick, I got a question. So I know we have, and this is for Chief Meacham, the, we have the villages or communities of Ramona, we have Alpine, we have Fallbrook, we have Valley Center. There are fire hydrants within those, in those communities, but not necessarily in the uninhabited, unincorporated areas where a lot of these fires tend to start. Is that right?
That's correct, Supervisor Desmond, through the Vice Chair. So the municipal water districts essentially stop at the eastern edge of the Palma Valley, outside of Valley Center, Ramona, and down through Alpine. About 80% of the county fire protection district service area is well-water from single-family homes or water that we bring to the fire. We work very closely with all of the water districts to ensure their, you know, that their systems are intact, they're involved in our, you know, planning and development review to ensure we have water. But as soon as you get outside an established water district, we do have challenges finding water, and in drought years, you know, it can get worse during the drought years.
I know Valley Center's got a water district, and they probably have hydrants there.
They do have hydrants in Valley Center.
And do they, do we, I don't know, is Ramona, does Alpine?
So Ramona does, Alpine, Valley Center, and then in your district, Fallbrook area has two water districts, along with Vallecitos and Valley Center Water District split, the Deer Springs area. So until you kind of get to the foot of Palomar Mountain, throughout North County, we have fairly decent hydrant and water systems. Ramona has a good water system, and then it kind of follows the populated areas just into Alpine and back down through Spring Valley, and pretty much everything west of the 94 down to the border is hydrant. Everything east of the 94, Alpine up to Ramona, is dependent on wells.
So when you say depend, you can't hook up to a well with your fire hose or something.
We do have the ability to hook up to wells. We also require onsite water storage as part of approval to build a home. We can connect to those, and those are smaller tanks, usually in the 10,000 to 20,000 gallon weights. We have a whole different series. We have cisterns down along the border where rainwater will fill concrete. But the most important thing we do is we bring our own water to the fire, and we just plan on bringing our own firefighting water to the firefight. And the farther the fire is, or the more remote it is in East County, the more water tenders we bring, because they typically will have to drive back into a hydrant-headed area.
We've got these hellahydrons, and we've got, I don't know, a handful of, how many of those do we even have, and are more in the works?
We have four established hellahydrons now that are in place permanently. County Fire and CAL FIRE also own five portable hellahydrons that we can deploy. We use those extensively. Last year, we have pre-identified sites that have good well systems that can support the refill rates, or we have the ability to hire private water tenders to support those. We're currently working on a grant through the San Diego River Conservancy as part of Prop 4 money to acquire additional hellah wells. Something else we've really looked at is additional onsite water storage, and we're in infancy of that, but whether it be at, you know, county property, at special district property, but about building larger tanks across the East County that are specifically dedicated for a place for us to go refill and have available water.
All right, well, thank you very much, and I just want to make sure we don't take our foot off the gas here. We just had the Henderson fire up in Palma Valley, and thank you very much for the great job and the great work that was done there. I know there were some evacuations, but it was not, I don't know if any structures were lost in that at all, but that was a great job. I put that thing out, and I forgot how many acres, how many acres did that thing get to?
We ended up at just under 300 acres on the Henderson fire.
300?
Just under, yes.
Yeah, well, thanks, I was grateful for that. So it was very, your quick was, you know, response was very quick, and firefighters, everybody did a great job with that, and included the Sheriff's Department, too. So I'd still like to see us do more when it comes to fuel reduction, and I guess we'll soon see the results. We have an RFP out there for goat and sheep grazing. I've learned more about goats and sheep than everyone to know. But, so, I'd like, I'm very interested in this type of presentation, and I'd like to see it every year, to be honest with you. I'd like to see this brought back, and I defer to you, you know, when that's the best time, maybe before fire season or hopefully before, but maybe if we could have this update, because I think it's very, it's on the front of people's minds here in California anywhere, and as technology changes, or funding changes, or even elected leaders change, I think we got to ensure that San Diego County is always looking to improve and assess our needs, I think, every year. What do we need to do to prevent LA, that LA fire from happening here? So I'd like to make a motion to receive the presentation on the regional firefighter preparedness and bring this format back every year to keep us updated and informed on the issue.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Montgomery, step.
Yeah, I'm happy to second that. I just wanted to flag just, you know, the nighttime drops and the helicopter operation is very important to this board. I think we've talked about it publicly before, and so I would like to at least get some more clear resolution if we, you know, for the board in the very near future. In addition, I just, you know, thank you for the presentation overall, but the piece on the insurance is a very important piece of this puzzle. I know you may not be able to answer this right now, but my concern is that when we talk about the rate hikes and the different formulas for various parts of the entire state, but, you know, here we're, of course, focused on San Diego County, never in that conversation is the, we do not discuss the insurance CEOs and the shareholders, and if there's a difference between what they're taking home when we're going out to homeowners and to members of our community and asking more of them. And so I think whether it's a part of what you present or what our own internal research is, I would like to at least see that so we can start discussing that, because it's, I think it's a very important part of the conversation that doesn't always get the attention that I think it deserves. So I just wanted to add that, but thank you very much, and happy to second.
Thank you very much. Any further comments from anybody? Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Montgomery, step. Please vote. Please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Raymer, that motion passes unanimously with all Supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We now will begin with item number 15, receive and approve the Mental Health Services Act annual update for fiscal year 2025, 2026. We begin with a staff presentation. You guys go ahead, take a minute.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Lawson Raymer and members of the Board. Since its implementation in 2004, the Mental Health Services Act, known as MHSA, has provided critical ongoing funding to counties to support local behavioral health programming. Every year, counties are required to complete and submit annual updates for MHSA-funded programs to the state. Today, we are requesting the Board's authority to approve the annual MHSA update for fiscal year 25, 26. With me today from Behavioral Health Services are Nadia Povara, Acting Director, and Cecily Thornton Stearns, Assistant Director and Chief Program Officer. I'll now hand the presentation over to Nadia.
Thanks, Kim. MHSA is funded by a 1% state tax on personal income over $1 million per year. MHSA serves people of all ages with serious mental illness through a broad continuum of prevention, early intervention, treatment, and workforce education and training. With the implementation of the Behavioral Health Services Act on July 1, 2026, this will be the last MHSA annual update. It's important to note the significant role that MHSA has played in the county. Behavioral Health Services serves approximately 112,000 people annually, and a significant portion of the services are funded by MHSA. In fiscal year 23, 24, MHSA-funded programs helped more than 66,000 people. Over the last two decades, the county has invested approximately $3 billion in MHSA programs to provide much-needed behavioral health care to San Diego County residents of all ages. San Diego County's MHSA budget has increased over the last several years. The fiscal year 25, 26 budget is a little over $303 million, as represented by the dark bar. It is included as part of the county's fiscal year 25, 26 recommended operational plan. Mental Health Services Act is the largest source of behavioral health service, behavioral health services revenue, accounting for nearly a quarter of all behavioral health services funding. We also utilize MHSA funds to draw down nearly $130 million of Medicaid funding. The majority of the MHSA funding is used to maintain the network of existing health To ensure we're meeting the needs of our communities, the MHSA annual update is informed by stakeholder engagement through the formal community program planning process. This year's process included listening sessions, focus groups, an online input form, and interviews with stakeholders in collaboration with UCSD Health Partnership and their community networks, along with engagement involving the Behavioral Health Advisory Board and other community-based meetings. Following the community program planning process, community members had a 30-day public comment period to submit feedback on the draft MHSA annual plan, which concluded with a public hearing during the May Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting. I'll now hand it over to Cecily to present on programmatic highlights from the annual update.
Thank you, Nadia. The first MHSA component is Community Services and Supports, or CSS, which provides comprehensive and community-based mental health treatment and support services to people of all ages with serious mental health conditions. The fiscal year 25, 26 allocation for CSS accounts for about 75% of the total MHSA budget, or $227 million. We'll be making enhancements to CSS programs for both adults and children, totaling an increase of $31 million. Today, I will be highlighting just a few of them. This includes adding funding for the development of two upcoming crisis stabilization units, also known as CSUs, one in the East Region and the Sharp CSU. We'll also be increasing funds to various treatment programs that support some of our most vulnerable community members. These include, but are not limited to, assertive community treatment or ACT services for those who are experiencing or at risk of homelessness, assisted outpatient treatment or AOT for individuals who are ordered by the court to receive intensive treatment to avoid further justice involvement, medication clinics for children and youth transitioning out of juvenile detention facilities and residential programs who need medication management, and school-based full-service partnership for children and youth which provide outpatient services at clinics, schools, homes, and the community. We'll also be enhancing housing and short-term rental assistance for clients enrolled in strength-based case management, ACT programs, and short-term mental health-intensive case Prevention and Early Intervention, or PEI, services provide mental health outreach, education, and engagement to communities with a focus on connecting them to services. PEI accounts for 17% of the overall fiscal year 25, 26 MHSA budget, which is approximately $51 million. We'll be adding over $2 million to various community outreach and messaging efforts intended to expand our engagement to underserved or unserved groups to increase awareness, access, and linkage to services. The Youth Engagement Ambassador Program is a new program with a budget of $400,000. It aims to equip, engage, and enable youth to serve as local ambassadors for Own Your Mindset, a new youth-focused mental health media campaign. For the Family Peer Support Program, we'll be increasing the budget by over $300,000 for enhancements to include guided navigation support for adults and families dealing with serious mental health conditions. Under BHSA, prevention funding will be moving to the state. We're still awaiting guidance on the timing and structure of funding distribution to support informed planning for the future of our prevention programs. Workforce education and training supports the development and growth of a diverse public mental health workforce. These programs are especially important in light of the national behavioral health worker shortage. Under this component, we've continued to maintain our existing workforce programs. This includes the Public Mental Health Academy, which prepares students for local employment opportunities in entry-level public behavioral health systems through academic counseling and support. As of March 2025, there were over 50 students enrolled in the program. There's also a community psychiatry fellowship program, which helps psychiatry residents to be able to continue their fellowship within public behavioral health and foster the development of future leaders. Since its implementation in 2017, there have been 25 psychiatric residents who have completed the program. Of these graduates, 21 have continued to work in public behavioral health settings, with most of them employed here locally. We are also making strides to increase the public behavioral health workforce through our innovation funds. The innovation component is for new and inventive mental health programs that require evaluation services to assess clients' and system outcomes. In 2023, the Board voted to invest $75 million of innovation funding over five years to support recruiting and retaining a skilled behavioral health workforce. In partnership with the Policy and Innovation Center, these efforts have culminated in the design and implementation of the Elevate Behavioral Health Workforce Fund. Elevate will support upskilling, training, certification, tuition reimbursement, and incentives such as zero-interest loan programs for people currently working or interested in working for county behavioral health programs. We're excited to announce that Elevate will open applications for the loan and upskilling program to align with the fall semester. We anticipate that Elevate will support over 2,500 individuals over the next five years in joining or staying within the public behavioral health system. This program will be a much-needed step towards addressing the behavioral health worker shortage on a local level. I'll now hand it back to Nadia to speak about upcoming transition to BHSA.
BHSA's implementation next year will come with significant changes. The county's funding will be reduced from 95% to 90% due to shifting the state for administration, shifting to the state for administration, workforce, and prevention. As shown on the slide, the funding components will also change, which will have large, a large impact on services that we are able to sustain. BHSA will have three components: 35% for full-service partnerships, 35% for behavioral health services and supports, and 30% for housing interventions. The emphasis on housing interventions, which are non-clinical, non-villable services, will likely also result in reduced Medi-Cal revenue. Other large-scale changes will be required under BHSA as well, including new expansive data, outcome, and financial reporting requirements. BHSA will also require more extensive and tailored community engagement. And as BHSA guidance continues to be released by the California Department of Healthcare Services, we'll continue to assess the system, changes from a system-wide perspective. Our goal is to ensure the least amount of impact to our beneficiaries and provider network while prioritizing the core services that align with our role as a specialty behavioral health plan. It's important to note that as we shift to BHSA and this new mandated components, we anticipate not being able to sustain some of the existing MHSA-funded programs. When possible, we'll continue to pursue other revenue sources, and we'll also have to make difficult decisions around which programs we'll continue. We are committed to working with other departments, our stakeholders, and our providers to ensure transparency around the upcoming changes. Today's action requests the Board's authority to receive the MHSA annual update for fiscal year 25, 26, and approve its submission to the Commission and the state. Thank you. This concludes our presentation, and we're now available for questions.
Okay, we'll go to public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Raymer, we have 10 requests to speak on this, item 3 in person, and seven requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received one e-comment that was neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 15 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. Again, you have one minute to address the Board. I'd like to invite Ford Consuelo, allegedly Audra and Mark.
If my person uses the name Audra, how cool is it to drug children, ladies, right? You're not going to look up because you're like, I don't want to own up to what I'm doing. I have some suggestions. We could try PCP with the kids, Angel Dust, right? You could also do...
Andrew, could you please pause Audra's...
What? Oh, all of a sudden...
Okay, I just want to remind Audra, but also everybody, that under the Board rules, remarks and questions must be addressed to the Board.
Sure.
That's the four of us, not to the county staff.
Right.
So you can go ahead and talk to us.
You're also staff, so it's a little confusing. Confused. So are you not staff?
Can you keep her off for a second? Okay, to clarify, under the Board rules, we, me and Joel, sorry, me and Supervisor Anderson, and Supervisor Desmond, and Supervisor Montgomery Step, we're elected, so we are not staff. We work for voters. So you can talk to us, because that's the purpose of you being here, is to come yell at us. But the county staff, not. Okay, thanks.
The purpose of coming is to yell at you guys? That's interesting. Yeah, I'm going to continue, because these are the people that are the ones drugging children. So I'm trying to make suggestions to them about what we could give these kids, like fentanyl. I mean, they'll just like bend over and like dangle in the air. That's cool, right? We could also give them mushrooms. You already do psychotropic drugs. How cool is that, right? Do you get to see them triple? It is so great. What else could we do to the children? Lobotomy, right? I mean, how cool would that be to just like test what they're able to do when you like open up their brain and like, you know, put probes in it? What else could we could, we could just sexualize them and sexually abuse them, which you guys are already doing. Great job.
Next speaker, please.
One minute again.
I'll ask you to please state your name for the record.
Okay, Consuelo, just like homelessness, mental health has become a goldmine for this county, and yet we've seen meaningful, no meaningful progress. In fact, the crisis is worse. More people are on the streets, more suffering, more visible breakdown, while the system continues to absorb staggering sums of money. According to the update, there's an estimated $479 million available for 2026 and '25 fiscal year, yet the balance is $176 million. That's not just mismanagement, that's willful neglect. What's even more telling is that despite all the claims of rising need, not $1 is set aside for capital facilities or tech infrastructure. Wouldn't it be common sense to build clinics in undeserved areas or where unhoused, or where the unhoused, addicted, or mentally ill individuals actually are, to bring services to the communities that need them? Unless, of course, that's not the goal. Because it's becoming clear that the goal is not healing or...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark, so you're on book states here. MHSA funding requires stakeholder engagement through community program planning, county behavioral health services. Okay, the stakeholders, these are the people making money off it. Also, I'm sure that these centers that these people will be held in, these behavioral health centers for psychiatry, will be profitable. And you're not addressing the problem. Stress causes mental health problems. Everyone needs to see this video from 6 minutes 40 seconds to 24 minutes. I say this all the time, because monetary problems is a big part of our problem, makes people lose their houses, divorce, fight, yeah. And here's an article called "State of Evidence for the Use of Psychotropic Medications on School-Aged Youth." This is totally evil. The psychiatric association makes money. People need to see The Minds of Men on YouTube, this title here, really scary.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
Oh, well, it's good that MHSA has $479 million estimated available funding for the next fiscal year with a projected unspent balance of $176 million. But I find it odd that with all claim need for mental health services and clinics, that there are no dollars that are funded for actual capital facilities and tech needs. For instance, wouldn't it be prudent to establish a few mental health clinics in underserved areas or areas where drug addicts or homeless gather to hopefully reduce crime and the danger of wildfires? And why does the children, the school-based full-service partnership, ASP, have a $47 million budget? Over.
We'll hear from the next caller.
My name is Kathleen Lippett. Thanks for letting me speak. As the county continues to address and receive approval for Mental Health Services Act, please do not do this in isolation. It continues, the county continues to pursue marijuana availability and therefore will increase youth use. Science has demonstrated that marijuana impacts mental health. Why you would want to increase the availability, use and access and normalization of it defies logic and common sense. Marijuana user, young people especially, experience negative emotions, strange behavior, imagination, violent propensities, paranoia, suicidal thoughts, et cetera. So please, try to do something that actually addresses some root.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
My name is Becky Raff, and I'm here to express concern about serious oversight in the Mental Health Services Act annual update. The report details over $300 million in funding to support prevention, early intervention, and treatment of mental health conditions, yet it fails to acknowledge one of the most well-documented risk factors for developing psychos... well-documented risk factors for developing psychosis, anxiety, and depression in youth: marijuana use, especially its impact on those under 25. The DEA, the NIA, and peer-reviewed studies have confirmed that marijuana use, particularly in adolescents and young adults, is strongly associated with increased risk of schizophrenia, cognitive decline, and suicidal ideation. So why is this not part of the county's prevention strategy? We're spending hundreds of millions of dollars on mental health interventions while ignoring a major upstream cause. If the county is serious about mental health equity, then we must include public education on the mental health consequences of youth marijuana use. We owe...
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hey, could you go ahead and display what I have for this topic? And let me know that it's displayed because I'm on the phone. Hello?
Your email is displayed on the...
Hello?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Okay, now that we're going ahead and covered the fact that you guys don't really care about us, and the reason why we have a mental increase is because you are spouting bullshit. You're telling us things that we believe for many years, like merit-based things, and now we're switching it back to racist-based shit. For example, RCA O. RCA O should have been Michael Lu. He transformed all of California into a booby-bite mental system. He has something that he accomplished. Ebony is black. That's what she has. And we're all supposed to say, "Yes, that's a great fucking thing," when it's not. The color of your skin doesn't mean shit.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Madison. As you consider the Mental Health Services Act annual update, I urge you to address the growing impact of cannabis use on youth mental health. High potency cannabis products are more accessible than ever, and their use among teens is linked to increased risks of anxiety, depression, psychosis, and suicidal thoughts, especially in vulnerable populations that this act is designed to support. With over $300 million being invested in behavioral health services, this is a critical moment to strengthen prevention and early intervention strategies that include cannabis-related education and screening for youth. Let's ensure that the Mental Health Services Act programs protect the mental health of our young people by addressing this issue head-on. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, Chair Lawson Reimer. My name is Terri Anne Skelly. As a public health advocate, I support item 15. There's been much discussion regarding the problems being experienced by the county's young adults, including underemployment, inadequate education, and mental health problems, and drug addictions often co-occurring. As a parent, and after spending countless hours on parent and community boards, I'm well aware of the unfortunate health outcomes, especially mental health issues, that marijuana use causes for youth and young adults. I wonder if we all really comprehend the consequences that would be having more marijuana storefronts in our county unincorporated communities. The visibility, promotion, and advertising of marijuana storefronts via social media and billboards threatens sabotages and diverts the life of young people who may well decide that an acceptable form of relaxation, diversion, or digression is getting high. The county should only involve themselves in those business activities that will decrease...
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Uh, Super President Montgomery step.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Happy to move staff recommendation to just slide nine, the transition. I know we discussed this a little bit when the Prop 1 was brought before us to support as a board. I just want, there's a lot of questions, I won't ask them all now, but the difference between the community services and supports as opposed to the columns that are in the BHSA, what is the like on-the-ground impact of, what is the difference, and what are the on-the-ground impacts?
Thank you for your question. So it's evolving, I would say, a bit. So community services and supports under MHSA are all of our like core treatment programs. So this is everything from CSUs, mobile crisis response teams, all of our outpatient services, sort of a majority of our, I would say, core services that we offer as a behavioral health plan. When we switch over to BHSA, so the prevention in total will go to the State Department of Public Health, and then under full-service partnerships, the sort of, some of the programs that were under the CSS component, if you will, will fall under their like ACT programs. They also come with much sort of stricter requirements in terms of following evidence-based practices and fidelity models and things like that. So we're likely going to have a little bit of room to grow in that area, which is, that's great, but the behavioral health support services is sort of the catch-all of everything else, and that involves a lot of the other services that we are at this point anticipating we won't have enough funding to cover everything that is currently identified as like a core service. And so we're working through that process to sort of look at the before and after, and as guidance is coming out and we better understand sort of the nuances of what services are now eligible and what's no longer eligible, or sort of where we're going to have enough revenue to support it, that's sort of what we're assessing now. But we're likely going to have to make very difficult, I would say, decisions, and also looking from a system perspective. So it's not just BHSA-funded stuff, we're looking at stuff outside of that to make sure that we're really maintaining those core services.
As the guidance moves forward, are we, are counties invited to that table to kind of parse out what the language of the act says and the, how the guidance could impact how we deploy services here?
I mean, I think most of those decisions unfortunately have already been made. We were very heavily, I would say, I don't want to say advocating, but we gave a lot of feedback on what that's actually going to look like, because again, I think when, often when those kind of decisions are made, implementing them is very different. So what we know operationally is much different than maybe somebody making a decision, and we're seeing that that's exactly what it's going to look like. So, but we are continuing to advocate for certain things. We still get a little bit of leeway on some of it. It's just kind of in totality, these are, it's language from the welfare and institutions code at this point. Go ahead.
I'll just add that San Diego was selected as one of two counties to work with the state around some technical assistance on how Prop 1 should be implemented and what types of things counties might need to be successful in that implementation. So Nadia and her team have done a great job advocating in that way.
And we would be happy to share that when it kind of comes out. It should be in the next like month or so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other comments? I'm happy to second. Okay. Seeing nothing, please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, we now move on to discussion item number 17, Notice Public Hearing of, to approve the issuance of revenue and refunding bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the Benefits of Human Good. We now turn to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have six requests to speak on this item, three in person and three requesting to speak by phone. I'll also note for the record that we received one e-comment in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 17 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. I'd like to invite Ford Consuelo, allegedly Audra, and Mark. You'll have one minute to address the board. And again, I'll ask you to please state your name for the audio record.
My person uses the name Audra. This is so good, right? Because it's like, it's best to engage with people who are abusing other human beings, just like we do with all of the child centers, right? You got to hile pedophiles. I mean, if you don't, that's like doing a disservice to the children and the pedophiles at the same time. But these people are engaged with elderly abuse. How cool is that? What a perfect person to pick or entity, and it's definitely a benefit to human good. I love when they use names that are like really just impactful, human good. Like, we got to make them believe that we're doing it for the human good. That's just telling you that they're abusing humans, because it's good to abuse them. If you don't, then you're like, really not benefiting off the backs of people's suffering. I mean, how, isn't it cool? It's, it's fun, right? Pat yourself on the back and be like, "I'm doing so good. I'm abusing human." It's good. Good for you.
Next speaker, please.
Human Good is the sixth-largest nonprofit senior living provider in the country. They provide more than 100 affordable housing communities across five states. Compensation, their president chief executive officer makes $1,097,391. Their chief operating officer makes $853,732, and their VP, healthcare and quality, makes I'm sure there's a lot more. There were three lawsuits I saw online immediately. Firm sues, firm sues Human Good SoCal over elder abuse and negligence at, that was the heading of one. Vicky Magia versus Human Good Affordable Housing, Inc., and Gilbert V. McCuckin versus Human Good SoCal. So, yeah, I don't think it's a good idea. They don't sound good to me at all, and they're making a profit, like everything in this corporation, our government.
Thank you. For the record, the speaker was Mark. Next speaker, please.
Item 17?
Yes, we're on item 17.
Wasn't there an item 17 in the budget, blah blah blah, in the beginning in the morning?
That was item 16.
Oh, not 17.
We're on item 17.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, so Consuelo, the budget here is anything, was anything but efficient. They say public safety, mental health, and housing homelessness are priorities, yet the more money you get, the worse things get, more illness, more poverty, more struggle, and more empty promises. This is manufactured chaos. Get ready, San Diego County, this is a sneak preview to our local Titanic. You're not budgeting for solutions, you're budgeting for disaster. You're not preparing, you're gambling. You can't even meet your general reserve requirement, and you're planning to, you're planning for inflation to define revenue like it's a guarantee. It's not. You claim to prioritize mandatory core services, but let's call it what it is, you're building the surveillance infrastructure of a fishbowl society where people are scanned, tracked, regulated, and digitally controlled under the illusion of safety, climate protection, and public health. The budget is the blueprint for the UN Agenda 21.
Thank you. Now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. Start with our first caller.
Human Good, which doesn't really sound that good, wants 80 mil for state upgrades to each of two apartment complexes built just 10 years ago. Sounds like a scam to me. I've lived in houses which haven't had major upgrades for 40-plus years. The resolution says a portion of the proceeds of bonds not to exceed 40 million will be used to finance expenditures for renovations to existing infrastructure and upgrades to housing units and amenities of the White Sands, La Jolla, and the Redwood Terrace Escandito continuing care communities. So where's the other 40 million? And how many units need refurbishment? And what type? You need more info before approving a bond like this. And we still don't know how many units, if the developer rehabbed 100...
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
Well, apparently, as long as I do not call you names, I could teach people how to commit voter fraud. That should be a problem, an indicator, the fact that in order to get any of this money that they're trying to get, you need to be able to steal enough votes to acquire some of that money. Let them know how many votes that you're stealing, because they will give you the money accordingly. Let's just say if you're helping out with the homeless and you can funnel thousands of tons of ballots through, you're going to get an ungobby amount of money from these assholes. Because Monica flat-out said she will, refuses to have a conversation about election security. I have counted, I have, and she's my representative, and I don't know what to do, probably because she loves slavery. She loves taking people's money and giving it to flavors. I mean, that's flat-out. We love lithium over hemp. We do not want to...
For the record, that speaker was Justin Castro. And Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any of my board members have any questions or comments?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Super President Desmond. Second, happy to second. Seeing none, please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that motion passes unanimously with all board members being present and voting aye.
Okay, we now move on to item 18, which is adoption of a resolution supporting stronger federal and state measures to address the ongoing health and economic impacts of cross-border pollution in the Tijuana River Valley. This is an item brought forward by District 5. So, Super President Desmond, would you like to introduce it, or would you prefer to begin with public comment?
Well, I'd like to introduce it and then have more comments later.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. So over Memorial Day weekend, the Hotel Del, which is a landmark in San Diego County, it's on every postcard for, for the city, its beaches were closed and are still closed. And it's the beginning of the beach season or the summer season here in San Diego County. Our Navy SEALs and service members are getting sick because of the constant pollution in the waters. This is a threat to national security. The Imperial Beach, beaches have been closed continuously for three years, and their residents and businesses are suffering. And this is all because of the constant flow of sewage from Tijuana, and it shows, there shows no signs of stopping. Even with the treatment plant there, there's approximately five to 10 million gallons a day bypass the treatment plant and arrive into our country via the Tijuana River. On April 16th, the City of Imperial Beach passed a four-to-one bipartisan resolution showcasing their positions and requests of the state government, federal government, and of Mexico. I happen to, I agree with their request of the federal government to consider passing statutory enforcement requirements, such as, but not limited to, limiting crossing border activity during health-related emergency caused by a Tijuana River crisis. I have long believed that the only long-term solution for this crisis is not for us to build a bigger and bigger and bigger sewage treatment plants on our side of the border and we pay for it. The long-term solution is for Mexico to build and maintain the necessary sewage infrastructure. But they have chosen not to do so, despite numerous agreements and treaties in over 30 years since we built that, that water treatment plant on our side of the border, and we're paying 80% of it, and it treats zero US sewage, it only treats Mexican sewage. They have not built up their infrastructure to, for their, to satisfy or to take care of their own sewage. So currently, we treat a large portion of their sewage at a great cost to us. It's time they treat their own sewage. In the federal government, we have to adopt a firmer stance against Mexico for continuing to pollute our waters and beaches. We should stand with our Imperial Beach residents and adopt a similar solution. So with that, I'll break and speak again later. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 11 requests to speak on this item, five in person and six requesting to speak by phone. I'll also note for the record that we received two e-commerce, one in support and one neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 18 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. I'd like to invite Ford Consuelo, Brian Bilbray, allegedly Audra, Mark, and Jimena Villa Senor. If I've called your name, please come forward. You'll have one minute to address the board, and please state your name for the audio record.
Your name. My person uses the name Audra. Kimberly, you're in. Everything nefarious, it's so great. This seems like a wasted opportunity. I mean, what a great reason not to deal with this for decades, because then you can get people out of this area, right? Like they like to do, and then just, you know, rebuild with all the smart city stuff, but don't tell people that's what you're doing. Also, I noticed there's like pipes that are being, you know, like put down in that area. Are we going to use this for the pure water? Because I feel like it'll taste different. We could really like sell it to people by being like, "It's a little bit sweet, a little bit spicy, you know? It gives you a little feel of like international." Like, you could, yeah, it's just... It gives you a little feel of like international, like, you could, yeah, it, it's just, just everything you guys do is so great. I love it, because it's like, I mean, pretend that the issue can't be mitigated, and then you can just keep testing the people, right? Because it's so great to like use them as experiments. You guys are so great.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Consuelo, so the Tijuana River crisis is not new, it's been festering for decades, and this county still hasn't fixed it. You tell people to stay out of the water and call that safety. That's not a solution, that's a cover-up. The real solution is to stop the poisoning at the source. People in South County are living this nightmare daily, breathing toxic air, watching their kids play near contaminated waters, and you're still using Roundup, still ignoring the biohazard level sewage pouring in, still spraying the skies with unacknowledged aerosol operations while pretending you care about environmental justice. This isn't incompetence, it's intentional. It's all part of the UN's agenda for the 21st century: destroy ecosystems, destabilize communities, and gentrify under the false banner of progress. You should be ashamed, all of you. The people are suffering, and the world is watching, and our dollars are being wasted.
Good evening, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. My name is Jimena Villasenor, policy analyst at the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to express our deepest concerns over language in this proposed resolution. As Mexican authorities continue to hold daily conversations with their US counterparts to advance wastewater infrastructure, such as the completion of the San Antonio de los Buenos Treatment Plant, we encourage you to take these collaborative efforts into consideration and work with administrations from both sides of the border to mitigate the transboundary flows that harm our region's environment, public health, tourism, and economic prosperity. This pressing issue continues to be a top priority for the chamber, and we have joined the Board of Supervisors and regional leaders to secure funding, advance infrastructure, and elevate this issue at all levels of government. In San Diego, $80 billion worth of trade crosses through our ports of entry every year, so it's important to advocate for this issue. Thank you so much for your time and hope this is of consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark, Sandag had a chance to actually do something, enforce Mexico. They could have, in the agreement over the new border crossing, they could have said, "Well, you guys have to spend a certain amount of money, or we won't do trade," or, no, they don't do anything. Rosa Corry mentions Sandag, well, and organizations like them, because they're in on it. I mean, Nora wants open borders, of course, she was from Mexico, and, so I understand how she feels, but it's not in our interest, and, but that's what they want. They want, the UN wants a North American Union. And if you look at the video, there's one called Trump Did the Right Thing, and I'm not for Trump, in getting out of the, oh, I can't even think of it, I had it a minute ago. You have to see these videos. Klaus Schwab saying he's penetrated our government. Rosa Corry, part one. The hard truth about United Nations. This at 5 minutes 28 seconds.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Want to call for Brian Bilbrey?
Thank you. Brian Bilbrey in Imperial Beach. I think everybody who studied environmental science understands that since 1960, every major environmental initiative in this country has had enforcement clauses and minimum standards. That's the mistake we have made with the Tijuana sewage issue of not having those minimum standards. We have found that there is a lot of rights and sovereignty, but there are responsibilities. We have the authority, and the right, and the responsibility to use the cross-border commerce and the fact that we are providing the source of the pollution, one of the, the water. But the biggest issue we're seeing is just apply the same concepts to this environmental crisis that we have done with every other environmental crisis in, in the United States. And the fact is, just because we haven't done it there before, is a really an example of, would that have happened in La Jolla? Would that have been allowed to happen in a wealthy community? I, I think that we bring this up, and, by the way, if anybody really wants to be...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Well, now.
Please, uh, please go ahead.
It's not usually appropriate to ask anything of a speaker, but I believe that Congressman Bilbrey has actually spent close to 50 years on this issue, and I didn't want to do anything that's incorrect, but I wouldn't mind asking him a question or two, only because he's been working on it for 50 years.
I'm, I'm, as, is, I want to ask Andrew if that's okay with the rules of procedure?
Is that your discretion?
It's at my discretion. I, I think that's appropriate. I would like to wait till all the public speakers have a chance.
Sure, absolutely.
And then Brian can come back up, but thank you for, and thank you for being here, and for all of your fight.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with our first caller.
Paul Boldt, I'm glad someone finally recognizes the importance of catching the trash, which was there like, what, 30 years ago? Now, if we only had handheld or automobile attached pollution monitors to zero in on the pollution. In fact, if you had followed my advice and count with others, you wouldn't have these problems. Accurately, monitoring agencies would also help. It would look ugly, but instead of restricting the Chigay River, the sewage emergency, consider putting up a plastic or concrete lining on the riverbanks to speed up the flow out to sea. Government efforts for years have been totally inadequate. Why? They like to waste money on the higher-profile stuff. I'm not sure about Sandag contributing toll revenue either, since that would end up reducing what was promised to S...
Thank you. Here's the next caller.
My name is Kathleen Lipett, and, one of the previous speakers addressed what I was going to, but the US has likely contributed around $650 to $895 million in documented funding since 2019 for projects to address the Tijuana sewage issue, with most funds supporting US-based infrastructure that benefits Mexico indirectly. The board claims to care deeply about low-income communities, but it is clear that if the sewage was contaminating the beaches, beaches of La Jolla or Del Mar, it would have been addressed decades ago. This is just another example of why prevention is important, and claims of pollution or concern for low-income communities really are not being considered, taken seriously by any of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next speaker.
I actually encourage Mexico to reroute all the sewage to our border. I mean, we had an open border, so I don't understand why we're opposed to having sewage pumped right into our lands. I mean, we allowed the criminals to come over, we fucked over Mexico with that, we were not good neighbors. So, why the hell would they do anything to go ahead and stop that? Matter of fact, I would reroute all the sewage in that area to San Diego, because we have been such assholes this entire time. That is our problem. I don't fucking care about Mexico. We want to go ahead and fuck over and make the cartels bigger, and then we want to get pissed off at them because of the sewage problem? Yeah, you fucked over their country. What do you expect them to do? They're still suffering from our open border policy. They don't have time to deal with that. People, and...
Thank you. Hear from the next caller. For the record, that speaker was Justin Castro.
Good afternoon, my name is Carrie Anne Skelly. As mentioned already, I'm a public health advocate, and I support item 18. I hope this board of supervisors recognizes that increasing the number of marijuana businesses would impact the county's environment, including growing and cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, use of, and disposal of marijuana products. Each of these stages has negative implications for the environment, including the use of precious resources such as water, and the creation of air pollutants and toxic waste through manufacturing and through second-hand and third-hand marijuana smoke and vapor. As American Heart Association recently stated that a quote, "Smoking and inhaling marijuana firsthand or secondhand has been associated with heart muscle dysfunction, chest pain, heart attacks, heart rhythm disturbances, sudden cardiac death, and other serious cardiovascular conditions," end quote. Now would be the best time for our county to hit the pause button on expanding the marijuana business, business footprint in our unincorporated...
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
It's true, I was actually at that ID Council meeting where everyone but Paloma approved the list of pollution solutions, and the only people against them were the non-ID chamberpot minions of commerce. But there is no trade money worth more than the lives of American citizens in Imperial Beach. So yes to the CEO exploring all options to improve the TRV, yes to Congress immediately adopting legislation that enforces Mexico's failed treaty obligations, yes to opposing Mexico's desalination plant unless they implement recycle water projects, yes to restricting potable water to Tijuana, and restricting commercial trade during any pollution emergency, yes to any and all diplomatic pressure, sanctions, tariffs, and legal action when Mexico violates trees and minute orders. Add restricting any vehicles coming from Mexico that do not meet California emission standards. For 90 years, Mexico has proven itself an enemy by knowingly polluting our country. No more giving Mexico a free pass to destroy our beaches and tourism, and commit irreversible harm to our health. And thank you to all the Republicans and Democrats for campaigning on the crisis rather than solving it for...
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, Congressman Bilbrey, if you'd like to come back up, and then Supervisor Desmond, I mean, sorry, Supervisor Anderson, and I'll extend the same courtesy to all of my colleagues. So Supervisor Anderson, you wanted to ask a couple questions, and anyone else can as well, so go ahead.
It's a fairly open question in the sense that you served as a supervisor, I think you were actually in my office at one time, my physical office. Then you went to Congress, you grew up down there. What can the county do to make a difference? Because this looks like a federal issue from my perspective.
You're, you're, you're taking a step with this, but let me say this: there are things you can do in the Tijuana Valley, and I know it like the back of my hand, I've been playing there since I was 10, 10 years old, that you can change in your operation. That park, I helped create that park. And you can help to divert the river from where it going now, you can get it away from the public, and you can stop it from being dispersed into the air, because it's no longer a water problem, it's a breathing problem. My, I got three grandchildren that are breathing that every day. And the little things you can do, give me a couple, give me an hour in the Tijuana Valley with you, and you'll be surprised how simple it can be if you walk the ground, if you know the turf, if you can see through the trees and actually see the answers in front of you. So that's one thing you can do, and I'm sad that the City of San Diego doesn't pay to maintain that channel, though they raise taxes on that. The county shouldn't be responsible for it, but you have started a project. Let me show you how that project cannot, it won't solve the problem, but it will reduce it substantially for those impacted. Madam Chair, the river of Tijuana was forced by bureaucratic obstruction and allowed, and trash, to be forced almost a half a mile farther north than it has ever been in the history of mankind, written history. And it is now going over that waterfall. It is actually causing the people in the neighborhood to get sick. That was caused because the county was not allowed to clear the channel to the east of, the east of the, west of the bridge, Hollister Street Bridge, that the International Boundary and Water Commission, a federal agency, was given permission to do. Little things like that can really matter. We can talk about, we can talk about a lot of stuff. We can, we're talking about the children in Imperial Beach, they, they not only don't have an ocean, they're the only part, community that doesn't even have a pool. You're talking about the most downtrodden, and I'm sorry, the Chamber of Commerce, I understand why they take that position. But anyone who's a progressive or, or a conservative, anybody reasonable can recognize that all the businesses in the world, in America, are not allowed to pollute and endanger property on the United States side. Why are we allowing it to happen just because businesses are doing business on the other side? The, the, the basic common decency issue here is if you want to be in business, if you want to make a profit, then you do it in a manner that doesn't endanger your neighbors, and doesn't endanger your, your, your future generations. There's a blind side here of, what happens south of there is a free-for-all. I grew up in Imperial Beach, I grew up when we went to Tijuana, it was a free-for-all. Those days are long gone. All we're asking for is the same amount of caring, and the same amount of enforcement, and the same amount of dignity that everyone else in America is allowed to have. The children that live behind me are third-generation sewage babies. All we're asking for is equity. And that means sometimes looking at your friends, and let me clarify, it's not Mexico's responsibility to defend the people of the United States, it's not Mexico's fault. I was inspired by a Mexican congressman who said, "Brian, your problem," and this is when I was in Congress, "your problem is it's not our problem, you need to make it our problem." Madam Chair, we make businessmen and people responsible for their, their environmental impact every day in this country. All I'm saying is, common sense says, "We need to do that there," and we also need to do the little things that we could do, that could make a big difference, at least for the, this summer. And the project that you guys started, if you let me walk it with you, I'll show you how that project could reduce the, the aerated pollutants by a huge amount. And nobody knows it, because you gotta walk it, you gotta be in there. I've been in there ever since I was 10 years old. That's just a little local knowledge, and you can't expect they know it. But thank you for the question, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Please, no, no applause. We don't want anyone to have to be asked to leave the chamber, thank you. I'll, since you're here, I'll take the opportunity, first of all, I do really want to say I appreciate all your fight and all your leadership on this issue for so many years, and I would love to take you up on your invitation to walk with you, and especially if you get a bulldozer, I'll definitely come down there with you.
Well, Madam Chair, where you stand, where you stand, I was, I was a chair in 85, and I was appointed to go down to Mexico City in the 85 Accord, the 270, I think the accord was. And we may have had an agreement with Mexico, and the one problem we got into, we got the agreement, and the guarantee that was made was that not one drop of the 488 billion gallons of water we sent down there would ever come back up. And we approved an international bank loan for Mexico, so they could get their water rights from the 44 agreement. And they promised to build it in a certain manner, a certain way, that our engineers agreed. Within three months, three months, I was sitting in that District 100 office, and we got a call saying they're canceling and changing the engineering. And when that plant was built, it had only 20% of the efficiency, because they changed the specs on what we agreed on. And we couldn't do anything, because we did not have any enforcement clauses like we'd have in this country. This resolution gives you those enforcement clauses, and you do the outreach, but it's, but you gotta have it. All the meeting, they're meeting right now. I'm in contact with the president, his people, two environmental advisors, and I'm working with the, the secretary. And the fact is, once they're done, we still need to have accountability on both sides. And give Mexico a reason to care, and the Chamber of Commerce needs to worry about it, because I think you and I agree, when the real outbreak happens, the border is not going to be closed just for the trucks. And that closing is not going to just be for a month, or two, or three months. When these start seeing children die in a cholera, they are going to have that thing shut down. And then where will the Chamber of Commerce is? So I say this, and I don't care if you're a conservative or a progressive, for doggone, this is one thing you should be able to agree on. The, the profit across the border does not have a right to take precedence from the right of the people on the border to live a healthy life. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Any, if any of my colleagues have any additional questions, or else we'll just go to Supervisor Desmond?
No, I don't have any additional questions for the...
Okay, Congressman, I'm sorry, good to see you. Thank you for being here. My, I want to know a little bit more, to the extent that you can talk about it, what those conversations have been, not being a part of those directly, and understanding that a, a, a resolution, what it sounds like to me is that there are rules and regulations outside of the jurisdiction of this county that really need to be set in stone. of this county that really need to be set in stone, right?
Absolutely.
And so for me, what those are is not necessarily what's reflected here, but I would like to just hear in this resolution, but I just want to hear how those conversations have been.
The resolution is like stating about the waivers for the Clean Water, Clean Air, and Endangered Species Act. You have to do that as you're trying to build these plants, because the rules were never meant to be under a crisis. That's why you have a disaster proclamation. That's why I believe, when I show you, you've got the jurisdiction to do some things that you normally would not do, because you have that declaration. And those kind of rules need to be applied whenever and wherever, by whoever, and there are some things that the feds have to do, absolutely. But there are opportunities you have. Right now, my biggest frustration is that they don't realize that this sewage problem is like cancer. And if somebody's family, you know, I, my family's been riddled with cancer, including my daughter. And you've got to have arrow after arrow after arrow. You can't throw away an option of this and an option of that. When you, you know, you'd be surprised at the people that worry about reducing for every gallon of water coming north polluted, you reduce a gallon of water going south. And you'd be surprised that the political backgrounds are so mixed up that I can't understand it. That's why I get confused with people opposing the commercial truck crossing, which is developing the capital. And the capital is why people are living there. The border crossing is the reason why there's 3 million people in Tijuana. And the fact is, is that 98% of the pollution that comes across, we're sending them in the form of water. And when we talk about, well, that really doesn't, we don't have control of that, that's like people selling bullets to the cartel and then saying, "I have nothing to do with the shootings." There's a nexus, a direct nexus. So again, all we're shooting for is to have the same standard as the people in La Jolla, no more, no less.
Well, I think, you know, I understand that pretty well. I just, there's, I think I would like to know more about the conversation. So I will get with you--
The conversations have gone. We're looking for Mexico to make the commitments, and my biggest concern is that I've been on this before, and I've seen this. We've had three others. During my period with you or with the federal government, there's been three of these agreements made. And the enforcement needs to be assured, and there has to be. And the biggest one is that Mexico, like, you know, if it was a corporation, and you had a corporation, you know, if it's Hotel Del or the Gaylord was polluting, you would set certain standards, and you would say, "You need to do this." And you can't use sovereignty as an excuse for assaulting your neighbors. Sovereignty is a right and a responsibility. And what we've got to do is just be willing to be tough but fair. But by looking the other way, because we don't want to look tough, is really meaning we're shirking our responsibilities as leaders. And I'll just tell you, if somebody was doing this to your children or your grandchildren, you wouldn't worry about being tough. It's the fact that being fair, there's a line there. So I'm just saying, I would say the same thing to my neighbor. I grew up on that border with one foot on each side, and we can do it. But we've got to set a standard that we set for ourselves and apply it to our neighbors, too. Thank you very much. I appreciate the chance to get in here. And yeah, you're right. It's been 50 years, it'll be 50 years this coming April. I was 25 years old, and I served a lot better than I do now. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. We all appreciate it. Supervisor Desmond, did you have additional comments?
Yes, please.
Can we please continue to be polite to each other in these chambers, so nobody gets asked to leave? Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the congressman's suggestions of another sewer tour. And there are some small things I think we could probably do within the county, but we have to, we don't need Band-Aids, we need a tourniquet on this solution. And it's gone on for just way too long. So I brought this item forward today to add pressure, awareness, and consequences for the Tijuana River crisis. We've come a long way in shedding the light on this for decades, and it's been highlighted by recent visits from the EPA Director, Lee Zeldin, Senator Cory Booker, I understand, was also here. The President has talked about this a couple of times. We need to continue to communicate that the county of San Diego's perspective as a local jurisdiction directly impacted by this issue. We have to communicate with the federal government, and through this resolution, we can encourage the federal government to take stronger actions against Mexico in relation to the sewage crisis through the possible use, and these are just examples of possible use, but we have to, I think, at this point in time, it's gone on for way too long. We cannot just keep being nice and saying, "Hey, will you please stop sending us your sewage?" No, there's got to be some consequences in order for something to come about, and even as a congressman had mentioned, until we make it their problem, it's our problem. And we're spending all the money, and we're actually doubling the size of our treatment plant to treat Tijuana's sewage, none of our own. So the restriction of possible, I guess, consequences are the restriction of potable water deliveries, the restriction of cross-border activity, diverting or restricting the flow of the Tijuana River, the use of diplomatic pressure, sanctions, tariffs, limitations on the border crossing activities. You know, I don't want to do any of these things, but I don't want, and 5 million gallons a day is still coming across, even though we got a treatment plan. And I talked to the people at IBCW, they actually said it's between 5 and 10 million gallons a day. So I tried to picture, what is 5 million gallons? So like AI'd or Googled it or whatever, it's, imagine a football field, a swimming pool the size of a football field, 14 feet deep. That's 5 million gallons. And that's coming across every day via the Tijuana River, bypassing that treatment plant, and will continue to do so until we get some type of, get Mexico. And they are building, they are building a treatment plant, one of the people mentioned that. But the treatment plant they built is only going to handle, I think it's about 18 million gallons a day. They produce about 100 million gallons a day. We're treating about 25 million. So there's still more coming across. And the fact that we built our treatment plant 30 years ago, basically in anticipation that they'd build up their infrastructure, it hasn't happened. It hasn't happened fast enough. And to the point where Imperial Beach has been closed for over three years. So I believe we should adopt this resolution to stand with the city of Imperial Beach and focus on applying leverage and pressure against Mexico to hold them accountable to see this crisis through to the end. It's no longer, no more Band-Aids, we need a tourniquet. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the recommendations to adopt the resolution supporting stronger federal and state measures to address the ongoing health and economic impacts of the cross-border pollution in the Tijuana River Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am going to call on myself. So first of all, I just want to say, this has been an issue that I've cared about, and one of the main reasons I ran for office originally is because of this crisis facing our coastlines and our communities and the pollution that so many people deal with. And I'm in the ocean a couple times a week, and the situation in IB is just horrific, but it really does impact our whole coastline, all the way up and down the coast. I represent almost all of our beach communities, and this is a huge problem for our entire county and our entire region, and it really is not just an environmental justice crisis, it's an environmental crisis for our whole county. And I agree that Mexico needs to do better, and Mexico needs to do more. I think we've spent a lot of time at this board talking about, you know, things that are, we can do within our locus of control, advocating for the federal government to do more, and it's absolutely appropriate for us to talk about the role that Mexico has to play in fixing the situation on their side of the border. That being said, I cannot support this as currently written. I want to talk a little bit about why. I'd love to see if there's a path forward that I could get to yes, but I'm going to kind of highlight some of my big concerns with the resolution as written, so that we can potentially, hopefully, figure out a way that we could all be on the same page. But I do want to just kind of identify some of the things that I think are really problematic with the way that this is currently written. So first of all, this kind of the number seven is very overly broad. So I mean, obviously, that's sort of the lawyer in me, but it's quite broad. Economic sanctions, tariffs, limitation of border activity, all of this, anytime Mexico is in violation of treaties, I think that is really problematic and really wrong. You know, this is a very, this is a problem that we need to focus on getting Mexico to fix, and you need a strategy that really looks at how you create pressure that the Mexican government, or cooperation, or both, a little bit of push, a little bit of pull, that the Mexican government is going to be most susceptible to. The idea of like economic sanctions and tariffs that could have hugely negative impacts on like millions and millions of people, both in our region and across Mexico, without it being, the pressure being targeted to really kind of hit the decision-makers where it matters, I find very disturbing. It's like an overbroad grant of authority that I think could go very sideways and very wrong, and have a lot of really negative, horrible collateral damage, where you're making all sorts of innocent people pay the price. So number seven, I think if we could think about, I would certainly be open to the utilization of diplomatic pressure and international legal action. I think both of those are appropriate. I'm not comfortable with economic sanctions, tariffs, and the limitation of border crossing activity. That feels like, basically, we're just playing into this sort of nativist, nationalist, anti-Mexico rhetoric, where we're sort of trying to limit our interchange between our cross-border communities with really negative impacts on our economy as well as Mexico's. So, but just putting out there, I'm certainly open to this, but I cannot support the economic sanctions, tariffs, and limitation of border crossings. Certainly open to supporting diplomatic pressure and international legal action. I would not agree to strongly oppose the construction of the desalination plant. I do agree that of the second part of the clause, which is Mexico should demonstrate they have the capacity and funding to provide wastewater treatment for any new potable water deliveries into the region. So again, if you're sort of open to a real conversation about the nuances of this, I think there's a path. But the first sentence, I am not an expert on Mexico's water strategy, and this feels like a gross overreach for the county supervisors to have a position on water security in Mexico regarding desalination. I think frankly feels very imperialistic and does not feel very cooperative. So I do--
People are dying and getting sick. It's dire.
Okay. This is a first--
It's dire. It is very dire.
This is the first warning? Okay. So, thank you very much. One warning, Andrew? Okay. So again, I certainly agree that the demonstration of the capacity to provide wastewater treatment makes a lot of sense. I'm not comfortable with taking a position on the desalination issue. That feels far beyond frankly our, my expertise or sort of scope of authority. I do want to add that I think it would be, I would be very interested in pulling the thread that Congressman Bill Bray mentioned on accountability of the entities and corporations who are fundamentally accountable and responsible for the cross-border pollution. I would love to include a clause here where we could, that would include asking county council to potentially investigate cross-border tort claims, and whether there's any tort claims that we could bring to hold these polluters accountable. I think that there's some real value to that. And Claudia, I know that wasn't noticed, so if that's too far afield from this item, please let me know, I can bring it back another day. But I'm certainly just putting out there that that seems like a very appropriate strategy for us to hold the polluters directly accountable by investing legal action. So let me just pause and hear from county council.
So on the cross-border pollution, there was a prior board action previously asking us to look at issues. It didn't address this specifically. Given the way that this was noticed, it was a resolution, it didn't require or indicate any types of legal action, I would suggest that that would be, come back at a future date if that's what you so choose. And we could also look at it in terms and revisit, look back at the prior board letter, because off the top of my head, I can't recall if it would have encompassed this potential look also.
Okay. Thank you. So I won't make an amendment to that regard today, because of Brown Act issues, but I certainly will look at that further. So those are my, those are my main comments. I think, big picture, there's no question that we need Mexico to do more and to do better on this issue. I mean, at the end of the day, I think that there's sort of three parts to this. We have to do what we can to rebuild the sewage treatment plan on our side of the border, really appreciate the work of our congressional delegation in securing those funds, and I know that that's moving forward. We need to focus on environmental remediation and cleanup, and kind of the small and medium-sized things that we can do in the Tijuana River Valley here on our side of the border, including cleaning up and fixing the Saturn Boulevard overpass infrastructure, conducting epidemiological studies, gathering more data, so that we could then hopefully get a superfund site designation. So there's a lot that we can do. But the third piece of this is, at the end of the day, this is going to continue unless and until we're able to get the sewage situation fixed in Tijuana. And so that action in Mexico is absolutely necessary and absolutely vital, and I think that that is something I would love to be able to support. I have concerns about those pieces of this that was put out there. So I'll just pause there. I'm trying to have a conversation. So if Supervisor Montgomery Stupp can go ahead and speak, but I'd also, maybe after that, Supervisor Desmond might, as the maker of the motion and the bringer of the item, might be interested.
Wait a second. Talk with him, give him a second, and then--
Okay.
Make amendments or whatever.
Okay. We have a second as well by Supervisor Anderson. Okay. Supervisor Montgomery Stupp, did you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'll go. Just briefly, I wanted, first of all, I'm always uncomfortable about something like this without D1 representation on this board. I just feel like that should be said, and that, you know, I am uncomfortable with that. But some of the language, I was just, I'm not going to repeat what the vice chair said, just based on the fact that there are a lot of conversations going on the last few months. I feel like we've made a lot of progress. There's a bipartisan effort and bipartisan attention to this issue. The inflammatory in the extreme language, in my mind, makes it a lot more political than it should be. This is why I asked the congressman about actual rules, regulations, what do those look like from the entities that would be enforcing it? That's what I would want to see here, and that's what I would want to look at supporting more so than a resolution that really can be used in a lot of different ways, even though the intent of the board would be, you know, to move forward and show a strong hand. That is my concern. So the tariff language, there's no real analysis on what that language, what that would do to local businesses here. We've had a lot of conversations around tariffs. It hasn't been good, right? And so that's a concern for me. The other concern is this language in number eight around the executive enforcement requiring such near-term actions with enforcement as necessary. Anything for me, with President Donald J. Trump and broad and vague language like "as necessary" revolving around the border, like I just, I'm not going to support that. I saw evidence over that this weekend. I just think that that is a bridge too far, and I would love to stay very focused on the issue at hand. The broad language gives, it communicates too much leeway that could be outside of the scope of what we're actually discussing. And so that is my issue with the resolution. I don't know if, you know, that could be, that language could be tightened up, but that, those are just my main, I have others, but those are just my main issues with how the resolution is. More so about the way that it's written, how it could be used for political purposes as opposed to really digging in in those conversations around the rules and regulations and the framework that should be developed between the new nation, the two nations, to get a real solution.
Thank you, Supervisor Montgomery Stupp. So let me just say to Supervisor Desmond, I think you have a motion on the floor, there's a second. I've made my position clear. I'm very interested in having the conversation. I think my colleague has just indicated the same. She's indicated concerns with number eight. I have concerns with some of the language in number five and seven. I think the real question to you is, do you want to talk-- I think the real question to you is, do you want to talk about this and sort of figure out a path where there might be a path to pass this year today? Or do you want to just move forward as is, knowing that your two colleagues have sort of expressed that they're most likely to vote against it?
Well, I think it's unfortunate, and I know the, the issue on the desalination plant, I could take that out. I mean, I think that, that would be understandable, the first sentence area in number five. But item seven, this has been going on for so long, there's hurt feelings, we're over being afraid of hurting their feelings. This is, this is, this is my perspective, what I'm hearing. And so they're sending us their sewage, and it's been going on for way too long. I mean, in six, it says, "We request the Congress of the United States of America and its representatives under passing statutory enforcement requirements such as," doesn't say it has to be these things, these are "such as," diplomatic pressure, economic sanctions, tariffs, limitations of crossings, those are all things that are potentially on the table. Whether they use them or not is, is, it doesn't really matter, but the issue needs to be, we're done, we're done accepting their sewage. You know, the fact that, yes, we've got a lot of cross-border industry, and I think if we go for tort claims, that's going to take way too long. And there's innocent people on both sides of the border. We are, our people, our U.S. Navy SEALs, our people of Imperial Beach, their businesses have been shut down, the restaurants at the pier are shut down, we gotta come across with some tough language. It's just, we, we're done being nice, I think on this side. You know, I think we got, we gotta stop, it's the sewage, stop the flow. That's really got to be the main point, to stop the flow. That's what I want to do, that was my intent, is what do we do to stop this flow? Because 5 million gallons a day, still flowing, and nothing's being done, we gotta be able to have some sort of economic, if it's sanctions or whatever, but this has to stop. So I'm fine with pulling, you know, the first portion of number five, and let me look at eight again. Seven, I want to leave. Until such kind of federal legislation is fully meant to be questioned, consider initiating executive orders, near-term action with enforcement if necessary for all federal entities, including but not limited to the Department of State. I'm, you know, I'd, I'd pull out the first paragraph, or first sentence of item five, and then leave it as is. We're done being nice. We have to get action, we have to get pressure, and as the congressman said, if we, if, we gotta make it their problem. We have to make it their problem, right now it's not, they flush it, and it's our problem. So I'm leaving my motion, I'll remove item five, if that's okay with the second, or the first sentence of item five, if that's okay?
No, you're right.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, let me, thank you, I hear you, I mean, it's your, your item. I will just say again, I think this conversation's rather frustrating, because you're arguing that this is a major crisis that requires urgent action. I've also argued and stated for many years, it's an urgent crisis that requires urgent action. We have a difference in view on the best and most effective strategy in executing that urgent action, but we're not having a conversation, despite my efforts, on what is the appropriate strategy. Your response is just that this is a problem. So I feel like we're not actually speaking to each other, because you're just saying it's a problem, we agree it's a problem. I was hoping we could have a conversation about what the right solution is. So that being said, again, I agree it's a problem, it's a massive problem, I agree we need urgent action, that's why I've brought multiple, multiple board items on this issue, including, you know, asking to have our oversight hearing, calling for the superfund designation, calling for the state of emergency. I absolutely would love to support some kind of action here, calling for Mexico to fix the sewage treatment plant. The difference we're having is that I think, I think two things, I think any kind of language regarding border crossing activity in the current climate of sort of fear and crackdown on immigration, like what happened in South Park this past weekend, it's mixing streams and mixing apples and oranges in an environment of a lot of fear.
This has nothing to do with that.
And you're right, it doesn't have anything to do with it, I totally agree. That's why I'm saying that I would prefer, well, I can't support something that mixes those two things, because it doesn't have anything to do with each other. So the limitation of border crossing activity feels really nativist, and, and seems to be targeting immigration and immigrants in a way that feels really gross to me, and I can't support that. And I don't believe tariffs are a good solution, they're not, and they're not sort of economically targeted in the appropriate ways to the, to the cost creators, same for economic sanctions, in particular in our current environment. And what I think you have to recognize, and I know the congressman knows this, is tariffs are really complex. So how do you know where an item is built or created? You know, it's, some of it's sourced in China, and then it goes to Canada, and then it goes to Sri Lanka, and then it's like assembled in a Maquisadora, and then comes back to the U.S. So rules of origin are implicated in a tariff regime, and how you, tariffs which are made up of super complex rule of origin, then put appropriate pressure on Tijuana without completely blowing up like our entire cross-border economic integration, I think also is very ill-advised. So again, really like the idea of putting pressure on Mexico. I do not think that economic sanctions, tariffs, and limitations of border crossing are effective measures, and in fact are counterproductive. And I would like to agree with my colleague on number eight, which is it's very broad, given what's, with the kind of scope of crazy executive orders I've seen coming out of Washington in the last few months, I would not be able to support something asking for more broad executive orders. So again, I appreciate that we are all focused on trying to tackle this urgent crisis. I think at this time, I don't, I will try one more time, I would like to make a substitute motion to approve this, but strike numbers five, seven, and eight?
One second. Why didn't you already sue it in tort, Tara?
So that's your first warning, thank you. We have a second, so any comments this time?
So.
Five, seven, and nine.
Five, seven, and eight.
Five, seven, and eight. So what could you, what does that leave us with?
No consequences.
Numbers one, two, three, four, six, and nine. And again, I want to say this again, if my colleague would like to have a more granular nuanced conversation about changing the language in five, seven, and, at least five and seven, and maybe striking eight, I'm super open to that. But when my colleague said he doesn't want to have that conversation, I'm not really motivated to, on my own accord, make line edits to your item.
After 50 years of sewage, it's enough.
Any, any further comments from anyone? Okay. We have a, we have a substitute motion on the floor by myself, and a second by Supervisor Montgomery Stepp, please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes as supervisor.
Let me ask you a quick question. Do we still have the original motion on the floor? Or did the, do we vote to remove Jim's motion, do we vote to pass your substitute?
We, no, so we vote on my substitute, if it passes, we're done. If it fails, then the vote is on his item, his first motion.
Okay.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes as Supervisor Desmond voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we are moving on to item number nineteen.
Well, here's another beauty. So this is to stop the proposed state sales tax.
Hold on, hold on, can you please put your name up, so I can call on you? Thank you.
Well, it's my, it's my item, come on.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Desmond, please go ahead and introduce it.
So this is item nineteen, to stop the proposed sales gas tax increase. So here we are again, every year our gas tax, our gas gets more expensive due to the annual gas tax increases, and Californians are paying the price. This year, our gas tax is projected, projected to increase by 1.1 cent, bringing a total to 60 cents a gallon, which is the highest in the nation. Meanwhile, a recent study shows that increased regulatory costs and shuttering of two refineries in the state of California may drive gas prices as high as $8 a gallon as soon as 2026. This is a result of terrible policy and mismanaged government. We need to communicate to the governor, and that our, and that our communities can't afford to foot the bill of another gas tax increase. What our constituents need is a break from the high costs of living in this state, and not putting up with another gas tax. That, stop, and go to public comment if you want.
Okay. Please go to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 10 requests to speak on this item, three in person, and seven requesting to speak by phone. I'll also note that we received three ecomments, all of those in support. For any individuals that requested to speak on item nineteen by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers, I'd like to invite Ford Consuelo, allegedly Audra and Mark, you'll have one minute to address the board, and please state your name for the audio record.
My person uses the name Audra, Tara, you really got everyone's balls in a vise, right? You like to do that. It's cool. And I'm just like, gonna go off topic here, because it's so relevant, I just feel like we need to be thinking about fecal therapy pools down by the Tijuana River Valley, because it is very health-effective, and also you can bring in a lot of revenue to get people to swim and shit, and you could like say, hey, it's going to be a little bit spicy because it's from Mexico, but it'll be cool, it'll be different than the ones here. I just feel like we really need to take advantage of crises, because it's like if we don't, then what are we doing here? I mean, that's our job, right? That's why it's so weird to want to like not have these taxes come down the pipe. Is it because you guys are jealous and you would prefer to be doing it? You're like, we can't have all these other people screwing the people, we like to do it. I mean, then maybe if you guys offered lube, it would be good. So I just feel like when you want to screw people, you really need to tell them why you're doing it, and, and just make it seem good, like you guys do.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Mark, you never answered my question, Tara, about why you didn't sue the corporations doing the pollution in Mexico long ago with a tort, if you thought that, if you think that's the right thing to do. Anyway, regarding this, I'm for this, Jim, but Newsom is a young global leader for the World Economic Forum, which is focused on the destruction of our sovereignty, which he is doing a good job destroying. So respectfully requesting the immediate suspension of the proposed July 2025 increase to the state gasoline excise tax is a waste of time, Jen. Newsom deserves no respect. Now, he is a young global leader, people need to see Klaus Schwab, this video in one minute, where he's openly saying that he's penetrate governments. Newsom is a young global leader for his organization. You can see Sandag, who most people don't know what it is, at See This Meeting, these are YouTube video titles, at one hour, excuse me, one hour 22 minutes 50 seconds.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Consuelo, so this tax, gas tax increase isn't about sustainability, it's about control, let's call it what it is, another layer in the UN Agenda 21 blueprint. Every aspect of life, how we move, what we eat, where we live, is being quietly regulated under the guise of climate action, and equity, and sustainability, and blah, blah, blah. You say this increase will redo emissions, will reduce emissions, but you say nothing about the constant jet spraying toxic particles into our sky, you say nothing about roundups still poisoning our soil, you say nothing about corporate polluters, or the Tijuana River sewage crisis being handled, which you're, you guys continue to just freaking play whatever it is you're freaking playing, it's beyond fucking frustrating, I'm sorry. The punish, you punish the people for a mess we didn't create, this is not about protecting the planet.
Thank you. Thank you, your time is up, Consuelo. Now hear from those who requested to speak by phone.
I just want to let you know, I went ahead and called Scott Peters' office and let him know that I taught everyone how to commit voter fraud, and he is calling the authorities on me right now. So I just want to let you know the fact that, yeah, you have the documents that prove the fact that I commit, that I basically teaching people how to commit voter fraud. You guys aren't doing anything about that, which means what? Seriously, what? So let's go ahead and talk about this new gas tax. Newsom wouldn't be here if you would have checked for election fraud. We wouldn't be running into this problem if you would have addressed my problems that I've been asking you to address for the past over a year. People funneled fraudulent ballots through homeless facilities in order to keep him elected. And you guys all, all four of you.
Thank you, now hear from the next caller.
Paul Bold, I agree completely, we cannot tax the people of this country or state into oblivion. Putting a tax on uses of gas is actually discriminatory. Besides, EVs have the potential for much worse things, like lithium ion batteries reigniting spontaneously, excess battery weight causing more damage than equivalent, high burn temperature, 4,000 degrees or so, keeping wildfires going, insurance up, and all that stuff. So I mean, you probably should tax EVs, not gas. Another bad use of taxes is buy med stuff. When you have the meds, you have unqualified people giving medical advice or administering these. But beneficial natural cures have been used since the days of the Flintstones. Well, hey, remember Mrs. Woodin who declared a COVID?
Thank you, now hear from the next caller.
It's true, campaigning is fun, but hey, who in their right mind would support the state's 61 cent tax on each gallon of gas? Remember when they said the taxes go to fixing roads? Yet, the roads in the state are starting to look like those in undeveloped countries. California has the highest gas prices, high registration, overly strict smog checks, and a future mileage tax. The anti-car agenda is clear. And if anyone was in doubt about that, there's the complete streets plan and the Sandag regional plan, creating obstacle courses on the roads everywhere, from lowered speed limits to acceleration roundabouts, to slime green paint for death lanes. And all of those driving games help create extra fatalities to justify reducing driving further. But hey, the climate cult, but one has to ask why the climate cult benefits the rich, which international communists like Tara say they're against. How does this tax help stop the polluting vehicles coming from Mexico that do not meet California emission standards? Is that harsh language, is anyone going to cry? Thank you, Jim, for finally standing for something. That is the least anyone could do, be an American citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, now hear from the final caller.
Hello, my name is Latifah Ruiz, and I live, I live in Supervisor Montgomery Stepp's district, and I'm calling in on behalf of Shane Harris in the People's Association of Justice Advocates, to express our office's full support of item nineteen on today's agenda. We want to thank Supervisor Jim Desmond for bringing this item forth. The working class and the poor are being priced out of this county and this state. But instead of our state legislators being a voice for these same families, as many of them claim they are, pricing up gas prices, expanding costs of hiking up, and hiking up costs for the basic necessities of life, the question today before supervisors is, where are you to understand how a tax hike will impact our residents? Some claim that the resources from this tax, this gas tax, will go into governor and our legislators requesting the immediate suspension of the July 2025 gas tax. So I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation to stop the proposed gas tax increase. Thank you. So again.
Supervisor Montgomery Step.
Just wanna see if there's any response from last year. We did vote on this, on a similar resolution last year where I asked if the oil companies could be a part of the conversation. Was there any, any response at all to that? Did anybody, I mean, of course, we bring you, but I don't know.
I understand there was a study done that, and I forget where it was, some institution in the Bay Area, that said that the gas, the oil industry was minimal, it was mostly the regulations and the taxes in San Diego, or I'm sorry, in California.
I find that hard to, I think I had a study with opposite information.
You heard the opposite. Well, okay. But oil companies, a couple of refineries are looking to shut down here. But it's too high. The rent is too damn.
Yeah, I get it, but just like the, and I appreciate you bringing this forward, but just like the last conversation we had about fire preparedness with regard to insurance companies, oil companies, corporations, there's never really a talk about the impact that they have had. And that is my, that's my, that's my only issue moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. There's any further comments? Got a motion in a second? Please vote. Is everyone voted?
Yes. Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that motion fails with Supervisor Anderson and Supervisor Desmond voting aye, Supervisor Montgomery Step voting no, and Supervisor Lawson Reimer abstaining.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we have item 23, oh, 21? Did we skip 21? Oh, 20, sorry. Yes, we have item 21. That was your item originally. Do you wanna say a couple remarks and then we?
Well, I didn't know if staff had it in mind that they would present.
They do. They do. Okay, Steph, go ahead if you wanna call the team up. Okay, thanks. Oh, that's you.
Yep. Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, members of the board, on April 22nd, 2025, the board directed the chief administrative officer and the clerk of the board to look at how the public can be provided more time to review agenda items before they're discussed or voted on. This included exploring whether meeting agendas could be posted earlier, up to 30 days in advance, to allow more time for the public to, to understand and provide input. This presentation summarizes this analysis. So let's talk about how the agenda process works today. The way we review and post board meeting agendas is guided by formal policies. Specifically, the Board of Supervisors rules of procedure and Board Policy A72. These policies ensure that once an agenda is posted, it's complete and rarely needs changes. This helps maintain predictability and transparency for the public. Each agenda item is backed by a written report called a board letter, which includes key information like fiscal impacts and a detailed background of the issue to help the board make informed decisions. These letters go through a detailed review process involving county council, financial planning, and subject matter experts before they're added to the agenda. To meet these requirements, agenda items must be submitted well in advance, typically eight days before a general legislative session and 13 days ahead for land use sessions, which require extra noticing. The board meeting agenda is posted six days in advance of the meeting. To help put our counties' process in context, it's useful to compare it to how the California State Legislature works. At the state level, bills must be in print for at least 30 days before they can be heard, meaning the public can see them even before they're scheduled for a hearing. But the state's process is quite different in three important ways. The first is the committee process. The state legislature has two houses and a long committee process that spans months. Bills are reviewed by multiple committees, each with staff who write detailed analysis. There are separate agendas for committees and floor sessions, and bills can be in print without being on any specific agenda yet. Then there is the amendment process. Bills are often introduced with placeholder language and then heavily amended as they move through the process. What the public sees at the 30-day mark is usually very different from what's ultimately passed. Also, unless a bill is urgent, it doesn't take effect until the following January. There's also a specific role for state administration. Unlike counties, the state's executive branch can carry out many actions like awarding grants or signing contracts without legislative approval. These actions are overseen by state boards and commissions that follow their own public notice rules under the Bagley-Kean Act, which requires agendas to be posted at least 10 days in advance. And finally, the governor reviews all legislation before it becomes law, adding an extra check that doesn't exist in local government. On a more local level, for cities and counties, the Brown Act requires that agendas be published at least 72 hours before a regular meeting. We conducted a survey of counties to identify their agenda release timelines. The survey found that, on average, our current process already provides an extra day than others, with most counties releasing their agendas five calendar days before the meeting. The county of Orange had the longest lead time, releasing their agendas 13 days before a meeting. We conducted a similar survey of cities in the region, with most cities releasing their agendas five calendar days before the meeting. The cities of Encinitas and Solana Beach had the longest lead time releasing their agendas seven days before a meeting. I'll now turn it over to Assistant Chief Administrative Officer Caroline Smith to discuss a few of the options that are described in the board letter.
Thank you, Andrew. This is a visual calendar of a sample timeline for releasing the agenda at least 30 days in advance. You will notice the board meeting with two sessions on the bottom portion of the slide. The M-minus numbers that you see in each box signify the meeting minus the number of days before that meeting takes place. In other words, you will see that the docket deadline for a legislative session board letter would be noon on the 34th day before the meeting. Based on Board Policy A72, this means that all board letters would need to be complete and sent for review 48 days before the legislative session. The longer introductory process could introduce procedural ambiguity and affect the clarity of public communications and participation, as items would be noticed for future sessions prior to the previous board meetings occurring. In addition, the board's calendar would need to be solidified and could not change with the flexibility that the board currently has. In addition, should a two-hearing item fail or have directed changes during the first hearing, the unchanged item would already be noticed to be considered at a future hearing. While no longer entered, while longer introductory processes may be feasible for board member-generated items that are focused on policy, a longer introductory process is not possible for operational and administrative items. Many operational and administrative items are time-sensitive, require outside data and information, or be bound by other legal requirements for hearing timeframes. Examples include grant applications and acceptance, contracting actions, budget-related actions, and revenue agreements. The board also requested that other timeframes be included in the staff analysis. Presented here is an option for 14 days. It should be noted that many of the same procedural ambiguities from the 30-day timeframe are present here as well. This includes agendas being published on, prior to, or during the previous board meeting, the ability to follow all externally set deadlines, data requirements, and legal requirements, the possibility of additional late agenda amendments or additions, and/or the need to schedule additional special meetings for unforeseen items. As with the 30-day timeframe, changing to a 14-day publishing timeframe will push up the deadlines for when board letters would need to be prepared in accordance with Board Policy A72. In this instance, board letters would need to be submitted for complex review 34 days prior to the meeting. As this option contemplates staff administrative board letters as well, policy changes would need to include that board members would not be able to provide a 30, or 60, or even potentially a 90-day return timeframe in the policy proposals, as staff would not have the appropriate time to fully analyze and return to the board with an implementation plan. The board's discussion on April 22nd included various alternative options that could achieve the intent of increasing engagement and accessibility of board meetings, including alternate locations, agenda summaries, and adding a community impact or engagement section to board letters. Like adjusting the timeline for the release of agendas, there are considerations for each of these options as well. Holding a Board of Supervisors meeting at an alternate location, which is outside the County Administration Center Board Chamber or the County Operations Center Campus Chamber, requires significant technical and staffing resources to ensure the meeting runs effectively. It is estimated that meetings at alternate sites would cost between $15,000 and $20,000 per meeting. A funding source would need to be identified for these costs if the board directs staff to organize off-site meeting locations. The board may direct staff to develop a template that would be used to post information on a county webpage about upcoming agenda items, a working agenda that would be subject to change. This option could offer several benefits, including increased community engagement, more time for the public to review and understand upcoming issues, and opportunities for focused workshops or discussions. Considerations for this option, such as requiring extended docketing timelines, slower processing of routine items, and the possibility that the agenda items may change before the meeting, necessitating the public to understand the preliminary nature of summaries, should be taken into account. The board could direct staff to add a section to the board letter template that details the community engagement conducted for each agenda item. This could be paired with a policy change that mandates a specific timeframe for such engagement. Considerations for this option include the potential for community members who were unaware of or missed the engagement opportunities might feel excluded from the decision-making process. Today's item is seeking board direction on which option, if any, the board would like to direct staff to move forward with operationalizing. It also seeks direction for the chief administrative officer to return in September with the multiple policy and rules of procedures revisions that would be needed to implement changes for meetings after January 1st, 2026. This timeframe would account for the additional work needed to implement any specific direction and document that into policies and align with the 2026 board meeting calendar slated for adoption in the fall. Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, subject to your questions, this concludes our presentation.
Okay, Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. I appreciate the hard work that you put in and all the research that you put in behind it. I'd like to make a motion to extend the published timeline to 14 days. That seemed to work within your constraints of what could be accomplished. I, you know, we have an A72 rule where staff is supposed to review our board letters. And when we do a late docket, we bypass that system. And unlike the legislature where they have to go through a committee, or the city of San Diego where they go through a committee and there's checks and balances because there's multiple times to, to talk about the issue or to perfect it. I think that this would give us more time, more opportunity. And if it failed to be, or became problematic, the good news is this board has the ability to change it again. And so I'm asking that we try something new, bearing in mind that, you know, we have people that live in Hucamba that are 73 miles away each direction, and many parts of my district still are waiting to get internet. And so for the notion that they are able to call in or be able to keep track in a short timeframe, but I do think two weeks is ample time to get that message out to those folks. You know, we send out emails, we, we put, we try to put things on their radar that impact them directly. But we are the only government for the unincorporated. And so I think it's really important that we're as transparent as possible and that we include them. I do like the notion of an impact statement, but I don't know if it's a late docket, how much of an impact it could be. And when I first got on this board, we weren't even using the correct language and the correct community. So in, you know, when I do an outreach, we'll have hundreds of people respond. Sometimes when the county does an outreach, we have 12. And I don't think that's a proper outreach when you're thinking in terms of 600,000 people that I represent. So my motion is to, to shift this to a 14-day and try it as a, as a, as a sample to see if it works better. And if it doesn't, I'm happy to revisit it.
Okay. Do we have any, I'd love to go to public comment unless there's actually direct questions for Andrew from anyone. Okay, great, we'll go to public comment and then we'll have a conversation with the board.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have eight requests to speak on this item, three in person and five requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received two ecomments, both of those in support. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 21 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. I'd like to invite Ford Consuelo, allegedly Audra and Mark. You'll have one minute to address the board and please state your name for the record.
How much did you do in one minute? My person uses the name Audra. Tara, I just wanted to say for abstaining, you're doing a lot of screwing at the same time. It's cool. Anywho, this is interesting because you guys act like the people know who you are and come to meetings and all of this. I mean, it seems this is more for like stakeholders and stuff because it's like, I mean, is there anybody? A lot of these people work here, but that's where they're paid to be here. But as long as we make it seem like it's for the people, and good for you, you did a very good job reading that. It's interesting, like, we have a lot of good storytelling happening with employees. It's like you, I don't know if like that was a requirement when you got your job, where they like read this and see if it sounds really appealing because like, good job. Everybody does a really good job of like making people believe that like the county actually cares about staff. But yeah, how much did we spend on this? And is it really going to like bring more people in? Highly doubt it, but that's the name of the game.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Consuelo here. So let's be real, this item is more performance than progress. You claim to value the public's time, yet constantly overload agendas, push items at the last minute, and reduce speaking time to 60 seconds. That's not respect. That's control. Most people can't rearrange their lives with no notice to respond to a county that clearly isn't interested in real dialogue. This setup protects your convenience, not the community's voice. If you truly cared about engagement, you'd structure these meetings to reflect that, not just check a box. This isn't transparency, it's manipulation dressed up as public service, service. And it's exhausting. You're not streamlining governance, you're steamrolling the people.
Next speaker, please.
Mark, so it's all scam as usual. Stakeholders, this is for the stakeholders. You homeowners, the people in the areas, you are not stakeholders. It's the people that are making money off this, the contractors and such. People need to see these videos, titles on YouTube to understand. Start at three minutes and 30 seconds on this. See Sandag screwing you out of your cars and your ability to drive at one hour, 22 minutes, 50 seconds. This is what's really going on that these people are gonna do. They don't care about you. See these titles, oh, see this one at five minutes, 28 seconds. And these are all on YouTube. See this one at three minutes to six minutes. Taking control away from Congress over trade and immigration. So, yeah, these people don't care. If they did, they wouldn't make you on your day off wait all day to do a non-agenda comment after you come in the morning and sign up. Or many other things, they're just a total scam. One minute, that's criminal.
Thank you. Now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. Start with our first caller.
Paul Bold, it's nice to have noticed where the agenda is, ideas be discussed as soon as it's available. We have seen too many half-baked ideas presented at the last minute. I think you might even get more well-thought-out suggestions this way. I think it's reasonable to provide notice of pending agenda item as soon as it's available. But what is most concerning is announcing last-minute agenda. See this one at 5 minutes, 28 seconds. And these are all on YouTube. See this one at 3 minutes to 6 minutes. Taking control away from Congress over trade and immigration. So, yeah, these people don't care. If they did, they wouldn't make you on your day off wait all day to do a non-agenda comment after you come in the morning and sign up. Or many other things, they're just a total scam. One minute, that's criminal.
Thank you. Now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. Start with our first caller.
It's nice to have noticed where the agenda is, if ideas be discussed as soon as it's available. We have seen too many half-baked ideas presented at the last minute. I think you might even get more well-thought-out suggestions this way. I think it's reasonable to provide notice of pending agenda item as soon as it's available. But what is most concerning is announcing last-minute agenda changes. Actually, there was even an example today where it was not announced that item 20 would be discussed right after lunch, which confused several callers like me.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Heather, and I do support extending the publishing timeline for board supervisor meeting agendas. They are already packed, and the public have a difficult time parsing out what they can respond to. It is bad enough that we have limited time to speak, that we're restricted further and further on those opportunities to speak, but the new process is incredibly difficult and made more difficult by putting this new requirement, to put in a meeting code that is in tiny mice print at the end of the agenda instead of at the very beginning on your confirmation to speak. Also, the city of Solana Beach is well-known for how deferential it is to their public, the public that they serve. I think following in their footsteps would be a solid step toward making some changes that are desperately needed at this board. Thank you for letting me.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Dietrich. That's all this is. I mean, Joel knows the fact that Tara doesn't want to hear anything from us, but if he could go ahead and pose like he's doing it for the people's good, whether or not this passes, it doesn't really friggin' matter. But what Joel and Jim should understand and see and witness what right now is, while you were going along to get along with them, they were never going to go ahead and return that to you. You know, stopping gas tax, which makes sense to every citizen here? No, they're not going to go ahead and do that because their party, their lobbyists, told them not to. And so it's just going to stand still and all that stuff, and you probably already know this too, and you're just posing like you're standing up to do something when you know damn well that it's not going to pass because of the lobbyists on both sides, probably for lithium, when we could go to hemp instead.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
It's truth. I'd love other locations for these horrible meetings, as long as a remote participation option is available. This county's huge and having it only downtown disenfranchises many. 14-day timelines for items is very reasonable. The county's agendas have been stacked on a recurring basis with up to 30 or more items, and each item often having five to 15 attachments. Agendas need to be shortened. Agenda 30 days in advance should be standard practice, otherwise it means less thought-out comments and/or less input. A community impact statement sounds nice in theory, but in execution, it sounds opinion-based. Who would decide what the impact would be? 30 days sounds good in theory, but that's a long delay for consent items that should be routine, and I know they rarely are routine like they're supposed to be, but I'm thinking of a time when all of you are long gone and the craziness goes with you. I would support a 365-day timeline if it would mean that there'd be no more items on the agenda. There's been so much political theater and evils passed over the last five years that I think you guys need a hiatus so that we can all have time to reflect on what has happened and guarantee two minutes on every item. This is nothing but more but political theater, and we're tired of it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Appreciate it. You know, when I first saw this, I thought, well, 30 days is way too long. I think we should be able to be responsive to the needs of the constituents in a timely manner. So, I guess I get a question, I have some more comments, but I guess from staff, is this workable? Is this achievable? Is this going to be stumbling around? So, what do you think, Matt?
So, through the vice chair, for the recommendation that was brought forward to extend the publishing timeline to 14 days, we will come back in September with revisions to the rules of procedures to incorporate those changes, including the procedural changes that we need to make for our docketing timeline, but it does appear to be feasible from this time period.
But is something workable?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'll, well, does your motion, well, here, before I do this, I do not want another impact statement on the board letter. We got enough. I think if people--
I'm not asking for--
Okay, good.
--70, 14 days.
And no remote meetings. I've tried that once--
It's a pilot program to see.
Okay.
I'll maybe just go back and--
Well, do you want to get, and I'm just, this is kind of just thinking off the top of my head, do we want to say, okay, once we start it, we revisit it in six months? Or something like that, that, I guess we could revisit it at any time if we don't like it?
If it's not working, it's not giving you six months. We'll be back at it pre-meets. I'm sorry. Through the chair, of course.
Okay.
My mic wasn't on, so I can't--
Okay, I'll second the motion to try the 14 days.
Okay, thank you. I'll call myself. So, I want to say, things are, you know, I'm concerned that this would not leave us the flexibility to respond to things that happen in an urgent fashion. I also want to acknowledge Supervisor Anderson's, I think, very legitimate point that we want to provide greater notice. One option that was not here that I would be more interested in and more amenable to would be, you have this 30-day agenda preview. What if we did a 14-day agenda preview so that, you know, what we know and what's been docketed, which is probably, you know, something like 60, 70% of the workflow, could be noticed or could be, yeah, it could be previewed, but that would not then kind of handcuff us and not allow us to docket things with urgency. And I think I want to say this in all transparency, Supervisor Anderson, you know, I sit right now as the acting chair, which means I could docket it as an emergency, but then if you have 14 days for everyone and only the chair has the one day for emergency, I don't like this. It's sort of too much discretion just only on the chair, and even though I'm sitting here right now, I was nuts here for four years and I might not be here again. So, I don't think it's good. Like, I think that we all should have the ability to docket things in sort of like an urgent fashion when urgent things emerge, and I don't want anyone to be in a position of not being able to docket something in an urgent fashion because the chair refuses to take a late docket. I don't think that's fair or good. But I do think you're right, it would be great if we could have more notice. So, I will not be able to support the 14-day universal notice, but I would be if we had a, instead of a 30-day agenda preview, if there was a 14-day agenda preview so we could get sort of like as much as possible out there, but still preserve the flexibility or ability of board members to docket things in a more urgent fashion. I think when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, or maybe it's longer than that now, we didn't have all the data, and when we look at all the other jurisdictions, we have already more notice than most. So, I think just sort of looking at the way local governments work and that we're not Sacramento, where there's all sorts of long time horizons and committee hearings and all that, we really do need to be able to respond with urgency. So, that's not a formal motion right now, I just wanted to put out where I'm at and what I'm thinking and have a little bit of a conversation if Supervisor Montgomery staff wanted to speak.
Well, I'd like to hear from Supervisor Anderson, but the only thing that I will add that you may want to respond to is, and I don't know, I'm trying to think through what the 14-day does to this, but my one concern was that when folks look up the agendas, there may be a bit of confusion between like the meeting dates. I know for me, when I go in and look at it, it can be confusing, right? And so, that was my only other, you know, added input, that I don't want to, in an effort to make it more open, give people more notice, add a little bit more confusion to like the agenda process and how people are viewing it.
If you'd like me to respond to that, I could quickly. That's why the 30 days, I realized that that would be very troubling, but the 14 days, it would, the noticing would become after the meeting. So, you would have that separation. And even if we decided to go to a 12-day to give it more of a buffer, but what we're talking about, our convenience versus our constituents' knowledge in transparency. Transparency comes at a price. It'd be very convenient for us if we all had the chair's power of noon on Friday for Tuesday's meeting.
It is.
But that would not be helpful to our constituents in us saying that we're for transparency and that we want people to participate. We're sitting through two long meetings today on the budget because it's so important for people to know, but the rest of the year, we don't care. We don't think it's important. And I would submit to you, Madam Chair, that I hate the last-minute docket because nine times out of 10, it's a member's poor planning that's the last-minute docket. It's not because it's an emergency. And we could easily conclude in this that if it's an emergency, because if we do have a crisis, all rules are changed, and four votes can change anything on this board at any time, and we could actually even have a special session if it's that important. We don't even have to wait for the full two weeks for the next board meeting, we can have one sooner. So, what we're really talking about is our staff and our convenience versus the people we represent and whether they have a stake. Now, I do have a question of staff. When you were doing the analysis of the counties, I'm curious, and you may not have it before you, but what are the counties that you looked at?
We reached out to all 58 counties in the state through the California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Association.
So, let's rule out San Francisco because the city is the county. There is no rural portion. Really what we should be comparing to is some of the Central Valley because all the rest of them are highly urbanized and they're not rural counties. Our population is rural in terms of the people that we are directly responsible for. So, when you're thinking in terms of it, it's not about, well, look, they live in Pomona and they're part of LA County, and that's far from LA, but no, they have roads, they have internet. We have communities that don't have that. And, you know, thank you, Madam Chair, for joining authoring my letter, our letter, to get $10 million towards bringing the internet to portions of San Diego County. So, until everybody has Starlink and has it, we've got to compare apples to apples, not urban counties to rural counties because we have that rural aspect. And if you think in terms of where our unincorporated live, it ain't downtown, and it isn't along the coast, and probably the closest we get to it is Benita. Everyone else is further away than that. So, I want us just to look at it with our eyes wide open because, you know, I'm fortunate, I've got colleagues on this board who care deeply about their constituents, and while we represent different portions of the county, we all do care. And I would ask that you consider sending this as a pilot program, and in the next two months, if it's not working, let's make an adjustment. But let's err on the side of giving more people an opportunity to get involved. You know, what always gets me is we'll have these hearings and stuff, and it's very difficult for people in my district or Jim's district in Fallbrook and Bonzal to get down here, or Brego Springs, to get down here to be able to communicate and participate, and it's different when you call in. It's not the same magnitude as when you're standing there. And we're comparing that to people that run nonprofits, who live next door, who make money off the county. And somehow their opinion, when they're tied financially, they're not, they're receiving money, they're not writing checks to the county. I really want to make sure the people that pay the taxes, the people that depend on our services have access to us. And so that's why I would ask that we consider the 14 days, and then if it doesn't work, I want something that works, but I think we'll have better participation, and at least people, if they choose not to participate, they chose not to participate, we didn't play hide the pea on them.
Thank you. I want to respond, first of all, I want to say, I take a little offense at the characterization it's about our convenience versus participation. I'm very focused, I think we all have been, on transparency and participation, and, you know, that's why we're here, planning an evening budget hearing, and I think we've done a lot of work as a board over the last four years to try to increase opportunities for participation and make this board more transparent. My real concern is, I think, 14 days is too long. It doesn't create, allow for the board to act with urgency on items and things that happen and crises that happen, because there are things that happen, and 14 days is a really long time. I mean, and you're right, right now, someone could docket it and the chair could say, sure, that's an emergency, go ahead, but I don't think that's appropriate for, you know, if the chair, not me, some future chair, refused to docket something because they didn't agree it was an emergency, but it really is, we have, we'd have four fifths of our county being unrepresented in an emergency, and that feels like a very, very bad place to be. Your suggestion that we could just convene an emergency session, well, we've had a lot of challenges getting quorum for many reasons and on many issues, even ones that we all agree are important, like the Tijuana River Valley. So, I don't think saying we have to convene a quorum and then people decide not to go because they don't want to have a quorum, that doesn't seem like a good solution. I don't like this idea of changing it for three months as a pilot because it's a lot of chaos and unpredictability for everyone trying to participate, then people don't know when it's being posted. I mean, it takes like, you know, six months for people to know where the agendas are posted and where they download it, and how do they participate, and when is it posted? It's a massive amount of outreach, plus all the procedures of our staff. So, I'm super open, I'd love to find a compromise. I don't support, I can't support 14-day universal notice. I would certainly support 14 days of an agenda preview. You know, maybe there's some time more than seven and less than 14 that we could talk about for some kind of universal notice. So, I'm not cutting this off entirely, I just want to say, I do think that it is really important for the board to have the ability and flexibility to respond with urgency to crises that arise in our community, and that that is a power that we all need to have in order to represent our constituents, even when you are not the chair and can docket things late. So, again, this is me sitting here today, and I wasn't here for four years, and I might not be here again, and so I'm just very cognizant that it's really important that we create rules that allow all of our constituents to have a voice when there's a crisis. Again, I'm not making a formal motion, but I am saying I can't support the 14-day universal notice, I would support 14-day agenda preview, and I'm sort of open to something in between. Supervisor Montgomery, staff.
I am thinking not only us, but, and I know that county staff generally does not have a practice of doing this, but my concern is that there is not enough time for us to have something put on the agenda that requires our approval for the operational side. The other thing is with calling a special session, that, I think it counters what we're trying to do--
The special session is for an earthquake. I'm not suggesting--
Well, and I get it, but there's proverbial earthquakes probably that were, you know, I mean, there are things that may come up in the next few years that it is almost better for us to create the familiarity around our process than to call special sessions for things, even if they are emergencies. I'm just trying to get to what meets your intent, which is a very important one, and what still allows us to govern in a way where we're in a place of legislating and operating, I guess is my concern.
When I said three months, my only point was if it didn't work, we could change it. I wasn't suggesting that we're going to just try for three months. No, I want to see it in perpetuity, but I'm open that if it didn't work. All the arguments that you're making, I appreciate, but then we should, under the importance of that flexibility, then everything should be done Friday at noon, because you're making the argument that there's absolutely no time that's available. Because, see, I'm going to go a countdown and say, how about 13 days? Because, see, I'm going to go a countdown and say, how about 13 days? Would that, Madam Chair, would that, would you be amenable to 13 days?
I mean, I have really thought about this. This is like an interesting question, and, you know, it's like, well, what, let me answer your question.
Because I didn't do the board letter long enough. If you had 14 days before this board letter came forward, you have had that extra time.
No, let me, I'm going to answer your question, right? I mean, I think you're, if you think about this logically, it comes out on, you know, Wednesday, so you've got like Thursday, Friday to get yourself organized, know about it, get down here on Tuesday. I feel like it's probably enough time, but I understand your point. So what do I think we might need, maybe a week? So maybe instead of it coming out Wednesday, if it came out on Monday? That, that feels like you've got a whole week to get yourself organized, to know when it comes. I'm like a little bit more in that ballpark. So just to, if we're really having this conversation, that, that would be kind of more where I would be sitting.
I am offering you the same deal that you offered my colleague, Mr. Desmond.
Well, I mean, I'm having a real conversation. I mean, if we're really talking about this.
I'm going to accept a victory by getting something extended beyond what it is today because today's not working.
I would, I would be willing to go to have a conversation where what we're, right now, it's, it goes out public on, what, Wednesday, it's Wednesday, right? So if we had something where it was public on Monday, so it's like a two-day difference, that feels like I could live with that.
What would you think on that Friday before? Because that would give the weekend to get the message out so that come workdays, you're not getting.
You already have a weekend. You have the following weekend.
Yeah, but that's not enough time for anybody to work. If somebody wanted to take time off from work, they'd have to have more notice. So if we said the Friday, right now, the deadline is the Friday before. What if we went to the Friday before that?
I would be comfortable with the Monday, not the Friday. But that's my, if we're having, we're having a good conversation.
So is that your amendment?
That would be, I would like, before I make an amendment, I'd love to hear from my colleague, Supervisor Montgomery. She had her hand up, but.
I didn't. I already took it back down. I'm just trying to think through the different scenario and the timing.
The water's warm.
What about, turn to our CAO right now just to, because also, in the recommendations, it says that staff will come back to us in September with all of the different changes we would actually need to make.
Thank you. And through the vice chair, just before we get into that, if I can have staff, for their record, state what the additional dates would be for the legislative session as well as the land use session, based on the conversation that the board members were just having. So we would go from six to eight days for the general session and for the land use session, just that I don't get it wrong?
Yes, so the land use session would be the additional, then that would be for the docket deadline. So the publication date would be the same. It'd be the M minus 11 days for the Friday before, M minus eight would be the publication per docket. It would only be the internal deadlines that would back up separately for land use, and we would need to. So I explain that again, Karen? So what Ebony is referencing is the date that we submit for docket. So the publication date would be the same.
No, the whole idea is the publication date would be two days prior because that's, Supervisor.
Sorry, the two, the two meetings would be the same, the Wednesday, Tuesday agenda. So the release, if you did the Monday before, would give you, or the Monday before, the Wednesday currently, would be M minus eight. So that would be eight days for review before the, before the agenda was public. And then for the, and if it was the Friday before, that'd be 11 days that it would be public. I'm looking at Andrew to make sure I counted that correctly on your calendar.
Just to clarify, so the, if the agenda were released on the Monday, that's eight days before the meeting, the docket deadline for the legislative session for Tuesday would be 12 days before the meeting. For the Wednesday land use session, it would be 14 days before the meeting. And then there are additional internal deadlines ahead of that.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. And then I would say that if your board takes action to give us direction today, as noted, we'd be returning in September with the updated rules and procedures and any applicable policies. Right now, as it's structured in the recommendations, we would.
And you need direction today, and that's the whole purpose.
To come back with those changes, yes. And we also would tentatively, based on today's discussion, be planning to implement. January 1, we could have more conversation when we return in September around what that implementation timeline would be, including a pilot, if that was so desired of the board, once you have some more information on what the rules and procedures and the policy changes would be.
I'm amenable to the eight days.
So I think my, my formal emotion or whatever would be to go to, from the six, seven to the, whatever, what would you say? Was it eight days? Okay, so that the agenda would be published on Monday instead of Wednesday.
I'll gladly accept this baby step in the right direction. The second needs to be accepted.
Okay. Yes?
Let's make a deal.
Okay, so that's really the team coming back in a, in September with, for us to formally vote on this with the board rules and procedures, but this is the direction for the team to go develop these.
Correct. So we would be revising recommendation one C to extending the publishing timeline to eight days for all items. Thank you.
I just want to thank my colleagues for the fun that I had. More fun on that board item than anything else today. Thank you.
Okay, well, with that, thank you very much, Supervisor Anderson. We have a time certain at 5:30 for budget. Oh, we need to take a vote. We've got a motion and a second. Please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We are going to take like a four-minute, according to that clock, recess. We'll be back at 5:30. Thank you.
We're going to go into the board's session, so just relax to it.
Yeah, so thank you very much for the question, for point of clarification. Items 22 and 23. We will see how long this budget hearing goes, so either we will take them after the budget hearing or they will go till tomorrow. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. If everyone can take a seat, please. If everyone can please take a seat, or stand if you can't find one. But either way, let's get focused, okay? So we're now continuing our budget hearing. This is discussion item 16. The Chief Administrative Officer Recommended Operational Plan for Fiscal Years 2025 to 2026. We still have, just sort of making sure everyone knows where we're at with the agenda, we still have a couple items remaining that we haven't gotten through. Depending on what time we end this evening, we might do them tonight, or we might do them tomorrow. So that's items 22 and 23. And we also have the remainder of non-agenda public comment and adjournments in memory. So most likely, this is for my colleagues and staff, most likely, we are going to do budget, and then adjournments in memory, or then non-agenda public comment, and then adjournments in memory. Most likely, we will not have time to get to items 22 and 23 tonight. But we will see how long this goes, just for everyone's noticing of like what we're doing, okay? Andrew, please.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, members of the board. On May 1st, 2025, the Chief Administrative Officer's Recommended Operational Plan for Fiscal Years 2025 through 26 and 26 through 27 was released. This evening marks the continuation of the budget hearings that began this morning at 9:00 a.m. for the board to receive oral public testimony on all areas of the budget. Pursuant to the board's rules of procedure, members of the public that spoke at the first hearing this morning will not be allowed to speak again this evening. We have 75 requests to speak on this item, 61 in-person, and 14 requesting to speak by phone. For any individuals that requested to speak at this evening's budget hearing by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have one minute to address the board, and we'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I will be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals: David Barber Dunham, Steve Y., and Michelle Zitlau Johnson. If I've called your name, please come forward.
My name is David Barber Dunham. I'm a retired private contractor from the U.S. Navy, and I'm here to speak about Moss Fresco Plus because Moss Fresco Plus helps families have fresh fruit and vegetables while supporting local farmers and other small businesses. I was in the hospital because of poor diet, and my nutritionist and Moss Fresco Plus put me back in the game by supplying me with medicinal food, prescription food, vegetables, and fruits that helped me to heal up. Unfortunately, this critical program will run out of funding June 30th. We need the board of supervisors to include more funding for produce prescriptions in this year's budget. San Diego County families are having a hard time putting food on the table with floods and inflation. One in three children don't have enough to eat. Moss Fresco Plus puts healthy food on the table.
Thank you, sir. That's your time. Next speaker. We got Steve, Michelle.
Hi there. I'm Steve Y., proud SEIU 221 member and DPW employee for seven years. The work we do is essential. We keep this county running 24/7. We are the backbone of this community. Right now, many of us are here tonight at the bargaining table fighting for a fair and equitable contract. And let me be clear, we will not go back. A fair contract means we can recruit and retain skilled workers our community relies on. It means increasing flex credits to cover rising healthcare costs, fixing Tier D, a broken pathetic excuse for a pension system that shortchanges hard-working employees 30% or more in retirement. Without competitive pay benefits in retirement, the county continues its role as a farm team for better-paying agencies, training talent that thrives elsewhere. Workers deserve a sustainable career here. We deserve a fair equitable contract. We won't settle, won't go back. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Zitlau Johnson, and I'm a proud member of SEIU Local 221 and a senior public health nurse in the tuberculosis control department of the county of San Diego, and where I have been since 2021. Many of these nurses behind me started after me, and not one day goes by that I don't worry we will lose them. I went to nursing school for the express purpose of becoming a public health nurse and working for the county, serving my community. However, I am embarrassed to tell any nurse outside the county what I make. And the Tier D pension plan is perhaps the biggest slap in the face, making us question if we are even valued at all. In the coming days when you're deciding what our work is worth, I hope you will remember our faces and those that are fighting hard every day, saving lives, and ensuring you do not contract tuberculosis disease. Please do the right thing and ensure us a fair contract now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the next three speakers: Noah Yiik, Morgan Smith, and Erica Castillo.
How's that? Thank you. Good evening, supervisors. My name is Noah Yiik. I am a researcher and policy advocate with the Center on Policy Initiatives. I am also part of Invest in San Diego Families. It's getting harder for San Diegans to survive. Families are struggling to put food on the table, access care, and stay housed, all while the federal government threatens to gut the very programs people rely on. In this moment of crisis, we need bold local leadership that puts people first. We thank you for funding the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement, mobile crisis response teams, and the Immigrant Legal Defense Program. These are people-first decisions. Yet we must go further. We urge you to fully fund innovative adult housing services and enhanced housing services, which help LGBTQ+ folks find housing and prevent housing loss. And pass a fair contract for county employees, who are the backbone of our county and the communities they serve. The county must increase flex credits, address Tier D unfairness, and add to the proposed wage increase. This budget is your opportunity to lead with care, reject austerity, and show all San Diegans that they matter. Thank you.
My name is Morgan Smith, and I am proud to serve as a public health nurse. I ask this board to be brave. I know these are challenging times. I know how a lawless administration in Washington can have a disastrous impact here. My wife is a federal employee, working on programs supporting San Diego communities. On April 1st, her team was dogged. She was forced to choose relocation or resignation. This impacts our family and the communities she served. But we are not leaving, and we are not going back. I ask you to be bold. County programs and the workers who run them are essential now more than ever. We connect people to critical services. We prevent outbreaks. We keep our healthcare system resilient. A budget that invests in our workers and strengthens these programs is your commitment to our community and to the most vulnerable among us. Our people are hurting. Our workers are hurting. We need a fair contract, and the current offer is not it. I ask you to be bold and to be brave. Will you be?
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Erica Castillo. I've been a homeowner in District 4 for 14 years. I'm a small business owner, the co-chair of Advocacy at Business for Good, and a member of the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. As federal support is rapidly declining, I'm asking you to take these actions in the budget: fully fund the CAO's recommended budget for the Immigrant Legal Defense Program; fully fund innovative adult housing services and enhanced housing services, which help our LGBTQIA+ population with housing insecurity; pass a fair contract for county employees represented by SEIU 221, who are the backbone of our county; please make the county budget more transparent and accessible for your constituents as well. Now is the time for bold compassionate action. The decisions you make in this moment will shape your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the next three speakers: Reagan Carter, Victoria, I believe it's La Campagne, and Sidney Rogo. Next three are Reagan, Victoria, and Sidney.
Good evening. My name is Victoria La Campagna, and I'm a forensic toxicology criminalist at the Sheriff's Regional Crime Laboratory. My colleagues and I are here today representing those working at the crime laboratory and to address the issue of growing urgency, one that not only impacts our workforce, but directly affects the safety of every person who lives, works, and drives in the San Diego County. Nearly every item of evidence collected from every crime committed in jurisdictions served by the regional crime lab funnels through the hands of 67 scientists, examiners, and technicians at the lab. We are here to speak of the continued neglect of the criminalist classification, specifically within our forensic toxicology unit. Let us be clear, this isn't a labor issue. This is a public safety concern, and it's costing the county more than it can afford in both lives and dollars.
Good evening. My name is Sidney Rogo, and I'm also a forensic toxicology criminalist at the crime laboratory. Your toxicology criminalists are the ones on the front lines of DUI enforcement and traffic fatality investigations. We are the ones identifying and confirming the presence of impairing substances in drivers and testifying in courts of law regarding their impairing effects and impacts on traffic safety. Every week, we receive blood evidence from 150 to 200 DUI cases. Of those, about 85% are found to have alcohol present at an average BAC of .18, which is more than double the legal limit. Approximately 60% of those cases have drugs other than alcohol detected, and over 50% of those cases have alcohol in addition to one or more other drugs detected. In addition to this blood evidence, we also manage breath instruments that collect samples from an additional 100 DUI subjects each week.
Good evening. My name is Reagan Carter, and I'm also a forensic toxicology criminalist at the crime laboratory. The caseload just outlined equates to at least 250 to 300 drivers on the roads every week, putting at risk the lives of the citizens of San Diego County. In 2024, 26 people were killed in DUI crashes in San Diego County, and 2025 is on track for another very deadly year. In addition to analyzing evidence, we spend nearly 10 hours each week testifying in court on multiple cases, not including travel and wait times. This year alone, we've received nearly 250 subpoenas and testified in almost 70 DUI cases to date. The successful prosecution of these cases relies heavily on our expert testimony. Unfortunately, our county leaders simply do not seem to understand the complexity, responsibility, and urgency of the work we perform every single day. Our unit remains overworked, understaffed, and undercompensated. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the next three speakers: Marcella Velasco, Megan Ing, and Rachel Reed.
Good evening. My name is Megan Ing, and I am also a forensic toxicology criminalist at the crime laboratory. If the criminalist classification is not updated to meet the current demand, the downstream effects are staggering. Cases may be delayed or dismissed. Investigations may stall. Critical evidence may be held up in a backlog. And this isn't hypothetical. We are already experiencing these effects. What used to be a one-week turnaround time on testing has turned into a one-month turnaround time. Every time we hire a new criminalist, it takes two years to train them in forensic alcohol at a cost of approximately $275,000, and additional three years to fully train them in forensic toxicology at an additional cost of over $500,000. That means if we were to hire someone today, that criminalist would not be a full expert in the impairing effects of all drugs on driving until at least the year 2030. Every time we lose a criminalist, that clock restarts, and the money the taxpayers of the county have invested in training them is all lost. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marcella Velasco, and I'm also a forensic toxicologist/criminalist at the crime laboratory. In the last six years, seven fully-trained or nearly fully-trained toxicology criminalists have left the San Diego Sheriff's Crime Laboratory to find work elsewhere. We keep losing trained and experienced criminalists to better-paid positions in more affordable counties within the state. We currently do not have anyone in our unit fully-trained in both alcohol and drug impairment, and the efforts to get fully-trained are compounded by the fact that our trainees outnumber our trainers. We simply cannot afford to lose more people to counties that are offering better compensation and benefits. We're not asking for special treatment. We're asking for fair and accurate compensation that reflects the scope of our duties and the importance and impact of our work. Currently, the journey-level criminalist II salary is only slightly above that of the counties of San Bernardino, Fresno, and Kern County. Thank you.
Thank you. And as the next speaker is coming forward, I'll call forward the next three: Kathy Ching, E. David, and Zach Register.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Reed, and I'm also a forensic toxicology criminalist at the crime lab. Come July, the criminalist II salary for San Diego County will be more than 12% below the median salary of comparator counties in California and 23% lower than the average salary of comparator counties in the Bay Area, where there is a similar cost of living. We are ready to do the work. We have the skill and the commitment. But we need the county to recognize that public safety cannot be compromised for the sake of budgetary convenience. Properly investing in our criminalists is not a luxury. It is a necessity. We strongly urge the county to agree to a contract with salaries and benefits that allows us to retain workers and encourages the talented and dedicated professionals at the crime lab to stay in San Diego County, serving its citizens and helping to keep them safe throughout the important work that we do. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is E. David Gassaway. I am a proud SEIU 221 union member and county employee. I've been with the Department of Public Works and Civil Engineering for almost 18 years. I'm becoming a rarity. The work I do is vital to community members because, to put it in a nutshell, when your engineers and surveyors don't stick around, your infrastructure starts to fall down. We need a strong contract that allows us to retain and recruit workers so that we can support the community. Part of a fair contract includes adding to the proposed wage increase. Right now, base wages on the bargaining table are less than three years ago. Back then, I remember chanting "more than four", in the hopes that we would get an annual percentage that would be better than outpacing inflation. Since then, I have seen engineering and surveying turnover and vacancies that have hamstrung capital improvement projects from Rainbow Valley and Valley Center to El Cajon and Borrego Springs.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Zach Register. I'm an assistant engineer in construction. I've been with the county for one and a half years. In this time, I have seen eight engineers leave in a department of 24, including the senior that hired me, the civil that trained me, and two assistant engineers that I shadowed. My coworker Reeve Tavallera even assisted in making me this list and even noted 16 for himself in the three years he's worked with the county, and this does not include retirements. I deeply care about my coworkers and the mission of our county. But the pay and benefits are bafflingly low comparatively to the same jobs elsewhere. We are pushed to get our engineer license, but get no help or bonuses in doing so. Civil engineers are hired at a year-five salary, leading to no reason to stick around. I love the people of the county and what we do here, but I'm tired of seeing people I have genuine connections with leave because the county fails to see they are financially forcing out intelligent and passionate engineers in a department I care about. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll call the next three speakers: Drew Blossom, Samantha Schwimmer, and Kim Fountain.
My name is Kathy Ching, and I've been a DNA criminalist at the Sheriff's Crime Lab for 20 years. Our lab has struggled for years to retain employees, due in part to the high cost of living. The more turnover we have, the more time and money is spent training instead of investigating assaults, homicides, and burglaries. When people leave because they can't afford a house, childcare, or groceries, it begins a new cycle of training, and we don't get a return on our investment. This results in inefficient, wasteful use of county funds, increased case backlogs, and a negative impact on public safety. Our wages are not keeping up with inflation and the cost of living, and weak retirement benefits don't incentivize new employees to stay long-term. Additionally, premiums that reflect the need for increased education, certifications, technical skills, and the hazardous nature of our work need to be approved. Show your employees they are the county's greatest asset with strong wage increases, which benefit not only us, but the entire county. Thank you.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Samantha Schwimmer. I am a D-1 resident without representation on this current board, as well as a community organizer, here to urge the board to include a $3 million allocation for adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county's final budget. I also am here in support of the proposed funding and universal access for the Immigrant Legal Defense Program. In my time working at the San Diego LGBT Community Center, I saw firsthand the impact of this program. I will forever remember the folks I spoke to while covering the front desk who were not sure if they would be able to keep a roof over their heads and the relief that came from learning about this program. The innovative adult housing services and enhanced housing services have been immensely successful in providing stable housing and wraparound services to our community, including our LGBTQIA+ population across San Diego County. I urge you to include it. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Dr. Kim Fountain. I live in District 4, and I'm the Deputy CEO of the San Diego LGBT Community Center. I'm here today to ask that you include a $3 million allocation for adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county's final budget. These contracts are efficient, cost-saving mechanisms for the county as it is significantly less expensive to keep someone in stable housing than to find new permanent housing solutions for someone who has already fallen into homelessness. San Diego has to create new, affordable homes, protect low-income households from losing their homes, help end homelessness, and close LGBTQ+ and racial equity gaps in homelessness. Including adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county budget makes sense from an economic perspective, as well as from a humanitarian perspective. We urge that you fully fund these programs. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll call three additional speakers: Felicia Gomez, Maya Renkupali, and Gloria Cruz Cardenas. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Drew Blossom. I'm from District 3, and I am here to ask that you all include $3 million to support the adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county's final budget. I am a public school teacher. I've also spent time volunteering in food banks and homeless shelters. I've had students who have had to balance completing homework and classwork assignments and applying to college while couch surfing and living in their cars. From my experiences working with these students, as well as in my efforts volunteering, I've found that people who are suffering or experiencing homelessness are not there because of a lack of character or work ethic. They're there because conditions and events have made maintaining housing on their own unsurmountable. These funds will help invest in our communities and our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Felicia Gomez, and I'm the campaign director at the California Immigrant Policy Center and a longtime resident of District 5. Center and a longtime resident of District 5. I'm here today to express my strong support of the CIO's recommended budget for the immigrant legal defense program in the fiscal year 2526 county budget. Funding and sustaining the ILDP is more important now than ever. We anticipate that the need for this program will increase during the next four years, making it vitally important for the county to continue to invest and sustain this program now and in the future. In recent weeks alone, we have witnessed horrific tactics utilized by the current administration to tear our communities apart and instill fear, from courthouse arrests, the arrest of several workers at a restaurant over the weekend at a workplace, and a workplace raid in El Cajon. On top of this, the current administration just announced an increased quota of 3,000 immigration arrests per day the past week. These actions further underscore how important the ILDP is to ensuring all people have access to due process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Maya. I use she/her pronouns. I live in District 4 and I support fully funding innovative adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county budget. The services provided through these contracts prevent homelessness by providing one-time stipends to keep folks in their permanent stable housing while also helping unhoused populations navigate housing solutions. Research shows that it is significantly less expensive to keep someone in stable housing than to support them once they've fallen into homelessness. It is also cruel to force our neighbors to live without shelter. I recently completed two degrees in public health, and I am appalled to come into the real world and see such disregard for science and research demonstrated by this funding cut. Including adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county budget makes sense from an economic and a humanitarian perspective. I urge you to fully fund these programs. It is common sense.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, Teya Widman, Esmeralda Flores, and Estevan Ramirez. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Hello, supervisors. My name is Gloria Cruz Cardenas. She/her pronouns. I am the proud resident of District 1 and I'm the Chief Impact Officer at the San Diego LGBT Community Center. Our community is here to speak in support of fully funding innovative adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county budget. Although these programs originally received ARPA funding, these contracts have been immensely successful. Sustaining them is an efficient and cost-effective investment that will save the county millions. It is significantly less expensive to keep someone in stable housing than it is to find new permanent housing when they fall into homelessness. As San Diego continues to experience a housing and homelessness crisis, now is not the time to cut funding to critical services that help our community remain in their homes and off the streets. In addition, our community fully supports sustaining the immigrant legal defense program funding allocation in the budget. Our LGBTQIA+ immigrant community has greatly benefited from the services of this vital program.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Teya Widman and I'm a District 3 resident and Health and Human Services worker. As the cost of living continues to rise in San Diego County, the board has to make a fair deal with the union who are fighting on behalf of the county's own essential workers. There are not sufficient allocations in the proposed HHSA budget to fairly compensate and retain workers. Quality social services do more to keep our communities safe and thriving than increased investment in law enforcement or policing, and I would like to see essential services that prevent things like crime in the first place prioritized in the budget. County workers in HHSA need wage increases and fair retirement to continue to live and work here. We are a skilled, highly educated workforce who sacrifice the potential of higher pay in the private sector to serve our community. If the county cares about its employees and quality care to our county residents, you will raise wages and improve retirement for HHSA workers, or more and more skilled workers will be forced to leave. Additionally, I urge the board to approve the recommended $5 million budget and universal access for immigrant legal defense and to include a $3 million allocation for innovative adult housing and enhanced housing services.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, Brian Lafferty, Marissa Bell, and John Gibson. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Esmeralda Flores. I am a resident of District 4 and I am here today on behalf of CHIRLA and the Investing San Diego Families Coalition to reject any cuts that threaten our healthcare and safety nets and to express our continued support for the immigrant legal defense program. Four years ago, this board approved a program to provide immigrants facing deportation access to legal representation, the first in the entire southern border. Thank you Supervisor Laszlo Rimer for leading this effort. In the face of unjust, xenophobic races and cruel immigration policies and senseless attentions and arrests that criminalize our existence, we must take a stand and protect our immigrant community. Now more than ever, we know this program is changing lives and protecting families who are being torn apart from our communities every day. We strongly reject any proposals to roll back investments that will dismantle public services programs and safety nets that we rely on. San Diego must prioritize the wellbeing of its residents over any political agenda. We deserve better, you must do better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Brian Lafferty. I work for the Medical Examiner as a Legal Support Assistant II. So, I just want to make one thing very clear. I understand that, you know, the budget, you know, what's going on with the feds and what's going on in the state, but get, please, but get this straight. That is not an excuse to bounce the budget off the backs of county workers because we have county workers, like, I'm a Legal Support Assistant II, and all these people in purple you see behind me, like, we all have families to feed, we all have food that we need to put on the table, we all have, we all have to pay rent in our mortgage to keep a roof over our heads. And so, when you go into closed session tomorrow morning to, before you give us our best, last, final offer, please understand, we are people. Like, we are not asking for a lot because of what we want. This is what we need. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marissa Bell. I stand here as an adult protective services specialist, but I also speak on behalf of every OA forced to work for unlivable wages, HSSs who work three programs without proper training wishing they could qualify for the benefits they disperse, social worker threes carrying a caseload of 350-plus clients without overtime, PSWs working past midnight on an emergency call, and nurses forced to work without proper staffing. As a member of the negotiations team, we're not asking for fair wages, we're demanding it. Today, base wages on the bargaining table are less than they were three years ago and we won't go back. People are overworked, underpaid, rent is too damn high, and people are struggling to feed their families. SEIU 3AC is hosting a food drive for county employees this weekend, and the response has been overwhelming, proof that something needs to change. We know the economic climate is unstable, but that does not justify you not paying your employees a fair and living wage. The county runs on our labor, and we're tired of the county funding itself on our backs. We must have a contract that moves us forward. It's time to invest in us, because if you won't, why should we continue to invest in you?
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite three additional speakers, Alicia Ballard, David Gangsey, and Aved Mirhosani.
Hello and thank you for your time. My name is John Gibson. I'm a civil engineer. I've worked 30 years locally and three with the county in land development. Like so many of my colleagues, I'm asking for your support for a fair and respectful contract. I wanted to offer perspective from the engineering side. Teams in land development, public works, and capital improvements are directly supporting some of the county's most important goals: housing and infrastructure. At land development, we operate a cost-recovery basis, so we actually generate revenue while getting landowners and developers through complex permitting processes. Currently, the board has made a clear commitment to expanding affordable housing and speeding up project approvals. But that only works if we have experienced engineers in place. If compensation doesn't keep up, these goals will become harder to reach, not because of lack of will but lack of people. These departments are only as good as the people. A bad contract would push out talented people to work elsewhere. Departments would start to get depleted, causing schedule delays and harming--
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. If I've called your name, please come forward.
My name is Alicia Ballard and I am a member of SEIU Local 221. And I have been working for the county for seven years as an engineer in planning and development services. I'm here to ask for the county to strengthen the offer in regards to equity study funding and across-the-board wages. The cost of living has surpassed the dream of having a desired job and left many of us scraping and living paycheck to paycheck. Engineering requires years of education, lifelong learning, and licensing. Yet, being an engineer at the county does not seem to reflect that commitment it takes to succeed as one. Many engineers with extensive county experience have left due to that very fact. I urge you to invest financially in the engineers currently serving the county of San Diego because we implement important initiatives such as affordable housing and ensure a health and safety place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Dr. David Gangsey. I'm a resident of District 4. I'm a clinical psychologist and Board President of the nonprofit Humanitarian Outreach for Migrant Emotional Health, or HOM. I'm here with my board colleagues, Yvonne Elkin and Rick Arlo Yalira, to urge the Board of Supervisors to retain the Immigrant Rights Legal Defense Program at full funding for the coming fiscal year. HOM participates in the ILDP by providing expert mental health evaluations for qualifying individuals to document their trauma histories and other factors relevant to legal petitions. These reports significantly assist a judge's decision-making process. We've been working with ILDP for a year. We also work all along the U.S. southern border, and we can knowledgeably say that the legal defense program established by this Board of Supervisors is innovative and standard-setting, ensuring that people in the immigration process have a fair opportunity for relief consistent with the law. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, David Vance, Gus Hernandez, Erin Nagon.
Hello. My name is Aved Mirhosani. I'm a proud SEIU Local 221 member and have served as assistant engineer with PDS for over five years. The work my fellow engineers and I do is not just technical, it's foundational. We are revenue-generating county employees whose efforts ensure safe infrastructure and protect the public every single day. High vacancy rates and turnover rates among engineers and surveyors have become the norm, not the exception. Over the past five years, I've watched countless talented colleagues leave PDS and DPW for nearby jurisdictions. Our departments are at a breaking point. Today, I'm asking you to invest in us. This contract right now is an opportunity for you to retain experienced engineers and surveyors who keep this county running safely and efficiently. If we fail to act now, we risk losing the few professionals we have left, and that is a risk that county cannot afford.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is David Vance. My pronouns are they/them, and I support fully funding innovative adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county budget. I'm going to share a story of clients who have been served by these critical programs. When the Braxtons reached out to the San Diego LGBT Community Center, they were in the process of eviction and facing the terrifying possibility of homelessness. The Braxtons and the center's adult housing services team worked together to create a plan to keep them housed and find stability, which included helping them apply for assistance programs, building a workable budget, and working towards increasing their household income. Most critically, our team advocated on the Braxtons' behalf with their property manager who had initially refused to negotiate. We were able to shift the conversation and the property manager agreed to accept the overdue payments and halt the eviction process. Since receiving services, the Braxtons remain in their home and continue to work towards their financial goals to support long-term stability. More than just a story about avoiding eviction, this is the story of a family who, when given the right support at the right time, reclaimed their future.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Gus Hernandez. My pronouns are he/him and en, and I'm here to ask that you support fully funding innovative adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county budget. These services are provided by, providers with lived experiences and clients served through these contracts gain access to direct housing services and are brought into wraparound service models which they are able to access for a broad scope of needs, including behavioral health services. The types of services provided by these programs include linkages to health services and family-of-choice reunification. People can access services like temporary hotel stays with case management, support with security deposits, utility assistance, move-in assistance, and referral to eviction prevention programs. We have the power to end homelessness in San Diego, and I ask you to help us meet this goal. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, Kira Hamilton, Lori Johnson, and Sarah Colvas.
My name is Erin Nung. My pronouns are he and they. I am a resident of District 3 and I am here representing the San Diego LGBT Community Center with the San Diego LGBTQIA+ Regional Table. I urge the county to include a $3 million allocation toward LGBTQIA+ adult housing services. With impending cuts to social security programs like Medicare and TANF at the federal level, vulnerable communities already are and will continue to face higher rates of homelessness. The system of philanthropy and social welfare organizations is a crutch for government aid. This system relies on social welfare organizations not only to supplement government aid, but instead to provide indispensable and critical services to communities under fire due to longstanding systemic oppression and current policies moving through legislatures as we speak, putting LGBTQIA+ lives at risk. Please create space in the budget for our critical care to continue preventing folks in our communities from falling into homelessness and ending up as another statistic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Kira Hamilton and I'm a resident of District 3. I'm here to support fully funding the immigrant legal defense program in the county budget. This issue is particularly important to me in light of the ramping up of ICE activity in San Diego. I do not believe the narrative that ICE is here to remove violent criminals from our streets or that they care about making our community safer, because that is not what their actions demonstrate. They are here to cause terror. I do not feel safer with ICE on our streets. I am horrified that every day, working people who make meaningful contributions to our community are being swept away in unmarked vehicles. They deserve due process. I urge you to fund the immigrant legal defense program so that San Diego can be a safer and more just place for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Lori Johnson. I live in District 3 and I'm a proud volunteer of ACLU. I recently had the opportunity to observe proceedings at the federal court where immigrants seeking asylum were presenting themselves in accordance with our legal system, hoping for a protection, due process, and a chance to build a life in safety. What I witnessed was deeply distressing. Individuals walked into the court with courage and composure, standing respectfully before the judge. When told their cases had been dismissed, perhaps they believed this meant progress or resolution. However, just moments after leaving the courtroom, they were met by DHS and ICE agents. Without any explanation, they were told to face the wall, they were handcuffed, there were no questions asked, no opportunity for clarity, just silent, swift removal. As a witness, I was overwhelmed, I could not hold back tears. It's heartbreaking to see this happen, especially-- Oh, I had more.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Before the next speaker begins, I'll call three additional speakers, Veronica Strider, Dan Nyamanga, Alyssa Gunn.
Hi. My name is Sarah Colvas. She/her pronouns. I'm a proud resident of District 4, and today I urge you to fully fund the innovative adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county budget. San Diego is in a housing crisis, and these programs provide critical support to our most vulnerable, including the LGBTQ community. This is the same community that you signed a pride proclamation for earlier today. And while proclamations matter, actions matter more. As our federal government continues to dismantle LGBTQ support systems with cruel precision, you have the unique power to stand with us and protect supportive services here in San Diego County. These are services that keep people safely housed and help them navigate some of the hardest moments of their lives, help that will be needed even more in the months and years ahead. Please support the housing services our community needs and stand behind the spirit of your proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Dan Nyamanga, organizer at CPI, and I'm with the ISDF. San Diegans should be able to open the budget and see what's funded and what's not. If the county is serious about listening to community engagement, we need a budget and a budget process that is transparent, accessible, and inclusive. Working communities fought to have evening budget hearings to allow people to participate in this budget process. This hearing was moved at the last minute with no real public notice. That is not what democracy looks like. That is a symptom of the disconnect and exclusion we are witnessing across the country. That is a symptom of the disconnect and exclusion we are witnessing across the country. That being said, I want to thank you for the investments you made in people in last year's budget, including the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement, mobile crisis response teams, and the immigrant legal defense program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Alyssa Gunn, and I use she/them pronouns. I reside in District Four of San Diego. I'm here asking you to include a $3 million allocation for adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county's final budget. These services have already proven to be successful in providing stable housing and services and preventing homelessness for San Diego's most vulnerable populations, including the queer community. Housing insecurity disproportionately affects the queer community. Queer people come to San Diego looking for support and safety that they can't find in the rest of the country. We need to continue providing programs that we know keep this community safe and housed. The need for these services will persist, and if they are not funded, we will be leaving our most vulnerable populations without basic needs met. We also know it will be more expensive to address this problem in the future because we know it's more expensive to find housing solutions for someone who has already fallen into homelessness than it is to keep someone in stable housing. Including adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county budget makes sense from an economic and humanitarian perspective. We urge you to fully fund these programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite forward David Levine, Alejandro Caballero, and Brandon Segua.
I'm Veronica Strider. I'm a protective services worker with CFWB and a proud member of SEIU Local 221. I also want to say that I support adult housing and the ILDP. I'm part of the 43% of all county employees in retirement Tier D. That's not only nearly half of your workforce, but it represents an even larger portion of the county's future as a whole. It's the half of your workforce who will have to work into their 80s for a livable retirement, the half of your workforce that has to work nearly 20 years longer than the norm. But it's okay. It's not like my generation has anything else going against it, right? Tier D is a joke. It's antiquated, it's offensive, and it's embarrassing. You are gravely insulting half of your employees, and that number is only going to get bigger. This is your opportunity to correct that insult. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is David Levine, and I'm a deputy public defender. I'm here on behalf of hundreds of attorneys in our office who serve San Diego's most vulnerable residents. Every day, we safeguard the constitutional rights of people the system too often forgets. We help clients find treatment, programming, housing, and more often than you probably know, hope. But our ability to continue doing that work is at risk. Our caseloads have grown dramatically due to Prop 36 and new legal mandates requiring us to investigate mental health, investigate trauma and immigration consequences in almost every case. But our budget hasn't grown with us. It remains a fraction of the district attorneys. Even worse, nearly half of our office, our Level III attorneys, are being offered the smallest raise in the county's proposed contract and have no clear path.
Next speaker, please. Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Supervisors. My name is Alejandro Caballero, and my pronouns are he/him. I live in District Three. I'm with the San Diego LGBT Community Center. I'm here to support fully funding innovative adult housing services and enhanced housing services in the county budget. San Diego must not only create new affordable housing, but also protect low-income households from losing their stable housing. It's essential to help end homelessness and address LGBTQ+ and racial equity gaps related to homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speakers coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers. Vanessa Melendez, Randy Torres Van Vleek, and Heather Bastin.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Brandon Christopher Segua. I'm the senior policy advocate for the Advancing Justice Team at the ACLU of San Diego and Imperial Counties, and we are a member of the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. A budget is a moral document. What we choose to spend our money on reflects what is important to us. We are experiencing a historic moment, and how the Board chooses to reflect the morals and values of San Diegans in this budget will impact the future of our region. We are living in turbulent times. Community members are worried about being targeted and arrested by federal officers. Lawmakers are challenging and aiming to erase people's identities. Public officials are attempting to dismantle the checks and balances that have long sustained our democracy. This is why ensuring due process for all members of our communities is so important and why programs like the immigrant legal defense program must be maintained and funded. This is why providing housing and services to LGBTQ+ San Diegans is imperative to protect a community under attack. This is why transparency in the budget is crucial to enable community members to participate in the process in an informed manner. This moment, it is vital that we look out for our friends, our neighbors, our family, and our community. As our Board of Supervisors, let this budget be a statement that you will defend...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Vanessa Melendez, and I'm the civic engagement coordinator with the Filipino Worker Center, and I'm with the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. As federal funding support is rapidly declining, I'm urging you all to take these actions in the budget. Fully fund the CAO's recommended budget for the immigrant legal defense program to make sure all San Diego residents have access to due process. Fully fund innovative adult housing services and enhanced housing services, which help the LGBTQIA+ population with housing insecurity. And lastly, pass a fair contract for county employees represented by SEIU 221. Please make the county budget more accessible to our essential workers and vulnerable members in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, County Board of Supervisors. My name is Randy Torres Van Vleek, and I'm the Associate Director of Community and Housing Development at Panna, and we're here today to ask for your support for the Global Village, cultural hub and housing campus. Located on 2.2 acres of land along the Choyes Creek watershed in mid-city, the Global Village will include 150 large-sized, affordable homes, 50,000 square feet of commercial, civic, and cultural space. The project was shaped by 2,000 community members through a hands-on design process and will integrate future adjacent Choyes Triangle Park and Rapid Transit Line into the design. The Global Village advances the county's investment in social support infrastructure by creating a comprehensive community campus that integrates housing, health, and social services, including childcare and economic opportunities. We seek the county's investment and leadership to bring the project to life, and we also support the Chief Administrative Officer's budget to fully fund the Immigrant Legal Defense Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Ramla Sahid, Daniela Alvarado, and Flower Alvarez Lopez.
Hello. My name is Heather Bastin.
You can pull the mic down a little bit closer.
Hello. My name is Heather Bastin, and I'm a proud SEIU local member and county employee. I'm a peer support specialist at Adult Case Management, vital to a county suffering a mental health and substance use crisis. We need a strong contract that allows us to retain and recruit workers so we don't fail our most vulnerable community members. Right now, base wages on the bargaining table are less than three years ago, with an ever-increasing cost of living outpacing most other counties in the state. In Riverside County, the same classification makes 22 an hour starting, and rent for a one-bedroom is about $1,800 per month. Sacramento County pays 22 an hour, one-bedroom is about $1,550 a month. In our county, my classification is paid $1,950 an hour, and rent for a one-bedroom is about $2,200 a month. Our workers cannot afford to live in the very community we serve. We must have a contract that moves forward. We will not go back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Ramla Sahid with Panna, the Partnership for the Advancement of New Americans. I'm glad to be here, and thank you for the hearing. I just want to say that we would love the support and approval of Chief CAO's recommended budget of $5 million for the Immigrant Legal Defense Fund. We also want to maintain the ILDP as a universal and merits-blind legal representation program. Second, I want to lift up the Global Village Campus, located on 2.2 acres along the Choyes Creek corridor. It will include 150 large, deeply affordable housing units, 50,000 square feet of commercial, civic, and cultural space, a community plaza that will serve as a regional asset during times of crises, all integrated with the future Choyes Triangle Park. The project has already completed significant milestones, including site acquisition without debt, a multilingual community visioning process that involved over 2,000 community members in the master plan creation, and the assembly of a proven development team. We aren't asking for...
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Daniela Alvarado. I'm with Partnership for the Advancement of New Americans. I have the chief operating officer there, and it's nice to be here this evening. I'm seeking your support for the Global Village, located in Mid-City Heights. This is more than a housing project. It's a long-term investment in resilience, strengthening belonging, and creating economic opportunity in the underserved part of City Heights. As my peers have mentioned, the project has already completed significant milestones, and this is a long-held community dream that we seek in the county. We seek this investment for the project. It's a community-driven solution created by historically left-behind communities, and it really does require direct county involvement and resources. So we ask for your support in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite forward Maricela Morera, Danielle Murphy, and Bob Prokesh.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Supervisors. My name is Flower Alvarez Lopez. I serve as the co-director of Universidad Popular, a community organization based and rooted in North County. I'm a proud resident of District Five. I'm here to express a strong support for funding the immigrant legal defense program and the $3 million allocation for adult housing and services. I have witnessed the trauma of the courthouse arrests at the federal building in San Diego. Families torn apart, lives appended, while Supervisor Desmond uses his platform to dehumanize our immigrant neighbors, we are seeing the real consequences of this administration's terror and fear. The ILDP is a national model rooted in due process and community care. San Diego must remain a leader by preserving this program as it currently operates. This is common sense. We urge you to secure funding for the ILDP and adult housing services in this year's budget to ensure sustainability for San Diegans. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Maricela Morera. I'm a member of the county of San Diego, and I live in Chula Vista. I'm here talking about Mas Fresco that you guys need to take into consideration in your budget, due to that Mas Fresco has helped my family for a long time. It has brought my kids food at the table by eating healthier with fruits and vegetables, due to that my son, at one point, he was lacking nutrition, and the school and the doctor were worried about it, but due to Mas Fresco getting that on the table for us has helped us a lot. So I appreciate it if you guys can take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, San Diego Board of Supervisors. My name is Daniel Murphy, and I want to hear... I'm here today to descend to the construction of Detroit State Sleeping Caverns. My main reason behind this is the proximity to the Lemon Grove Early Childhood Development Center, which is approximately a third of a mile from the proposed housing site. This was a $38 million investment, and the school is also a member of the California State Preschool Program, which provides free-of-charge education for income-eligible children. Additionally, Congressional Representative Sarah Jacob was able to secure $2 million and attended the ribbon-cutting on the 27th of February. Simply put, this education is a quite proven and comprehensive investment, and the city of Lemon Grove needs to prioritize the education of its most vulnerable residents in order that they're going to grow up and are a future... Right idea, wrong place.
I'd like to invite forward three additional speakers. Regina Moreno, Krista DeBouchere, and Vicki Denzlow.
Hello. My name is Bob Prokesh, social worker, county 28 years. I represent over 2,000 social workers. I'm asking that you fund the cost of living designed by MIT to help individuals, communities, employers estimate the local wage rate that a full-time worker requires to cover the cost of living for their family's needs. The COF study and MIT told you what we need for the cost of living just to get to the meeting of California. Two weeks ago, Supervisor Desmond, just walked out, bummer, he told us that we should be paid the top people in the state, so the COF study recommended this much money, and 11% is what you're offering out of the cost of living for communities in San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, honorable supervisors. My name is Regina Moreno, District Two, but I'm representing all over San Diego, all everybody in here. So the Mas Fresco program is people that need... I mean, that help the people. We are all over the communities of San Isidro, Logan Heights, City Heights. We're all over San Diego, like I say, and we help them eat healthy. It's less trips to the doctors, it's healthy food for the families, they do exercise, they manage their weight, they manage their diabetes. This program is working. Why do you want to stop it now? Please allocate some funding for the Mas Fresco. It's helping. We don't have our presentation in our table, in your table right now, but it's coming. And please, for right now, I please ask you to allocate money for the Mas Fresco because it's working. It's working for the families, and it's going to work for you. So less money you spend for doctors, more money for our food in here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Camila Miller, Zoma Beckfield Rodriguez, and Daniel Lopez. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good evening, Board. Nice to see you. My name is Krista DeBouchere. I am a proud SEIU 221 union member. I am a proud county employee, and I'm a proud worker at the Office of the Public Defender. It's a pleasure to address you tonight, along with all these county professionals. Public defense work is hard, but important work. The most important thing for you to consider as the county decision-makers is that retaining experience in your county departments is essential for providing the services that are essential to the community. Failing to address Tier D, funding inequity at less than 50%, not increasing flex credits, and funding inflation offsets less than the inflation rate is a short-sighted, cost-saving strategy that propels the county towards increased uncertainty. Be bold, be brave, protect our public defenders, protect our county services by providing... Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hey there. My name is Camila Miller. I'm a proud member of SEIU Local 221. I'm a mitigation specialist, working with the Public Defender's Office. I've been a mitigation specialist for 19 years, the last year and eight months here in paradise in San Diego. I work murder cases. There are seven of us mitigation specialists at the Public Defender's Office, and that's our caseload. We work some of the worst murder cases in this county. We partner with the attorneys, with the investigators, like Krista. I have a case with Krista. There are trial support specialists, there are paralegals that are vital to our work, and interpreters and translators. I've used personally interpreters to help me with interviews with mothers of clients where I have to discuss multi-generational alcoholism, where I have to discuss child sexual trauma with them, where I have to discuss vicious physical abuse.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Daniel Lopez. I'm born and raised in Chula Vista, 16 years county employee, proud SEIU member, and small business owner. This is the third time in the past six weeks I've been in this room, and after Friday's event, I want to bring attention to this painting by Arthur Ames and John Goodwin, commissioned as a result of FDR's New Deal in 1938. It conserves a beautiful Renaissance Agstel style, and it also conserves when segregation was very present in the U.S. If you look, it doesn't represent the people in the room and the people that work for this county. As I mentioned, I have dedicated 16 years of the county of San Diego. I have come back here for both an equitable and thriving contract, but when the first thing I see when I walk into this room, I question if I even belong here. I question if my coworkers are safety. I question if the measures passed here reflect and capture the traits and values of what makes this community great. Thank you.
Thank you. Before the next speaker begins, I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Eileen Bratton, Nicole Lee, and Barbara Pinto. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Zoma Beckfield Rodriguez, a trial support specialist at the Primary Public Defender's Office, and I love what I do. I'm one of four trial support specialists, all experts in our field. We handle well over 90% of criminal cases that go through our court system, with a 20% increase in cases this year alone. My team's duties include and are not limited... My work has led to dismissals, full acquittals, and reduction in sentencing, which is all a part of fostering a fair and equitable justice system. I implore you to support the Public Defender's Office in this budget because how do you want history to remember you?
Thank you. I'd like to invite forward the next speaker, please.
Hello there. My name is Nicole. I'm a resident of District 1, community organizer with ACE and a part of Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. And I'm here today to voice my support for funding for the Tenant Legal Services and the Immigrant Legal Defense Program. I organize in communities in Imperial Beach that has more than 70% renters. So most people I talk to are renters who are living paycheck to paycheck because their rent keeps going up while wages stay the same. It is beyond important that our renters have access to information about their legal rights and access to legal counseling. I don't usually talk to people who tell me that they got an illegal rent increase. I usually talk to people who don't even know that they have received an illegal rent increase because they're able to get connected to legal counseling. They avoid having to pay more than hundreds of dollars every single month, thousands every year.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Eileen. A public mental health county worker, 26 years SEIU member. County-operated medical health programs do the work that is vital to this community for our most vulnerable neighbors, some of whom we are their only support. We need a strong contract to recruit and retain dedicated BHS workers who support these communities. Speaking of which, our migrant community is also literally under attack and it is imperative to continue funding the ILDP program for migrants. We are a nation of immigrants and supposedly a nation of laws, and this intersection is more important than ever. Part of creating a fair contract is increasing base wages, which currently on the table is less than three years ago. We need a contract that allows our workers to live in this county. With inflation at 3.8%, 8%, even 4% would barely cover prices today, let alone keep pace with future rates of inflation. We can't go back. Going back means not retaining skilled workers we need for our residents. Your hard-working employees are working here for you because they love what they do and are dedicated to serving the public good. Thank you for considering our needs.
Thank you. Before the next speaker begins, I'd like to call for the remaining speakers in person. Jenny Kingston, Hannah Morrow, Vanessa Regoza, and Myra Hayden. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Hello. My name is Barbara Pinto and I'm a resident of the District 1 and a member of ACE, which stands for the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. Please totally support tenant legal services. We do not have enough adequate or enough housing for seniors. I rent a small house in southeast San Diego. It had no railings around the porch, railings down the stairway. Two years ago, I fell and fractured my shoulder. I learned later that residents with three to four steps need to have railings. I learned this from my organization, which supports tenant protections. We have the right to know our rights. I also ask you to support the Immigrant Legal Defense Program. Everyone's circumstances are not the same. I feel everyone should have the right to legal counsel. Do not separate families from their, separate families, especially those with school-aged children by deportation. It upsets education.
Thank you. Thank you. Time is up? Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Jenny and I'm a volunteer with ACLU and a resident of District 3. In order to ensure a just and equitable county budget, I am asking the supervisors to prioritize people's first budget priorities. First, to fully support full funding, $5 million for the Immigrant Legal Defense Fund. In the last two weeks alone, we have seen ICE target and arrest immigrants who are attending their court hearings or working in local businesses. Some of these arrests were targeting individuals without legal counsel. This demonstrates the urgent need to fund Immigrant Legal Defense Fund. Second, to support $3 million for the LGBTQ housing services. LGBTQ San Diegans, especially trans and non-binary individuals, are among the most impacted by housing insecurity. Funding inclusive, affirming housing services are vital to achieving, excuse me, achieving housing for all. Please act with courage to pass a just and equitable budget.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Hannah. I'm an ACLU volunteer and a resident of District 1. Right now, we're living through a time of crisis and our county must step up. That means making urgent, people-first investments like securing housing services for LGBTQ+ community members and keeping families together. I urge the Board to take the following actions. First, include $3 million for LGBTQ+ housing services. LGBTQ+ San Diegans experience some of the highest rates of housing insecurity in our region. In a housing crisis, we need inclusive housing services that prevent homelessness and displacement. Second, approve the CAO's recommended budget of $5 million for the Immigrant Legal Defense Program in this year's county budget. Access to legal counsel is a fundamental right that should be available to everyone and after witnessing firsthand the unlawful ICE arrests at the federal courthouse last week, this program is clearly needed now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Myra Soto Gonzalez Hayden. I'm a resident of Alcajón in District 2. I'm here to talk today to the Board about including $3 million for housing for San Diegans. Our trans siblings specifically are being targeted by our federal government and we need to provide inclusive and affirmative housing to protect them. Additionally, I ask to approve the Chief Administrative Officer's recommendation of $5 million for the Immigrant Legal Defense Program. This program supports access to legal counsel, which we know is a right that should be available to all. And lastly, we do ask that you continue to make this process more transparent for the public. We all deserve to know what our tax dollars are funding. I ask you to approve a budget that supports our communities. Approve a budget that ensures due process is given for all, no matter their identity, legal status, or background. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to do a final call for the speakers previously called. Estevan Ramirez and Vicky Denzlo. If I've called you, please come forward.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Vanessa Regoza, resident of Districts 5, and I'm here for ILDP. Let's stop pretending this is complicated. Immigrants pay taxes. They contribute to this county even in the districts of the two white Republican men on this board. Immigrants build your homes, pick your food, care for your families, and still have to fight for the basic right for a lawyer. You never had to beg for this protection in a system rigged against you. That's white privilege. That's the kind of comfort that you vote for against protections while backing a presidential candidate endorsed by the KKK, a group rooted in white supremacy and racial terror. You did that. And now you sit here questioning whether immigrants deserve legal defense. Meanwhile, ICE is stalking the streets of San Diego, arresting people who don't have lawyers, and every vote against ILDP is a green light for that cruelty. If you vote no, if you abstain, you are complicit. Immigrants help fund this county. They deserve justice, lawyers, and to be treated as human beings, not disposable labor. Approve the funding or stop pretending you represent us all because it's clear who you're protecting. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear, thank you, we'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, when it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We will start with our first caller.
My name is Denise Lopez and I'm a student in UCSD and I'm part of the Organization of Students of Liberty Union here at UCSD. I am here to call in for three, for our three demands. Full, our two, our three demands. Full funding for immigration legal defense and maintaining it as university merit program so all immigrants have access to legal counsel. Second, a three-minute investment in LGBT housing service ensuring safety, dignity, and the 34-hour most impacted labor. Third, transparency and accessibility in the county budget so all residents can see how public dollars are spent. I am a daughter of immigrants. I'm a daughter that comes from immigrant parents. So this is the most important thing that we see. Right now, we have, we just saw this weekend. ICE rage was happening in South Park, 0.7 miles away from my house. This is unacceptable. Please fund...
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
My name is Patricia Mondragon, Regional Policy Manager for Alliance San Diego. We appreciate the CAO's effort to close the funding gap while protecting core services and key investments that directly benefit our communities, including the county's Immigrant Legal Defense Program and much-needed housing programs. Since its implementation in 2022, the ILDP has helped over 2,500 clients and has contributed to an increase in representation for immigrants detained in San Diego County. This is a critical program whose importance will only grow during the next four years as attacks on due process and immigrant communities proliferate. We must continue to invest in this program as DHS ICE escalates mass arrests in all corners of our county. San Diego County's Legal Defense Program ensures all immigrants in detention have access to the basic due process rights they are entitled to under existing law. We urge you to approve the recommended budget of $5 million for the ILDP to increase accessibility to the ILDP in order to...
Now hear from the next caller.
Hey, truth and sure, maximum funding possible to the DA's office. Summer Stephan has been fighting against the state releasing criminals out of prison just because they turn age 50, and she also fought to ensure that victims are again able to present evidence at parole hearings when criminals try to get early releases. Unlike the state crazies who love crime and criminals, Summer has finally been standing up for justice, I think, or for that. Defund DEHQ's vector control program that sprays what the safety data sheets show are toxic pesticides such as Vecumax and natural all over this county. It goes against environmental protection, which Joel, Tara, and Monica have already proven today that they are not in support of. So that's even more reason to defund every supervisor's office, which currently allowed to have 15 staffers each. I know Tara has 14. Even if paid only $50,000 each, that would add up to about $3 million for these people to have binder-delivering and coffee-serving slaves. When they say they don't have money for essential services or for pay raises, remember that. And no to the illegal fund. Go ahead and cry now instead of clap. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
My name is Margaret Baker and on behalf of South Bay People Power, I urge you to approve the $5 million in this year's budget for the Immigrant Legal Defense Program and to protect the ILDP as a universal legal representation program without exclusions on who can participate. Access to legal counsel is a fundamental civil right and a cornerstone of our justice system. And our ILDP program helps make our immigration system in San Diego more just and more humane. In light of the current escalation of cruel and extralegal ICE operations in our county, it is crucially important that the county maintain the Immigrant Legal Defense Program at full funding levels and accessible to all individuals in deportation hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hi, my name is Emily Miller. I'm a San Diego County resident of District 2 and the Community Impact Director, I mean, manager at the American Heart Association of San Diego. I am calling to highlight the need for investment in nutrition security measures like produce prescriptions. Today, nutrition insecurity in San Diego County remains more prevalent than it was pre-pandemic with nearly 1 in 4 residents unable to access or afford the food they need to lead a healthy life. Produce prescription programs are critical to improving health equity and bolstering our local economy, and with food prices out of reach for many, local families are struggling to purchase healthy food. This is no time to shy away from supporting healthy food access in our community. We encourage the county to commit $1 million to a produce prescription program like Mas Fresco Plus, which helps the most under-resourced residents access fresh fruits and vegetables while also supporting local farmers and other small businesses. Without continued investment, the program will cease to exist beyond 2025. Mas Fresco Plus has been successfully improving nutrition security.
Now, now hear from the next caller. Please go ahead. Your device might be muted.
Sí, por favor, adelante. Tal vez tiene el dispositivo en mudo. Puede quitarse de mudo. Muy buenas tardes.
Okay, good afternoon. Adelante.
Mi nombre es Maribel, mi nombre es Maribel Arias y soy del Distrito 4.
Okay, my name is Maribel Arias and I'm in District 4.
Les pido que otorguen fondos para el programa Mas Fresco Plus.
I would like you to please give more funds, you know, for the program, Fresh Plus.
Ya que es un excelente programa que apoya a las familias con enfermedades prónicas y con inseguridad alimentaria.
And because it's an excellent program, and it is an excellent program for families, you know, that have issues with eating and that they have certain deficiencies in their nutrition.
Y apoya a los agricultores locales, por lo cual le pedimos que otorguen fondos y muchas gracias por su atención.
And also for the agricultural people. You know, those funds are needed and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
This is Serena Pelka from Climate Action Campaign, where we're working to build a clean air and climate safe future. We appreciate the county allocating funding to reduce pollution and improve quality of life for San Diego families. With that, there are specific projects that we urge the county to support. We echo the ask of the county incorporate funding for the Global Village Project, a visionary 100% affordable mixed-use development designed by over 2,000 San Diegans that is located on 2.2 acres along the Toews Creek Corridor. This project embodies what it means to lead with equity, center resilience, and is an absolutely essential opportunity to invest in what will be a cultural hub and regional asset in the Mid-City community for generations. This project is also an example of Climate Action Plan implementation and how creative, community-driven solutions should be prioritized. Please fund the Global Village Project and continue to fund the implementation of the Climate Action Plan, prioritizing projects in communities of concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, this concludes oral public testimony on the budget. Members of the public may still provide written testimony on the budget online. To comment online on the budget, please visit the county's website at www.sandiegocounty.gov/budget. Testimony must be in writing and be received no later than the close of the budget hearings, which is Thursday, June 12, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. All materials received will be distributed to the Board, the Chief Administrative Officer, and placed in the public record. Change letters from Board members and the Chief Administrative Officer are also due to the clerk of the Board by the close of the budget hearings on Thursday, June 12, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. Law precludes my office from accepting change letters after that deadline. All change letters that are received will be distributed to the Board and the Chief Administrative Officer shortly after the 5:00 p.m. deadline. Budget deliberations and adoption are scheduled for Tuesday, June 24, 2025.
Okay, thank you very much. Question, how many comments do we have for closed session? What we're going to do right now, we are going to move, we have items 22 and 23, we're going to move them to tomorrow. It's already 7 o'clock. We do have to do the remainder of non-agenda public comment this evening before we can wrap it up for the evening, and we'll do our adjournments in memory. So I'm asking Andrew this because I'm trying to figure out whether we should do the closed session comments tonight or tomorrow morning.
We have eight requests to speak on closed session matters and six remaining requests to speak for non-agenda public communication.
Okay, so we're going to move items 22 and 23 to tomorrow. We're going to do a non-agenda public comment and closed session comment now. Tomorrow, we'll go straight into closed session and we will do, as requested by Supervisor Desmond, a time certain of 2:00 p.m. for the land use. We, Claudia's estimate was we were going to, we're going to have at least three hours for closed session tomorrow, minimum. So we'll do, we'll convene it for closed session at 9:00. It could be longer, so I don't want us to be in closed session and then not be finished. If we do... If we do finish closed session before 2:00, fingers crossed, we will come back and do 22 and 23 before we go to our time-certain land use items. Does that make sense to my colleagues, to staff? Okay, great. So why don't we go ahead? We will do closed session and non-agenda. Non-agenda first, then we do closed session, then we do adjournments, and then we will see you. Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you all.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, we have six remaining requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, all of those requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone on matters not listed on the agenda, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll give the callers a minute to dial in. Also, if you requested to speak on the closed session matters, which are item 24 and item 1 and the In Home Supportive Services Public Authority, I'll ask you to please call in for those items as well. For those that requested to speak on the closed session matters, again, these are items 24 on today's general legislative session and item 1 on the In Home Supportive Services Public Authority. The closed session matters includes nine matters. Individuals that have requested to speak on the closed session matters must provide comments directly related to those items. We'll go ahead and hear from the first individual that requested to speak on the closed session matters by phone.
Closed session, closed session, closed session. You do recognize that the 75th Assembly Member is trying to get a restraining order based off of yours, and then Scott Peters is trying to get me thrown in jail because I taught everyone how to commit registration voter fraud at the Board of Supervisors meeting. Now, that is a crime. Election law 18560, you guys doing nothing, is also an election law, 18501. I think I've explained this to you multiple times in the past. Now, actually getting me busted on the election law 18560, you're going to have to prove a few things. Unfortunately, you're going to have to prove that the person that committed the fraud came from me, not from your platform, that I taught them, that they didn't just learn it from your platform. In that case, you and I are in conflict. You know, we're.
We'll now hear from the next caller.
Thank you. My name is Kathleen Muthit. It's frustrating not to recognize the importance of voices like Supervisor Desmond. Those who support enforcing immigration laws and constitutional laws want to see public money used to benefit legal residents. They are neither xenophobic nor racist. Legal residents do not enjoy the benefit of free legal advice. They're simply concerned. The other issue is the constant county's excuse to align themselves with the state. Might remind the board and the public that California High Speed Rail is now 0.001% complete. That's after 17 years and $128 billion. So following in the footsteps of our state makes no sense. They are not a role model for us. We stopped spending also some money on marijuana businesses that emphasize and prioritize groups that. Their discriminatory policies. Equity licensed priorities are discriminatory. And the county should not be engaging in such practices. Thank you.
Kathleen, before you hang up, you also requested to speak on the closed session matters. Would you like to provide your comments at this time? Looks like we just lost her. We'll now go to an individual that requested to speak on the closed session matters.
I'm following here. What item are we on?
On the closed session matters, item 24.
Hi, what item are we on?
Concelo, we're on item 20. Item 24, closed session matters.
Okay, are we still back to two minutes?
We have one minute to address the board.
One minute to address the board. Okay, got it. So let me pull up my stage because I had to leave. Because whatever Lola wants, Lola gets. Instead of pushing this off for tomorrow's meeting, Lola gets what she wants, right? Oh, crap. Hold on, I'm still pulling up my. My mic is gone. They probably. Hello?
Yes, you have 30 seconds.
I think they hung up. That's okay. Anyway.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, not seeing any individuals in the queue to speak on closed session or any of the remaining individuals that requested to speak on the non-agenda public comment. That concludes public comment for this session.
Okay, thank you so much. We had, I think, an adjournment in memory for today. This is Vice Super Governor Jim Desmond.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. Appreciate it. This is an adjournment in memory of Derek Johnson. Derek Johnson passed away suddenly two weeks ago. He served as Vice President of Brothers of Six Charities, Inc., a fraternal organization committed to the study and preservation of heritage and the ongoing beautification of North San Diego County. While rooted in historical preservation, the Brothers of Six have long been deeply engaged in community outreach, a mission Derek wholeheartedly embraced. Under his leadership, Derek played a pivotal role in planning and executing key community events, such as the annual Escondido Grape Day Festival and the Escondido Veterans Day Parade, known as Vet Fest. He also devoted his time and energy to organizing numerous benefit dinners throughout the year, helping to raise support and awareness for causes close to the Brotherhood's heart. Derek was more than a leader. He was a brother and a dear friend. His passion, dedication, and kindness will forever leave a lasting imprint on this organization and all who knew him. Through the Brotherhood, though the Brotherhood will carry on, his absence will be deeply felt for years to come. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We will adjourn. We will see each other tomorrow in closed session at 9:00 a.m. Thanks.